Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Antioch City Council Meeting of April the 8th, 2025. This is a special budget study session. Madam Clerk, may I please have the roll?
Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Torres Walker.
Present.
Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Mayor Protim Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
I will note for the record that Councilmember Wilson is absent at 5:46 PM.
All right, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. We are coming out of closed session. I apologize for us starting this meeting late, but we were having so much fun. So here we are. Mr. City Attorney, is someone here to report out on closed session? Are we at the regular meeting? Sorry. All right, sorry about that. We are now going to be talking about the fiscal year 2025-2027 budget. We're continuing the Public Works budget from our April the 1st meeting. And so if we could have a report on that, please. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks so much, Mayor and City Council. At the close of the last budget session, due to time constraints, City Council requested that the Public Works budget be brought back to finish up with some questions. Staff are present to address any questions that Council may have.
All right. Thank you. Let me see. Do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not have any speaker cards.
All right. Excellent. So we concluded the presentation from Public Works, and we were just beginning some of our discussion at the last meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If you remember at the last meeting, the City Manager asked, because I said I had more than 15 minutes of questions. And I want to thank the Director of Finance, Don Merchant, and the Assistant City Manager, Brad Hefenberger. We spent about an hour going through a lot of the various items, so I don't necessarily need to raise it. I do have, you know, one, there's kind of two policy issues. So in the memo that we received dated April 1 from Don Merchant to the Mayor and the members of Council, she breaks down the Public Works and then the General Fund. The concern I have is this, and I would request, you know, staff and direct, the staff through the City Manager, when I look at the General Fund budget summary, you know, as I'm looking through this, the City Manager and staff has already cut, I believe, about $18 million from the fiscal year '25-'26-'26-'27 out of the General Fund. But if you look on this particular chart under the heading "Surplus Deficit," we end '25-'26 at 16.4 million in deficit, and we end 2020-'26-'27 18.4 million. So that's another $34 million. And what is concerning to me mostly is the bottom line, looking at fiscal year '26-'27, what it states is unassigned fund balance, $2.6 million. And if you look at '24-'25, it was almost $37 million. '25-'26 is almost $21 million. And now we will be down at the end of two fiscal years at $2.6 million. On the next page, we all, the staff has also delineated some of our liabilities. So for the pension liability, it's approximately $147 million. And for OPEB, which I know it's benefits, but I don't know what OPEB stands for, I apologize.
Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Okay. These are benefits in retirement. That's approximately $20 million. And so I asked the Director of Finance, what is our bond rating? And she indicated it's AAA-, which is exceedingly good. It's very healthy. The problem is, I have made presentations in front of Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, and the picture that we have presented is not a particularly great picture, that we would have a funding, a fund balance of that $2.6 million, and we have basically a $50 million deficit, and we have a liability of approximately $167 million. That's not, that's not, from a rating agency, a particularly good position to be in. So I would ask the City Manager and the Director of Finance to bring someone to the Council. And the reason why, this is a boring subject, ratings and bond financing, unless you understand the significance. Most municipalities finance through debt financing. And the higher your rating, the cheaper the cost is to the city. And so I'm very concerned as we go through the budget, setting our priorities, and being realistic for at least the next two years, but also after that, what, what is it with regards to revenue that will sustain a AAA-, you know, rating? Because I am very concerned if, if there was an analysis by either or the major rating agency, there may be a downgrade, and that concerns me as we move forward with regards to roads, sewer, water, and buildings and things of that sort, because that is what we use. We use debt financing. So it's a, I think, a critical issue. I think the Council needs to be aware where we're at, because it will frame the question, how much do we need in reserves? I mean, that's the question to maintain or enhance our ratings. So I, I raise that as a particular issue and ask that we direct staff to take a look at that and at future meeting, to please come back and be able to, either staff or an expert in that particular field, address the City Council, because from my perspective, it will certainly guide me on making budgetary decisions for the next two years and beyond. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of staff? Councilmember Torres Walker, do you have any questions? No? I just have a couple. So did we receive any additional information regarding the $1 million reduction or so from PG&E on the gas franchise?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're still waiting for information. We'll give it to you as soon as we get it.
Okay. And then on Attachment C, when there's a Chinese history project, $60,000, could we get an explanation of what, what that project is?
Yes, it was the prior, I believe this was in, Councilmember Torres Walker might have to help me, a few months ago in the fall, there was a presentation given, and a vote was made on giving a $60,000 payout to an artist to do a Chinese art project. And so that was weighting our parameters around whether or not we needed an RFP, but the money was assigned and earmarked for the project.
Was it also at the Antioch Historical Society?
I, was it? I don't know. No, it was not. No, I don't believe so, no.
No. The work happened with the Historical Society at some level, and then this is kind of supposed to be the output of that.
And I have the plans, if you would like for me to forward it to you all.
Yeah, please do. That, that would be good, good to know.
My recollection is that, I used to work with the Sports Legends downstairs. My recollection is that the, the city, I mean, the Historical Society had some educational programs and so forth on the history. And so I remember attending that upstairs in, in the Riverview Room. So I don't know what the full project entailed, but I do know that part of it had to do with educational programs provided at the Historical Society for the community to celebrate and learn about the culture.
And I believe this is an installation, art piece that will be ready in 2028. There are questions that we had with staff with regards to the process, whether it needs to be RFP'd or sole sourced, and whether or not the funds should be used to restore our existing murals. So we will bring that information back to you.
Okay. Thank you. So the, so the total cost of the, the project is $60,000?
Yes.
Okay. Second, second question is the library contribution. So it's going from $180,000 this year to 227, and then to 249 in the following two years. Is there a, a reason why that's going up so significantly?
Yes, Acting Assistant City Manager tracked down the information, and will provide it.
Thank you, City Manager Scott. Yes, we, we were also concerned about that, that increase. The library had notified us of that. So we reached out to request a more detailed explanation, and it turns out that there was an administrative error. So that amount is going to be reduced. They, they identified that the amount that they had quoted us was incorrect, and so it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $165,000 for next fiscal year, which is actually slightly lower than it is for the current fiscal year.
Okay. Perfect. That's, that's good news. And then the Marina subsidy, and I think it was touched on before, but that's going from $300,000 to $708,000, which is pretty significant.
Director Merchant will answer.
Yes, so as I did bring up, alluded to in the, the Public Works session, in fiscal year '24, there was budget savings. Those, the expenditures were not rolled over into the current year, so there was a little bit of a surplus of what was transferred from the General Fund in fiscal year '24, because they did not spend the entire budget. So this year's subsidy is being reduced low, because there's extra accumulation of funds from prior year that are in there. And then in addition, so we're bumping back up to regular service level budgets in fiscal year '26, and in addition, it has to, you know, cover the liability for the pension and OPEB to keep it a positive balance. So as you can see, for the next two fiscal years, it's about $708,000 each fiscal year, as the Marina does not generate sufficient operating revenues to cover all the expenses.
Okay. And then do you, do you know if we're actively pursuing renting the, the space down there that's vacant currently?
We're looking into it, but I don't believe so.
Okay.
So I'll follow up. I, I did have all these answers for you.
Okay.
In an email.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, you're okay.
All right. So that's all the questions I had. Welcome, Councilmember Wilson. Good to see you. No, no problem. So any other questions on the Public Works budget? All right. Seeing none, we can move on to the next, the next item, yes, which is SM 2, Special Meeting 2, Fiscal Year 2025-27 Budget Development, Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This budget session will focus on the Parks and Recreation Department budgets. The Finance Director will present the budget worksheets, and then the Recreation Department will follow up with a presentation slideshow.
Good evening. So we'll get the budget worksheets up on the screen here. So this is just the budget worksheets that mimic what goes into the budget document. It only encompasses the funds under Recreation, the Recreation Services Special Revenue Fund, the Civic Arts Special Revenue Fund, and the Pruitt CIP Capital Projects Fund. I'll go through these briefly, and then the Parks and Recreation Department has a more robust slide presentation to go through, and we can follow up with any questions. So first is the organization chart for the Recreation Services Fund. And then here is the Recreation Services Special Revenue Fund. As you can see, there's different transfers in. I've labeled those of what they're coming in for. The General Fund provides the, an operating subsidy to the Recreation Services Fund, as service charges are not sufficient to cover all programs and services. As I had mentioned previously, we're increasing the transfer in from the Child Care Fund. That fund is for the Mary Rocha Child Care Fund. We receive rent in that fund. So the amount that we've accumulated is sufficient to bump up the transfer from the Child Care Fund to $175,000 in each of the next two fiscal years. You can see that there is fund balance remaining at the end of the fiscal year, but those are for designations held for turf field maintenance replacement, city park maintenance, and memorial field maintenance. So it's not that there's an accumulation of funds that can offset or reduce what the General Fund is contributing. These are monies that have been accumulated through fees collected and donations over the years to pay for those services. And there's 12 full-time staff in the Recreation Services Fund. This is the Nick Rodriguez Community Center budget. This incorporates regular programs in the Nick Rodriguez Community Center, as well as the Senior Center. And there's two staff that are funded out of there. And the capital expense, as you can see, is going down to zero. There was money to pay for roof repairs in fiscal year '25. If for some reason the repairs are not completed by June 30th, that'll be included as a purchase order encumbrance roll forward in the fall. The next two divisions are the Sports Programs and Community Recreation, which is everything that occurs out at the new Community Center on Lone Tree Way. Then there's the Water Park Operations Division, and the capital expenses in there is for various water park repairs. The Pruitt Capital Improvement Fund, the prior City Council did approve $200,000 per year from the General Fund to set aside for maintenance needed at the water park. The '23-'24 transfer, the 1.5, that's a rather significant amount. City Council previously approved the one-time revenue surplus funds came in to be dedicated to address some major repairs that were some urgency needed at the water park. And the final fund budget that's here is the Civic Arts portion of the transient occupancy tax is dedicated to this fund to pay for civic programs, a lot of the events that occur at Wally Plaza, for example. So the services and supplies are for the various summer events that occur at Wally Plaza. So that concludes the budget worksheets, and I can turn it over to the Recreation Department to do, go through their presentation.
All right. Thank you, Director Merchant, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity this evening to present an overview of our department along with our proposed two-year budget. This evening, I am joined by several of our recreation team members, including Shahad Wright, who is now the Acting Parks and Recreation Director. So congratulations to Shahad. June Gandia, who is the Recreation Supervisor for the Antioch Senior Center and Nick Rodriguez Community Center.
We can't see you.
No. Can I have you guys move over to the, to the front row over here? Yeah. Go ahead and, go ahead and sit behind the podium, if you don't mind. All right. Now, now they'll be front and center. As I was saying, we have June Gandia, who's the Recreation Supervisor for the Antioch Senior Center and Nick Rodriguez Community Center. We have Jalen Valenzuela, Recreation Supervisor for Sports and Facilities. Bree Pierce, Recreation Supervisor for the Antioch Water Park. And Emily Reinert, who's our Administrative Analyst, and she leads our Customer Service and Business Operations, as I like to say, all the non-fun stuff in Parks and Rec. You'll be hearing from several of them this evening as we progress through our various program areas. And before I go to our next slide, I do want to say I just really love this photo. Hopefully, we can get that back up on the screen. Thank you.
You have a photo of yourself?
No. Not that one. But this photo is great. This was from Juneteenth last year, and this is going to be our cover photo on our next activity guide, and that's going to be hitting the, the mailboxes in the next couple of weeks. So watch out in your mailboxes for that photo right there, because it's going to be in everybody's mailbox very soon. All right. Who we are? I just want to talk a little bit about what, what Parks and Recreation is and the philosophy that guides us. This graphic here that you see was created by the California Parks and Recreation Society, and it outlines the vision and goals of the member agencies, and we're a member agency. Recreation is so much more than facilities and classes. We create community through people, parks, and programs. That is the statement that we live and breathe. I like to think of it like this, the city of Antioch is the house of the community, but recreation helps make it a home. To briefly outline what this vision is, Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness. We promote physical, emotional, and mental health through fitness, play, and activity. Parks and Recreation supports economic vitality. We attract new businesses, foster economic development, promote community revitalization, increase tourism, provide jobs, and generate revenues to support the economic vitality of our communities. Parks and Recreation creates recreation experiences. We get people involved in their communities by creating engaging programs, special events, and new recreation experiences. Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness. We create cohesive communities by celebrating diversity, providing inclusive services, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring that all people have access to the benefits of Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation supports human development. We support youth development and lifelong learning to foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. Parks and Recreation protects natural resources. We protect habitat and open space, connect people to nature, promote the ecological function of parkland, and sustain and steward our natural resources. Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity and sense of place. We provide parks, facilities, and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape. Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem solving. We apply skills in community engagement, collaboration, leadership, and facilitation to resolve community problems and issues. And finally, Parks and Recreation supports community vibrancy. We support safe, vibrant, attractive, walkable communities that make life better through Parks and Recreation. So these are our guiding principles. This is the, the framework that we use when we're, when we're designing programs and activities. Okay. To give a broad overview of our department, we have four operating divisions. First is Community Recreation. Primarily, these are activities that are held at the Antioch Community Center out of Pruitt Park. It includes camps, recreations, classes, preschool, and special events. Also, for budget purposes, this is where our admin staff is housed, and this is where our customer service hub is, for the department, is, is included. Our Sports Division primarily focuses on programs that are at Antioch Community Park and the Community Center Gym, but we also hold programs throughout the city. It includes our sports camps, leagues, development classes, and our sports facilities. We have the Senior Center and Nick Rodriguez Community Center down here in downtown, which includes our senior activities, recreation classes, and the theater. And then, of course, we have the Antioch Water Park, which includes general admission, our classes, swim lessons, pool rentals, and rentals of the multipurpose room, and special events. Also, I thought I'd briefly mention that the Fourth of July Celebration and Public Art, which we oversee in Parks and Recreation, those two particular programs actually reside in the non-departmental budget. So they'll, they'll come up when we, when we get to that. All right. This slide shows our organizational chart. I'm happy to report that currently, we do not have any vacancies in the Parks and Recreation Department at the, at the full-time level. So Shahad and I are currently in acting roles, as you know, but for the purposes of illustration of our department, we, we kept us in our home positions here. As you can see, the Recreation Services Manager serves as second-in-command of the department, and that position also directly oversees the Community Recreation Division. The supervisors are listed in teal, and so it's the Community Recreation Division. Currently, this is also being handled by the Recreation Services Manager. So while I recognize that the, the city's in a tight budget situation, we're not proposing any new positions at this time, but this is a position that I would recommend in the future be considered, adding a Recreation Supervisor to oversee Community Recreation. The next, the next side down is our frontline staff. They're the staff that are indicated here in white, and they do a lot of the program planning, administration, and customer service. They do a lot more of our direct program implementation. One other gap that you'll see here is in our Sports Division. There's no frontline staff, so Jalen also does a lot of the direct implementation herself. And so again, we're not asking for positions tonight, but I do want to highlight that this gap exists, and I would recommend that a, a future position be considered here. And then finally, the staff in blue represent our part-time staff. Part-time staff are the heart and soul of Parks and Recreation. Depending on the time of year, we have as many as 300 part-time staff. These are your lifeguards, your camp leaders, your scorekeepers, all of the people who have direct interactions with the community and program participants. And most of these staff consist of youth. The Recreation Department is one of the largest employers of youth in the city, which is something we're really proud of. Parks and Recreation also handles all of its own custodial needs through part-time staff, the setup and teardown of our multi-use facilities, and much of our own facility maintenance. I want to extend a huge thank you to our Human Resources Department. They do a great job in supporting us, because we have a big hiring effort every summer, and that wouldn't be possible without their support. All right. So here's an overview of our budget. I organized it a little bit differently than how our Finance Department typically does it, because I, I want to try to highlight where, where our money is going at a glance. In general, we are proposing a baseline budget. We're proposing at this time to keep all service levels the same and minimizing increases in the budget. So you'll see that there are some increased staffing costs. That is primarily attributed to increases in the minimum wage, anticipated merit increases, and anticipated increases to benefits. We are not proposing adding staff under this budget. As I said, we organize this, these slides to show you how our expenditures are allocated, specifically in program versus non-program expenses. As you can see, staffing is our largest expense. Out of this, 61%, about 10% of that or so is dedicated to staff that are maintaining our facilities, custodial, and our facility attendance. They're the, the ones who are moving the tables and chairs around and getting all the equipment set up. So that means between that and the maintenance and utilities, about a quarter of our budget is dedicated really to, to building maintenance and operation. The Supplies Section represents our program expenses. So this includes program supplies, office supplies, postage, fuel, printing costs, special events, training, and scholarships. It also includes costs that are paid out to our contract instructors for recreation classes. So this is the portion of the budget that goes directly to program operations other than our part-time staff. Next is business expenses. This represents our office equipment, county permits, insurance, IS support, which is our IT department, vehicle replacement, and registration software. The increase that you see in fiscal year '26-'27 is attributed to anticipated increase in our insurance premiums and our IS support. So essentially, again, these are costs of doing business, and they don't directly support programs. And then we have maintenance in utilities, which is just as it sounds. You actually see a slight drop. We are anticipating that the, the roof cost that Director Merchant mentioned earlier is going to be pushed to the next fiscal year, so we did include it here. This is a one-time expense that's going to go support the, the roof replacement that's going to happen at Nick Rodriguez. All right. So this is a slide that shows the overall program revenue for the department. Rental revenue includes the water park buyouts, facility rentals, and park picnic rentals. Our program fees are for class registration. Those are our camps, classes, sports programs, and swim lessons. We have a water park general admission, which is just as it sounds, and it accounts for about 30% of our overall total revenue. And then we have sales and miscellaneous. Most of the sales is the concession stands at the water park, but it also includes concessions at the community park, as well as donations and our, our sponsorship program, which right now is a pilot program that we're hoping to expand, and we'll talk about that a little later. So this slide shows an overview of what the expenditures and our revenues, our program revenues are, and what support the department is receiving. It says here, mostly general fund support. As Director Merchant mentioned earlier, $175,000 are coming from the Child, the Child Development Fund. Okay. So I mentioned this earlier, but it's a really important part of our budget, so I want to emphasize the point. Parks and Recreation maintenance costs, custodial, and utilities are included in the Parks and Recreation budget. Not all of our city departments are set up this way, and so that's why I thought it was important to highlight here. As I said earlier, about 15% of our budget goes to maintenance contracts and utilities, and an estimated 10% of the budget for staff are needed for services. So about 20% of our total budget goes just to facility operations. Our facilities are open seven days a week, and our staff also provides maintenance and custodial service for the Pruitt Library. The Public Works Facilities Division supports our department in coordinating projects, and they've helped us cover unbudgeted expenses. However, regular maintenance contracts, including HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and alarm costs, are all included in the Recreation budget. We also have our own maintenance staff who handle light maintenance, but they also do painting and flooring projects. The Parks Division of Public Works handles park maintenance except for field prep at Community Park and Gentrytown Park, which is where we hold our organized baseball and stop ball programs. I want to take a moment to thank the Public Works Department for all of the support they provide to Parks and Recreation. With our limited staffing, there is no way that we could accomplish everything that we do without their support. So thank you. As I mentioned earlier, all of our custodial is handled 100% in-house by part-time staff. Recreation does not participate in the citywide custodial contract. Primarily, we do this because our facilities are so heavily impacted that we need to have custodial staff just about any time that the facilities are open to the public. So we are not able to utilize a, an overnight service like So we are not able to utilize an overnight service like the rest of the city does because we need services throughout the day. As I mentioned earlier, our part-time staff also handles all the setup and cleanup, not only for our own internal programs, but also for third-party facility rentals and any time a facility is used by another department. Many of the youth services programs are housed in Parks and Recreation facilities, so while the direct costs for those programs are housed in Public Safety and Community Resources, the cost to support the programs in setup, cleanup, the facility maintenance, and custodial and utilities are all in Recreation. And so that's my overview, and next, we're going to go into some of the program areas in some more detail. And so at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Shahad, who's going to talk about Community Recreation.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Brad. Get you a water break, and good evening, council. How are we doing? I want to give you a quick glance at what we do in Community Recreation, and we're going to go over some of the other divisions. But we offer a diverse range of classes, programs designed to engage, educate, and inspire all residents of the City of Antioch. As you see here, we have fabulous numbers in terms of our seasonal camp. Our seasonal camps consist of your traditional summer camp. It also includes chess camp, which is done by an instructor, and kayaking. We had over five hundred registrations for our camps. If we go down to classes, we offer a multitude of classes such as martial arts, chess, cooking classes, which is one of the favorites in the community. We actually extended it to teens, so now we have a teen cooking class in our kitchen. Many art classes from anime to you name it. We have a lot of art classes. Paint nights for kids, they love that as well. So you'll see that the numbers for those classes is over eighteen hundred registrations for last year. As we move forward to one of our foundational programs, preschool, it's an honor to serve our youth at the youngest age, to give them a foundation of education, and we have a fabulous staff that does amazing work daily. We had over five hundred and fifty-nine registrations. And just to note, we put the number of resident and non-residents right below the number, so you can see that we are serving primarily Antioch residents. Just want to note on that last slide, that is our coordinator. She's amazing. She's homegrown. She went to Deer Valley. She went to the program. She got hired. Now she's our coordinator. She's over a lot of our community programs and special events. And that young man right there is Travis, and this is one of my favorite photos because we do give youth a voice and a choice in the programs that they do, so. All right, so we'll talk about special events, everybody's favorite. When I first came here three years ago, special events were one and done. Now we're over twenty special events hosted for the city. I'm happy to announce that Juneteenth is going to be in its fourth year, and we have approximately over two thousand residents that attend our Juneteenth event. Fourth of July is spectacular. This city has been doing a great job. It's probably one of the last cities to have fireworks over the delta, and we usually see about ten thousand residents come through the parade or watch throughout the city as we have that spectacular show and entertainment down here in downtown. Summer movie nights and concerts are growing. When I first got here, I was a little worried about the numbers and participation, but the word is getting out that it's a safe place to be, and families have grown and flock to these movie nights. This we actually did this summer is let everybody vote for the movies. So, you know, we went from having about twenty families to now we have three hundred families coming out to the movie nights, enjoying free popcorn on our food truck Thursdays. Multicultural Fest, Big Truck Day, Day of the Dead, and Holiday Delights are more events that we have throughout the cities that see big numbers, between five hundred to a thousand participants in the city come out every time we have those events. Big Truck Day is one of my favorites. That's where we really get to shout out Public Works and a lot of our other fellow workers in the city, to see that face that drives that truck around the city. It's a great event. All right, so our service events, such as MLK Day, Keep Antioch Beautiful, and Coastal Cleanup is an opportunity for everybody to come out and volunteer and see their city in a different light and get hands-on with their community, and we've seen over four hundred residents attend those events as well. Our Admin Division, as Brad stated, Emily is the chief of that, and she runs a fabulous team. They play a vital role in supporting the community engagement through ensuring smooth operations for our department. Some of the key services include registration, reservation, and information services. So when you call, you actually get a human being that will give you an answer. It's a personal touch that we pride ourselves on, making sure that we know what we're talking about and give good information to our community. Our Facility Rental Program, managing all the community spaces for private, public, and nonprofit, and city use, with over fifteen hundred room reservations processed for the fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four. Admin is also responsible for our Youth Scholarship Program, which we allocate thirty-five-thousand dollars to low-income families. This really touches my heart, because when I got here, it wasn't this amount, and the council was able to increase that, to give access to all programs, no matter how much money you make. And so with that, each year, each child gets up to two hundred and fifty dollars to participate in any program they choose. Admin also deals with the Civic Enhancement Grant. They also deal with special event applications, coordinating with community members to organize and host public events on city-owned property. And Admin also deals with our Recreation Guide that goes out three times a year that highlights all our programs and special events. All right, through these administrative services, we ensure that the recreation opportunities remain accessible, well-organized, and are impactful for all members within the community. All right, so just to talk about one of our success stories and impact stories, we actually have Logan and his family in the audience, so I don't want to take too much time, because they're going to get up here and talk about his own experience. But Logan started in our program at five years old, in our preschool. Homegrown, great, young, cheerful kid. He went on and did other programs, such as our summer camps, and then as you grow older, you kind of grow out of recreation, but not Logan. Logan stayed back, came and volunteered, got into our Junior Rec program, became one of our best leaders and stewards of the Community Center, and became one of our youngest employees. So that's a full-circle impact story, and, you know, we couldn't be more proud of Logan and the things that he's going to continue to accomplish as a young man that he is. All right, so we got more numbers for you. This just kind of breaks down and highlights Community Recreation expenditures. As you see, staffing as a whole is fifty-eight percent of our total expenses. Again, a reminder, we do house all our admin team, full-time employees, under that, and Brad stated it well, that this is a baseline budget, and you'll be hearing that by my colleagues, that we're trying to keep things the same so we can supply the same services to the community. All right, so this is program revenue. It's pretty split down the middle between rental revenue and program fees. Again, the facility is used twenty-four-seven for multiple celebrations and events by the community, and it's also used by us twenty-four-seven for programming. This is a breakdown of the General Funds contribution for both years. And with that, I'll take a break and bring up June Gandia, our Recreation Supervisor for the Nick Rodriguez and Senior Center.
Thank you, Shahad, and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Just to talk about the Senior Center, the Antioch Senior Center has been thriving the last couple of years with over nine hundred members, which is a three hundred member increase from the previous year. Every week, we have about five to eight seniors wanting to join the Senior Center, and it's due to the successful programs, events, resources, and trips that we have at our center. The staff and volunteers have done a great job making the center such a welcoming place for all the seniors in the community. We also work with local groups such as the Contra Costa County Health and Legal Services, our East County Senior Coalition, and Rotary Clubs, just to name a few. Our current classes have seen a growth with our Hula class, our sewing class, our knitting and crocheting, and our beginner exercise. We've also added new classes in the past year with Spanish class, pickleball, men's and women's friendship circle, ballet, flucorico, and beginner guitar. Also, one of our bigger programs is our Bingo program, which started off with fifty participants and now averages about seventy-five to eighty participants. In our large and busy days, we have up to a hundred seniors playing bingo as well. And one special thing that we also have, every Thursday, we have a live band. Our senior has a live band called the Rivertown Band that plays up to a hundred attendees that attend to our live band. So Thursdays is our biggest day. We have rock and roll with the live band in the morning, and then bingo in the afternoon. Also, our Chis program has been a successful program, which is a full cost recovery program, visiting sporting events, local museums, wineries, and casinos. We've also added some new events this year. We've had our Echoes of Hawaii, a hula performance, our Gift to Senior, and New Year's Eve event. And then also tomorrow, we'll be having our Antioch Senior Fashion Show. So that begins at one o'clock. Door's opening at twelve-thirty, so if you guys are all invited, if you have time, come check it out. We do have twenty-two seniors signed up. They're really excited to show all their wardrobe and all that stuff. We did a walkthrough today, so with the music and all, so they're very excited. And lastly, I'd like to share that we have a partnership with our local nonprofit, the Antioch Friends of Seniors. This group helps us provide resources and collaborate in events and programs, and they are currently running our bingo program. So we're excited to see what feature, things that we can do with each other in partnerships. And then our Nick Rodriguez Community Center, we've had an increase in facility rentals and offering the community to host their events as wedding receptions, birthday parties, baby showers, and more. We've also seen an increase in our theater rentals with people offering theater shows and large presentations. We also have our Contract Theater Group, the Intentions Acting Studio, who's offered youth, teens, and adults acting classes, and they've also provided a couple of theater productions in the past year. And then also with that, our Senior Center has had their events in there, like I mentioned before, our Senior Fashion Show. This picture right here was our Echoes of Hawaii Hula Performance, where we had a hula group from Maui fly in to join our Antioch Senior Center, hula group, to perform for our Senior Center. And then we're also currently working with El Capinell Theater to offer smaller theater programs. Since we are a smaller facility, you know, El Capinell having such a big facility, they wanted to, you know, bring that down to our center to have smaller classes, so we're working with them to hopefully in the future offer those classes. We recently had an upgrade to our tech booth with light and audio boards and new LED lights, as you can see in this photo right here. And in the future, we hope to have more theater programs and shows. Just to share a few impact stories, our Cafe Costa Lunch Program. This program provides balanced nutritious meals to seniors fifty and above, and this cafe offers more than just meals, it's also a place of socialization. Seniors gather, share stories, enjoy each other's company over a meal. With over seventy seniors visiting daily, numbers reaching over a hundred on busy days, the center has become a part of the lives of those we serve. And another great story we have is our Gift to Senior program, Spreading Holly Cheer. This program allows residents to shop for gifts for seniors who may not have a family nearby or the means to enjoy the holidays. So this program has started with fifty sponsors, and in the past year, we've grown it to a hundred sponsors. The sponsors basically get a list of all the wish lists of all the seniors, and they help buy those gifts for them. And for many seniors at the center receiving a gift through the program is a reminder that they're not forgotten, and the community cares about them. And I believe in this upcoming year, we can build that up to about a hundred and fifty And this is the breakdown of our expenditures for our Senior Center, Nick Rodriguez Community Center. Staffing costs is sixty-three percent. As you can see, the increase is due just to minimum wage. Supplies, fifteen percent. Business expenses to six percent, and maintenance utilities to sixteen percent. And just to include this upcoming year, which Brad mentioned, is the capital expense for the Nick Rodriguez roof. And then program revenues is rental revenue is up to fifty-eight percent, and then our program fees, which is our senior classes and theater classes, thirty-nine percent, and sales and miscellaneous to three percent. And this is the full breakdown of the General Fund contributions for both years, and like I said before, just the total expenditures for this upcoming year does include the expenditures for the roof that we hopefully get done this year. And with that being said, I'd like to introduce our Recreation Supervisor, Jalen Valenzuela, for our sports.
Good evening, council and mayor. The Recreation Sports Division offers a variety of programs, including youth leagues, youth camps, and skill development classes. All of these are available year-round for ages four to fourteen. One of our standout programs is the Junior Warriors Basketball League. During the 2024 season, January to May, we had five hundred and ninety-four participants ranging from kindergarten to eighth grade. This league not only helps players improve their basketball skills, but also provides an opportunity to form new friendships and develop important character traits like leadership, integrity, and respect. Another popular program of ours is our Junior Giants Baseball League. Last year, we saw five hundred and twenty-one participants. We're aiming to exceed that number in this upcoming season. And thanks to the Giants Community Fund, this program is offered at no cost to the players. We also are grateful to our partnership with PAL, who help us cover some of the additional expenses associated with running this program. And then this fall, we are excited to introduce the NFL Flag Football League that'll be running starting in September, so very excited about that. In addition to all of these youth leagues, we also run a sports summer camp. So last season, or sorry, last summer, we had a hundred and sixty registrations. During our sports summer camp, children learn the fundamentals of various sports programs, go on field trips, and make new friends. Finally, we provide skill development classes in basketball, soccer, volleyball, baseball, flag football, and a newly-launched multi-sport adventure class. Each class incorporates drills and structured play to teach the basics of each sport while focusing on teamwork and boosting their confidence. Our adult sports programs include adult softball and drop-in sessions for pickleball, volleyball, and basketball. Last season, or last year for our two softball seasons, we had twenty-nine teams for the spring season and twenty-seven teams for the fall season. We offer both a women's league and a men's league, which with each of those twelve-week sessions, I'm sorry, twelve-week seasons, that include playoffs and a championship game. Drop-in sports are available on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays with good participation across all those programs. Participants are often actually looking for additional days to meet the high demand, so we are working on that. As the sports supervisor, I also oversee the maintenance of Antioch Community Park and the Antioch Community Center. At Antioch Community Park, the maintenance tasks include preparing fields for rental groups, which is all handled by our part-time staff, general upkeep of the artificial turf soccer fields and the baseball fields, and reporting any urgent issues to Public Works. For the Antioch Community Center, the maintenance duties range from custodial work to larger projects such as painting and floor refurbishing. The Community Center, as Brad mentioned earlier, operates seven days a week with our maintenance staff scheduled from opening to closing to ensure the facility is well-maintained during our business hours. And additionally, while we do not oversee the operations of the Pruitt Library, we are also responsible for maintaining that throughout the day and doing any simple repairs. Okay, on the screen here is just one of many positive feedback pieces we got from our most recent Junior Warriors season that concluded in March. This particular one stood out because the coach took the time to mention several of our lead staff members by name, and so it just goes to show that our staff really take the time to build those relationships with everyone involved in our program, and many, many of our part-time staff have been with us for years, and they take immense pride in working with our community. Okay, so here on the screen, the expenditures, you'll see staffing, the slight increase, again, just like everywhere else, due to the minimum wage increase. And then moving down to supplies, we don't anticipate any increases in our supplies. And as Brad mentioned earlier, the insurance costs with our business expenses, we anticipate the increase there. And then you'll see our maintenance and utilities line is very low, and that's just because Parks, Public Works covers a lot of our maintenance costs there. And then you'll see our maintenance and utilities line is very low, and that's just because parks, public works covers a lot of our maintenance costs there. Okay, and our program revenue, so our rental revenue comes from 11 different locations, all for baseball, basketball at the ACC Gym, and then soccer as well. So that's where the rental revenue is. And then the miscellaneous line there, we do have concessions at Antioch Community Park. It has been closed since August due to maintenance issues, but we have taken care of those. And so we plan to reopen that in early May for weekend rentals and our internal programs as well. All right, and the general fund contribution, you'll see here on the screen, the sports division has a very, very low impact on the general fund. Okay, and with that, I will pass it off to Bree Pierce, who oversees the Antioch Water Park.
Thank you, Jalen. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Since its opening in 1996, the Antioch Water Park has been a key attraction, drawing visitors from across the Bay Area. Our general admission season is the highlight of our year, running from Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day. In 2024, the Antioch Water Park welcomed over 38,000 guests, and we are excited to kick off our 2025 season on May 24th. In addition to our five pools and water slides, we operate two concession stands during summer, Gator Grill and Ally's Oasis, both affectionately named after our mascot, Ally the Alligator, who you can see on the screen. In 2024, our concessions brought in over $122,000 in sales. We bookend our summer general admission season with two annual special events. In the springtime, our extravaganza event kicks everything off, where families can come and enjoy Easter egg hunts in and out of the water, a visit from the Easter Bunny, activities, games, prizes, all of that. In 2024, over 680 guests joined us in kicking off our season. And we are looking forward to this year's event, which will take place this upcoming Saturday, April 12th. So if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, please do. We'd love to have you guys join us. And we wrap up our year in October with our popular following event, which features costume contests, pumpkin patches, both in and out of the water, inflatables, games, prizes, and specialty food. In 2024, over 600 guests came in, and we are already planning our event for this upcoming fall. In addition to community events, the Antioch Water Park offers a strong swim lesson program focused on teaching essential water safety to all members of our community. In 2024, over 350 lessons were offered, and we reached over 1,000 participants of all ages. We're proud to provide this life-saving education, and we look forward to continuing that with our spring session kicking off in May. The Antioch Water Park is also a popular event venue. We offer birthday party rentals, buyouts, multi-use, use, multi-use room rentals. In 2024, the park hosted 16 buyouts, 40 multi-use room rentals, and 171 birthday parties during our general admission season, which brought in an additional 7,500 guests. To highlight some of our fitness and certification programs that we offer, from spring through fall, we do offer a lap swim program. And we also offer our highly popular water aerobics program, which saw over 540 participants last year. Cindy's great. We play a key role in safety training and certifications for the department as well. In 2024, we certified 51 new lifeguards and 43 first aid CPR certs for recreation department staff. I would also like to mention that in 2024, the park proudly represented the city of Antioch for the first time at the Bapoa Lifeguard Games. This is a prestigious Bay Area competition that brings lifeguards from all aquatic facilities to one pool. We get to showcase our skills, network, meet other guards. Our team did really well, and we look forward to building on that this upcoming summer. The Antioch Water Park has been prioritizing facility improvements over the last couple of years, and I would like to highlight some of those now. CIP funding allocated to us by City Council at the end of 2023 has been instrumental in getting these projects done. The first one I'd like to highlight was the remodel of nine sets of stairs throughout the water park. As you can see, those two pictures in the middle are the original stairs, again, built in 1996. So since then, these nine sets of stairs have been pool deck coated and painted to replace the original crumbling and unsafe ones. And we are very excited to unveil them this weekend. Next up, we have our slide resurfacing project, which brought significant upgrades to our boulder pool. All three slides underwent fiberglass re, sorry, fiberglass repairs, resurfacing, and received a fresh gel coat with a vibrant blue color. Our tad pool has had a complete transformation. This pool has a depth of only 18 inches and a waterfall feature. It has been replastered, re-tiled, and received fresh coping, dramatically improving both its appearance and functionality. The new tile and plaster have revitalized the space, creating a safer and more inviting environment for our youngest swimmers and their families. Another significant improvement we'd like to highlight is the complete remodel of our back bathrooms. Both the men's and women's facilities received much-needed upgrades, including new flooring, tile, partitions, toilets, sinks, countertops, faucets, and hand dryers. These renovations have greatly enhanced cleanliness, accessibility, and overall guest experience. In addition to the city, to the council allocated CIP-funded projects, the park has benefited from ARPA funding for a critical fence replacement project. The old fence had rotted in many areas, creating unstable and unsafe safety. The worst sections were removed and replaced, and the entire fence line was painted. Additionally, new fencing was installed behind the water park, as you can see, to enhance safety and prevent vandalism. And the last park enhancement I'd like to highlight is the full restoration of the Cat tail Harbor Spray Park, which has been non-operational for two seasons. I'd like to give a huge shout out and thank you to Dustin DeRoy, our aquatics maintenance worker. Without him and his dedication and expertise, this project would not have gotten done. A lot of work went into this restoration, including repairing gaskets, rebuilding valves, addressing electrical problems. Additionally, all chemical feeds were rebuilt, the pit was cleaned, the sand filters were serviced, and the drainage was fixed, ensuring that this park is fully operational and ready for visitors to enjoy this summer. One of the biggest community impacts the Antioch Water Park has is that of our youth through swim lessons. Many of our youngest swimmers arrive for their first day crying, scared, a little nervous about the size of the pool. And we have the privilege of watching their confidence grow. We show, we see them every day make baby steps, and by the end of their class, they're excited, they're in, it's hard to get them out. And they're ready to keep learning and continue becoming safe in and around water. The Antioch Water Park is very proud to be one of the biggest employers of our city's youth. We begin hiring at 15, and with the help and support of our amazing HR, in 2024, we had over 200 part-time staff at the Antioch Water Park. For many, this is their first job, and through their time at the park, whether they're a lifeguard, cashier, swim instructor, concession worker, maintenance worker, or building attendant, they learn vital job skills that will propel them forward as they grow. Many employees grow within the water park, growing into leadership roles and helping support the staff that come after them. We instill in our staff a strong work ethic, customer service skills, and general professional development that they will take into whatever career they choose. Whether our staff are heading to college, building resumes, or pursuing their career, the lessons that they learn at the park stick with them. We love when our former staff visit us, and so we can celebrate them. Next up, you will see the Antioch Water Park expenditures. So much like my colleagues, 61% of, or the majority, is staffing. We do anticipate the slight rise, again, due to the minimum wage increase. The supplies line item for the water park covers essential operational needs as well as chemicals to keep our pools balanced and safe, none of which we expect to see increases in. And business expenses will see a slight increase, as noted by Brad, while maintenance, we expect to stay the same. And then moving into program revenue, general admission remains our biggest revenue, accounting for 65% of our total revenue. Program fees, which includes swim lessons, water aerobics, and special events, come next at 16. Sales, as Brad mentioned, primarily from our concessions, make up 10%, and rental revenue is the remaining 9. And then here you can see the general fund contribution for both fiscal years, with the park revenue covering around 40% of operational costs. Now I'd like to welcome back Shahad Wright to review capital needs.
All right, I got the fun job. So just to give you a full overview of our capital needs for each division, for ACC, all these things are unbudgeted, but it would be, we wouldn't be doing you a service if you didn't know what we actually need in the future, so we can figure it out. One of the first ones, at an estimated cost of $50,000, is our gym floors. Currently, it's been stated that our staff has been sanding and doing the re-lacquering, but they are not professionals, and over time, we have seen imperfections in the floor. So we are asking for a one-time ask of $50,000, so we are able to sand down beneath the painted lines, repaint the gym floors, and get a good finish on it so that we can preserve the floor moving forward. Next is the lighting system within ACC. All the lighting system is a Lutron system. It is proprietary lighting system. And it's, we got sold the Cadillac, and it was really good back then, but they don't make parts for it now. So we are in a situation where light bulbs are going out, and we are unable to fix them. And as you see, a large portion of our revenue comes from rentals, and our customers are getting a little upset when the lights don't work. Moving on, this is the new building, but paint is going to be something that we're going to be looking forward to. Exterior paint and interior paint, currently every year during December, we have our staff paint the most used rooms. But at some point, we're going to need to get it professionally done around the building. Also, at an estimated cost of $100,000, we need new carpeting and flooring throughout the building. This includes the library, this includes our office spaces, our West Island Room, natural wear and tear. As I stated, all these are unbudgeted at this time. All right, Antioch Community Park, capital needs. Our soccer fields was completed and built in 2013. The life expectancy of a turf field is 10 years. I think we all can do the math that we are past that life expectancy. And our staff has done a great job of maintaining these fields. And we just had a field study about two weeks ago, and then we believe that we can stretch it to 2027 with maintenance. The estimated cost is roughly around $2 million. A portion of the field rental revenue goes into a replacement fund, and currently it sits around $300,000 available to go towards this project. All right, the senior center slash Nick Rodriguez Center, capital needs. I can't wait for this roof to get replaced. There's not enough buckets currently in the city for our seniors to be safe and not slip. So we have allocated additional $200,000 towards this project to make sure that we can get a complete new HVAC. We just did the bid walk about two weeks ago. We're going to open the bids, I believe, in two weeks. It's pretty soon. So excited for that, to get that underway this summer. Just like ACC, the flooring and painting is unbudgeted, but is well-needed throughout that building, along with ADA upgrades. Both of those items are unbudgeted. And just like ACC, the lighting in that center facility is proprietary, old and outdated, and needs to be retrofitted. All right, the Antioch Water Park. We do have money budgeted for several of these items. So the first item is estimated cost of approximately $1 million for the plaster and decking. That is budgeted, and we're looking forward to getting that bid package back out this summer so we can complete that. Facility renovations estimated at $675,000. So we had the fortunate surprise of our audio system, our PA system, went out right at the end of the season. That is a safety concern, so we're looking to get that done. The estimated cost for that is $300,000. New front desk, the front desk is dilapidated, is falling apart. That's another, you know, safety concern for our staff. And then we also have the siding project. We have funds allocated towards it. We just haven't had the capacity to put the bid package out. But we need to get the siding done for the front of the building. Mechanical needs, right around $280,000, partially budgeted. This includes heaters for boulder and sport pool, a new sand filter for the lap pool, a lap pump, and new ADA pool chairs.
All right, Shahad and I are going to tag team on this. Okay, so I provided the council with the last update on this particular item, so I want to provide the update here. When I last appeared before council regarding the water park, I informed the council that more information was needed on the sport pool before we could make a budget ask for repairs. So I do have that update available now. The issue with the sport pool is that we observed that there was settling occurring, and one side of the pool is actually five inches below the other side, so the deck is not level. And so we consulted with a couple of experts on this issue, and we have determined that this can be repaired. However, it's going to be about $1 million in order to do that. So when we go to repair the plaster and the surrounding deck, we can fix that issue at the same time. Currently, that is unbudgeted. And then the biggest challenge at the water park is Pruitt Peak. Pruitt Peak houses are two tallest slides. Rattlers run in the canyon cooler. And there is a false rock facade that is hollow on the inside, so it gives the appearance of a natural rock structure, but it's hollow on the inside. And this is where the support structure is. All of our water slides are, and their support structures are inspected annually by Cal OSHA. And a couple of years ago, OSHA brought to our attention that there was corrosion inside the structure and advised that we have a firm. So we went ahead and did that, and the initial evaluation showed that our slides were safe to operate, but the corrosion would need to be addressed. The city council at that time allocated $400,000 for an anticipated repair that we thought would be the answer at that time. And then we contracted with an engineering firm to do an in-depth analysis of the corrosion to determine what repairs were needed. And that included taking samples of the steel structure for analysis. The quarters that are inside the hollow structure that I mentioned are very tight. And what we learned was that in order to be able to do the needed repairs, the rock facade on the structure will need to be removed. And as a result of that, the slides that are there will also need to be replaced because the slides themselves are past their useful life. So at this point, that means that the structure needs to be redesigned and essentially replaced. So we're recommending replacement of the entire structure rather than repair because unfortunately, a repair is just not practical. And we've solicited a couple of just ballpark figures on what we think this would cost. And to be able to replace this structure with something that is more practical to our needs at the water park, it's in the neighborhood of $3 million, which of course is unbudgeted.
All right, so it's still on you. Yeah, so I will say that the park still functions outside of those slides, so no fear in that.
Right, yeah, it's a wonderful park. There's a lot of features that are still operational. It's really just Pruitt Peak. We're still utilizing the pool that's at the bottom of those slides. And as, you know, was presented earlier, we restored several other features. So we have a lot of fun that's going to be happening at the water park this summer. Okay, we're almost at the end here, so I appreciate your patience with this. A couple of other projects that are going on, some of these were mentioned at the Public Works presentation, but I want to highlight them here. Contra Loma Estates Park is nearing completion. That'll be opening up and hopefully in a couple of months. The park projects at Jacobson and Marquette are underway. I do want to highlight that we have a playground assessment that was conducted, and we have found that about a third of all of our playgrounds in the city are going to be nearing the end of their useful life. So they're around $350,000 apiece, depending on the location. So that is something that will need to be evaluated and considered in the future for a city council. Later on tonight, you're going to be hearing about our progress with the Bicycle Garden. Some good news on that one is that one, that project is fully funded and with no general fund contribution, which is great. We've done some work on the Rivertown Community Space Project that is also known as the Beatty Lumber Yard. And there was some Lumber Yard and there was some funding that was allocated by city council to develop the concept, but at this point, the, there's going to be, we need additional funding in order to complete the design and then ultimately the construction for that project. And then I did, just want to mention that we're getting ready to launch a new call for artists, for public art, for our utility box and our mural programs, so we'll be excited to bring that to you in the near future. You want to interject? Okay. I do note that it's seven o'clock, so it's up to the council if they'd like us to continue or...
Yeah, what was the council's pleasure to let them continue? Yes? Okay.
All right, thank you. So again, in recognition that the city is facing budget deficits and our plan right now is to keep service levels as they are, but we do want to bring a couple of opportunities for potential additional revenue generation. The first opportunity is to consider our fee structure. Many of our fees have remained fairly flat over the last nine years. This was just a kind of a benchmark that we chose. So just to highlight where some of the hard costs are in the, just in the area where we work, our inflation CPI had gone up about thirty-three percent since 2016, but our minimum wage has gone up sixty-five percent and just about everybody knows PG&E has gone up significantly in that amount of time. And so this just highlights where some of our hard costs are versus where some of our fees are. So these were just five different fees that we picked from the master fee schedule that highlighted a pretty good cross-section of where our fee structure is and how it's changed over the last nine years. So fees have gone up anywhere from six percent up to nineteen percent. So if the council wanted to consider modifying the fee structure, that is one option. All right, we have also, as I mentioned earlier, we have a pilot sponsorship program that has been going well, so if the council desires, we can look into expanding that program. And that can potentially include event sponsorships, billboards at community park, which we know were done at one point because there's still a couple of old advertisements that are still out there. We can reintroduce advertising in the recreation guide, which has been done in years past. And we can look at naming rights of features of rooms at facilities. This was done when the community center first opened in 2010. Those naming rights, we believe, have expired, so we could look into renaming some of the features that are already there. A couple other opportunities for revenue generation is looking at picnic area reservations. Currently, we are only doing picnic reservations at community park and the Grand Plaza at ACC, and so we could look at expanding that into neighborhood parks. We frequently receive feedback from the community. The community wants to be able to reserve picnic area spaces so that they don't have to go out at six in the morning to, you know, lay claim to the space for the day, so that's something that we could look at as potential revenue generation program. We do have a couple of classes that are currently free to the community and the reason that we're not charging for these is that these particular programs are operated by volunteers, so there's not a direct cost to operate the class itself, though there are impacts to the facility in terms of custodial and setup and cleanup, so we could look at instituting nominal fees to recognize those expenses that we do incur. And then another idea is to institute a senior center membership fee. There was a fee in place previously when the senior center was operated by a nonprofit and many of the senior centers in our area do have a nominal membership fee, so here would be our suggestion if the council was interested in implementing that. I do want to emphasize that the city does have a scholarship program and we could also look at implementing a fee waiver option. It is never our intention to turn away anybody for inability to pay, especially our seniors who are often low-income. And for the water park, we could look at greatly expanding the sponsorship opportunities there. We've looked to the Fremont Aqua Adventure Water Park as kind of a model for this. They have advertisements on inner tubes and life jackets, that's something that we could look at. We could potentially look at adding advertisements on billboards or sandwich boards there, naming of features or even the park itself. The park in Fremont is actually called the Fremont Bank Aqua Adventure Water Park, so there is an opportunity potentially if the council was interested in that. Currently, we do not enforce a no outside food or drink policy at the, for our concession program at the water park. We also know that that was in place at one point because we've seen documentation that lets us know. So that is an opportunity for us to potentially increase revenue for our concession program. Or we could look at contracting out food services. I don't necessarily recommend this for the water park since that program is profitable, but it could be potentially beneficial at Antioch Community Park. So those are just some options for council to consider and we'd be seeking further direction on any and all of those. And with that, that concludes our presentation, so I just want to thank again the council for their time and opportunity for us to present our programs as well as our budget. And I also want to thank all of my staff one more time. They all worked really hard to put all of this information for you, so, and we'll be taking questions at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brad, Shahad and the team. Excellent presentation. Yes, council member.
Is Logan going to come forward and talk to us? That's the highlight, isn't it? I've been waiting for him to...
We got the seniors here as well, so...
Oh, we know that. I'm one of them.
I want to speak on Logan's behalf. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak today. I stand here not only as a proud member of the community, but also as someone whose family has directly benefited from the great value of our community center. From the moment my son began preschool, I saw how much of an impact this space had on him. It wasn't just about learning ABCs or counting numbers, it was about creating a sense of belonging, nurturing friendships, and developing social sense of belonging, of social skills that would shape his character for years to come. Ms. Tracy and the entire team cared for each child with such love and dedication and my son truly thrived because of this. When he reached first grade, I was offered a job at Quail Lodge, a local retirement community. I was able to accept this job knowing that my son would be in good hands at Coyote Hills Camp, Summer Camp. With no family nearby, these summer camps provided a safe place for him, somewhere where he could explore new hobbies, create lifelong friendships, and be guided by amazing mentors. It was a place where he could grow and feel truly supported, but my son's journey didn't stop there. As he grew older, he became a junior rec leader and that experience gave him the confidence to later apply for rec leader, a role he still has today. So I'm incredibly proud to say that my sixteen-year-old son now works for the city of Antioch. And all of this is because of the opportunities and encouragement that the center has provided. Over the years, countless children and adults have benefited from the diverse classes and programs offered by this community center, many at an affordable price. Some families have been able to take advantage of the scholarship programs, ensuring that financial barriers don't prevent anyone from experiencing these benefits that the center provides. I too have had the privilege in participating in many of the classes, so I know about the value that they offer. The community center is truly the heart of our community. It's a place where individuals of all ages and backgrounds can find support, opportunities, and sense of belonging. I urge you, mayor and city council members, to continue to invest in this vital resource. It's more than just a building, it's a space where lives have changed, where families grow stronger, including mine, and where the fabric of our community is woven tighter together. Without our community center, we simply wouldn't have the sense of unity and support that makes Antioch such a special place to live. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam clerk, do you have any public comments on this?
I do have seven speaker forums for public comment. The first speaker will be Pat Jeremy, followed by, I'm sorry, I think you also turned in a speaker card, Mickey. Okay, so I will, followed by Dorothy Ellis and Marie Taylor.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. I'm Pat Jeremy and I'm the current president of Antioch Friends of Seniors. The nonprofit was formed in nineteen, excuse me, in 2024, so we are still a very young nonprofit, but our goal is to work with the city and the senior center to support our seniors. We work closely and diligently with all of the staff members there. We run the bingo. We try and provide other events and provide support for them so that the city doesn't have to bear all of the financial responsibilities. To date, we've given back all, just about ten thousand dollars in the form of prizes for the bingos. In fact, just today, we allocated three thousand dollars for trips to reduce the cost to seniors of three trips that will be taken this summer. So we are working diligently with them. The senior center is a safe and secure place where our senior citizens can meet and learn and socialize. The center is a community where they feel comfortable interacting with each other. I see most of these people at numerous events there and some of them have even become volunteers. One of the things that really impressed me is that they are a very diverse community, yet you would never know it. They are all friends, they are all interacting with each other, and they are enjoying each other. And I believe that if we did not have the senior center and the ability for these seniors to come together and interact and have a place to go, that several of them, maybe even most of them, would end up being isolated, maybe even shut-ins. So I urge you to keep the senior center going, keep it properly staffed, properly funded, and as a senior center nonprofit, we will do our best to continue funding as many projects as we can and reducing the cost of the senior trips so that more and more people can afford it. Right now, some of those senior trips are close to two hundred dollars per person. We're trying to bring that down to less than a hundred dollars per person. So I thank you and one thing I'd like to do right now is have my board stand up. This is just a few. We have thirteen members on the board and they're very, very hard workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Next speaker is Dorothy, followed by Marie and Greg.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. My name is Dorothy Ellis. Currently, I am the Park and Recreation Chair and I come here in support of the Park and Recreation Department. I've had an opportunity to attend a lot of the programming that we've put on for the community and see how of a vital role this is for our community. So our parking rec is just more than just funding or a budget, it is the heart and the fabric of this community. The staff does an excellent job and put on programs that everyone can participate in from our seniors, for our seniors program, also for our youth programs. Also too, I'm a member of Antioch, I've been living here for over thirty, almost twenties, over twenty-seven plus years, and my daughter personally was a benefit of the Antioch Youth Program summer job. And so because of her involvement in the program, because of the programs that I've been able to participate with myself, it made me want to serve this community. So I serve this community with pride on the Park and Recreation Commission and so I see how vital these services are for this community and in how it, it brings us all together. And so I just want you guys to look at that, don't just look at us as a budget, look at us as this community and how important these services and programs are to this community. I also want to just know that, you know, I know it's a critical time for the budget, but these services that the seniors and all the community is receiving is very important and we cannot see, we cannot have, you know, funding be cut. I know you have to cut, cut funding, but the Parks and Recreation is a small portion of that budget and I'm looking at how this can continue to provide the services to our community. So I want you to, when you have to think about what you have to do, because I know that's a part of your job as well, keep in mind of what this does for our community. Also too, it, by having a great recreation programs, it also provides health and wellness for this community. It also provides togetherness, it also provides vital learning skills for this community that helps with problem solving, that helps our youth be more impactful to this community. So when you take in all that in consideration, remember how vital these services and programs are for the Park and Recreation community. And I just love this staff, they do such amazing job and I thank them every day and I'm happy to be a service to the community as well as to the Park and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Marie, followed by Greg and Selena.
You said Marie?
Yes.
Good evening, city council. My name is Marie Taylor and I am a member of the Antioch Senior Center and I'm also on the board for Antioch Friends of Seniors. I just want to give you a little history on our senior center. We have about three young men at the center that are ninety-nine, one is over a hundred and one is coming up a hundred in a couple of months. They manage to get to that center at least three times a week. And if you could hear their stories, you would be amazed. They tell me so many stories, I just can't believe. One guy said to me, "I can't believe that I'm living to be ninety-nine." He said, "You know, I used to be a gangster when I was a young man." And I said, "Hey, you're still here? We're moving forward at the Antioch Senior Center." We have a lot of love there. We have a lot of diversity and we love one another and we enjoy each other. We can come there and express our pain. If our hip hurts today, we can talk about it, because we're talking to somebody that knows what it's all about. If you get the opportunity, take time and come by and visit us. And thank you for all that you have contributed to us and I'm so excited about our building being repaired. I've been a member there since 2012 and it's time for an update and a renewal for us. It'll boost our spirits up even a little bit more. Thank you very much and I appreciate all, oh, and our staff that we have there, the young people, they're fantastic. They go above and beyond when a senior walks in and say, "I got a problem." If they can't fix it, they find somebody that can. And I want to give a shout-out to them because they're wonderful. And I tell June all the time, act like I'm your mama.
Thank you, Marie.
Next speaker is Greg, followed by Selena and Linda.
Mayor Brunell, members of the council staff, my name is Greg Fury and I've been in Antioch for over forty years and I never really realized how much benefits and, you know, all the good things that take place at the Nick Rodriguez Center. And so my tech skills were pretty bad and my ten-year-old was outdoing me, so I went down to the senior center and I met a gentleman by the name of Vince McFarlane. And for the last five months, I've caught up with my ten-year-old. But, you know, I've learned a lot more than just the tech skills at the senior center and I've got a tour, I have an opportunity to meet a lot of people there. One of the expenses that we were talking about is transportation, so I guess they've got me involved in seeing if we can't get a shuttle bus and, you know, they're, one of the things that he really liked with a, was a fifty-six... And, you know, they're, one of the things that he really liked was a 56-unit bus with ADA lift, with a bathroom in the back. So I figure, you know, between, you know, locally, what could the county can done? I talked to Diane Burgess, Senator Grayson. I haven't talked to Garaminda yet, but, you know, with everybody pulling together, I think they can pull something like that together. Because, you know, with the bus system, it's not, you know, utilized by just Antioch. They could share with Oakley and with Pittsburgh. But, you know, one of the things that caught my attention while I was here, you know, they call it reductions, but it was actually cutbacks. One of the ladies there was working, you know, four days a week and got it cut back to three. And she was pretty impressive. I mean, she negotiated warrior tickets for $65 apiece. And I go, "Jesus, if you're that good, I would have hired you when I worked for the Building Trades." But, you know, there's so much need there. And I would hope that, you know, I'll talk to all of you, you know, throughout the time, that, you know, not only did you fund the Senior Center, you gave them extra money to keep it vital. And, you know, since the other day, I officially became a senior member of the, you know, the Senior Center. So hopefully, I put them over 1,000 members because that's where they're pushing. So I don't know. It happens, but one day you wake up and you're a senior and a grandpa. Thank you.
Next speaker is Selena, followed by Linda and Lucy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Selena, and I am a longtime resident of Antioch, California via my father. Last year, I actually had to learn to swim. I had a deathly fear of water. I was thrown in a pool at about three years old, went straight to the bottom. But as you get older, you can't run, you can't hike. So my doctor and my surgeon said, "Water is your friend." I just about died. But I get the recreation guide. I peruse, saw that there were private swim classes, signed up for one, and met the most amazing staff. Emma was my first instructor, and she knew I was deathly afraid. I told her what happened to me. She worked with me. She was patient. She was kind. And I learned to swim in three weeks. I can't swim a full lap, but I can swim half of a lap. I couldn't tread water. I was deathly afraid of deep water. I would swim in at three and a half feet. After about the third month, I learned to tread water without the noodle. And I didn't even know I was treading water until the instructor said, "Look at where your noodle is." So I just want to say, I really appreciate the staff at the water park. Bree is behind me. I'm sorry if that's not your name. I'm bad with names. But during my time of going there, I had to have an emergency surgery, and I couldn't walk. And they were gracious enough to work with me, to push back my classes. They worked with me financially, which was very much appreciated. And I can't say enough, I signed up again this year because I want to improve my strokes, and I want to just improve my overall health. I found out just doing some research that it staves off dementia. That happens to run in my family. I'm battling that with my parents right now. But their staff, and it's very heartwarming for me to say this because of my own experience with being so afraid of water and having that cripple me all my life. I'm almost 60 years old. So that's 57 years of being crippled. I hardly took a bath, but I did take showers. But that's how deep it ran. And they, like I said, they worked with me. I had the lifeguards telling me, "Look at her go." Everyone on the staff from in the office, I remember a young man named Heath. He was my cheerleader. The lifeguards became my cheerleader. And it's a beautiful program, and I hope it never goes away. Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda, followed by Lucy and Denise.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Green. I am the Director of the Exceptional Programs. We are with the Parks and Rec Department, providing recreational classes in adaptive and inclusive programs in dance, gymnastics, parent and me, skateboarding, cheerleading. And just, we are there to help the children from ages one with their parents all the way up to teens in social recreational classes. A little bit of a backstory. When I was nine years old, my family moved to Antioch. The first place, I was a dancer in Livermore. First place they took me was over to the Nick Rodriguez. I danced there. And then my mother got a job there. That was my first job at 14. And I stayed there all the way up until I had my own children, who are now grown adults. And when my sister and I opened a school, we had so much knowledge just from working at the community center and all that we've learned. So fast forward, you know, I raised my kids. And then about three and a half years ago, we came back to teach these classes at the community center. My three grown children have worked at the community center. But for us, the most important thing is being able to provide these adaptive and inclusive classes for children of all abilities. It's amazing to see that, you know, we can see a child that is limited or nonverbal holding hands, running, dancing with other children. And just seeing, you know, during COVID, when we had to stop classes for a little bit and then start over, seeing these children coming, clinging to parents' legs. But by the end of the six weeks, they're ready to get out there and dance and perform. And so I just want to say thank you to the city and thank you to the community center staff for allowing this to happen. And I hope it can continue because, you know, for the students, for the jobs. I currently have volunteer teens who also started with these classes, who are now working. And to see, you know, to go on a Saturday, and my daughter's with me, to see my nephew doing maintenance. It's just such an amazing community. And, you know, I just appreciate all of it. So thank you very much.
Next speaker is Lucy, followed by Denise.
Mayor Ron, Monica, Louis, Tamisha, Dawn. Good evening. Whoops, my speech disappeared. Where'd it go? Here it is. When you're considering the budget for the Recreation Department, I know you'll give special attention to the Antioch Senior Center, where I'm both a member and a volunteer. I witnessed firsthand, many times, how meaningful the center is in the lives of Antioch seniors, including my own. On a daily basis, it provides social interaction that has been proven to be essential for health and longevity. With the cooperation of Delta Transit, only the bedridden cannot get to the center. Classes and trips provide essential movement and exercise, mental challenge, and lifelong learning. Lunches, the Contra Costa and Solano County Food Bank access, and the Fresh Approach Farmer's Market Truck ensure good nutrition for our seniors. Antioch Senior Center is one of our city's best success stories. The city staff at the center are wonderful individuals who truly care about us and exhibit passion for their jobs. Please do what you can to ensure the center has all it needs to continue to thrive so that it will still be there when you feel ready to enjoy its riches.
Last speaker for the Budget Development Parks and Recreation item is Denise. Okay. I do not have any more speaker cards for the Budget Development Parks and Recreation Department item.
All right, thank you. Being that we've run way over our seven o'clock start time for a regular council meeting, I would just ask that we could bring staff or council comments back at the beginning of our next study session on, I guess it's the 10th. And we can start with that one.
It was scheduled to come back, so I figured we'd go over, like you said.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I know the time is there. I just want to say, on behalf of the City Council, the presentation was absolutely outstanding, and the public testimonies were wonderful. It's, this has been very uplifting, and I just want to say thank you very much. And Logan, I can hardly wait to have you come up and speak to us in another year or so. Thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn this portion of our meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, please cast your votes.
Excuse me, I don't mean to be rude, but I don't know if I filled out the paper right. But my name is Angela Jones, and I am here concerning the Antioch City. My daughter was at the movie theater that they put on, and my daughter got jumped because the proper security was not notified.
Ms. Jones, if you want to put a speaker-
I did, I don't know if I did it right. This is my first time.
No, it'll, we'll have a comment at the regular meeting. She'll have an opportunity to speak. All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn at 7:27 PM carries 5:0.
All right, we are going to take five minutes between this meeting and the next one, and then we'll be right back. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Council meeting of April the 8th, 2025. Sorry we're starting a little bit late. We had a study session that ran over, but thank you for your patience. Could I please, oh, I'm sorry, at 7:38. Madam Clerk, could I please get a roll call?
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Torres Walker is here, but she just stepped out. Councilmember Freitas?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Rocha?
Here.
Mayor Bernal?
Here.
Councilmember Torres Walker is not present at 7:38 PM.
All right, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. City Attorney, could you please report out on closed session?
Yes, there was one item on the closed session calendar for tonight. Public employee performance evaluation, city manager. This closed session was authorized pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957 Sub B Sub 1. There was no reportable action.
All right, thank you. It's now time for public comment. Madam Clerk, could you please read the rules for public comment?
Yes. Welcome to a meeting of the Antioch City Council. Your attendance is appreciated. The State Ralph and Brown Act guarantees the public's right to address the city council within the framework of speaker rules. Because agendas encompass many business items, speaker rules enable the meeting to be efficiently conducted and concluded at a reasonable hour. The city council can only take action on items that are listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak about an item not on the agenda, the public comment section of the agenda is for you. Unagendized comments are provided until no later than 7:30 PM, when the city council moves on to agenda items. There is another opportunity for public comments at the end of the meeting. If you wish to speak either during public comments or during an agenda item, please fill out a speaker request form located at the entrance of the council chambers. Please place the speaker request form in the tray near the city clerk before the city council meeting begins. This will enable us to call upon you to speak. Important, the speaker request form is retained as a public record and as such, may be shared with others upon request in line with the California Public Records Act. On your speaker request form, please identify the comment as for announcement of community events, public comment, or a specific agenda item. No one may speak more than once on any agenda item or during public comments. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called on to speak. When you are called on to speak, please limit your comments to the time allotted, up to three minutes at the discretion of the mayor. The consent calendar is a group of items which are determined to be routine. These items are usually considered all at once and approved without further discussion. If you are opposed to action which is recommended for an item on the consent calendar, please submit a speaker request form before the meeting and place it in the speaker card tray near the city clerk. This will enable the item to be removed from the consent calendar and call on you to speak. We do not have any public hearings tonight. After having heard from the public, the agenda item will be closed. Deliberations will then be limited to members of the city council. If the meeting appears to be going late, the city council may decide to continue some items until a subsequent meeting. The city council will try to make this determination around 10 o'clock PM. It is the goal to stop discussing agenda items by no later than 11 o'clock PM.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will take public comments until 8:15. How many speakers do we have with cards?
I have seven speaker request forms.
All right, so we'll give each speaker three minutes then.
The first speaker I have is Doug, followed by Hector and Chris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here today, my name is Doug Fields. First, I want to say I'm glad Costco's opened up and Sand Creek Road. But what I foresee is could be some traffic issues with that stretch from Costco down to the Sand Creek. Currently, the cut through before the houses were built was right through Pruitt Ranch, the corner of Michel F. And they did put two speed bumps in. They should have probably, I thought, put a third one at the bottom of the hill where you come in. And there's only one 25 mile an hour speed sign posted as you turn left off the Hillcrest, not even close to where the bumps are. So what I see when you get to the corner, you have two left-turn lanes, and there's no speed limit signs posted from Sand Creek all the way down to Costco. There's nothing. There's one 35 mile an hour as you're heading towards Sand Creek Road. So I can foresee perhaps accident happening, one or two at least. And when you have two cars going left and no stoplight, and you have cars coming this way, 45, 50 miles an hour, when you're turning left, you have to watch and make sure you don't have to hit your brakes. And if you are, and somebody's next to you, that could even complicate things. So I just want, I don't know if anything's been talked about in consideration about putting a stoplight there. I'm sure at some point they'll have to because they do have two left-turn arrows with white paint on them. But my concern is, the people living in those houses from Hillcrest down, they don't get any, they get a steady stream of cars. And I remember, my kid was four, five years old. We lived on a busy street. We couldn't even cross the street. And it was very disheartening to not be able to do that. So I wanted to bring it up. I don't know if there's anything planned on this at all, but with your traffic management team. But I would hope that there is because it could be something that, we don't want to have an accident first and then decide what we want to do later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Hector, followed by Chris and Angela.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Hector Navarez. I recently retired from IBM last summer after 43 years as a field engineer. Moved my family here in 1997 with the, I don't know, the hope that the city seemed to be going in the right direction. We had a new community center going, new high school. Highway 4 was going to get expanded, which it did, and BART coming, so everything looked good. And then it just seemed like a few years- And then it just seemed like a few years later, everything started going downhill. I came here today because of the crime, the shoplifting is out of control. Last month, you guys had a task force just at one store at Target, they arrested ten people in five hours at one store? That's two per hour, that's imagine the whole day. And imagine all the other stores in Antioch that are getting shoplifted every day. I've been going to the Safeway over here on Deer Valley for many, many, many years. And for many, many, many years, I would witness a shoplifting, it seemed like every other time I was there. I would point it out to the employees or the manager there and they would just say, hey, we can't do anything about it. Or they would say, yeah, we can't touch him or they they might assault us. So I'm thinking, so on top of being a shoplifter, they're also a criminal that will attack someone. To me, that's a problem and the shoplifting just continues. Now, I'm going to pick on Safeway because that's the store that I go to. And over the years, they they actually, they locked up their alcohol, that didn't work, added a security guard, that didn't work. Locked up the alcohol in an area where you had to get out, that didn't work. Added another security guard, added barriers. The barriers seem to have worked a little bit, but I still, the other day, I saw a couple stealing stuff out of there, they worked their way out of the barriers. When I talked to the employees there, they basically said, yeah, we call the police, but they say we can't do anything. I don't buy that. They'll say, it just seems like they have, they can just, people can just come here and steal from us. That's going to cause businesses to close down, to leave our our community, it's an embarrassment to our community that we have to walk into a store and everything's locked up. It's an embarrassment that a citizen, when they go for their morning walk or their afternoon jog or evening stroll, they got to carry a stick with them or a or a golf club to feel safe. The main reason I came over here was last, I'm running out of time, a month ago I came in here and there was a lady that berated you guys for doing your job of cleaning up the streets, taking tents and everything else off the streets. We don't need that, we do not need to become another Oakland where you're allowing that kind of behavior in the streets. I'm sorry, these guys are bums and they don't belong on the streets. Too many problems to even talk in.
Anyway.
I would like to note for the record that Councilmember Torres Walker is present as of seven forty-five P M. Next speaker is Chris, followed by Angela and Gavin.
Okay, congratulations on your retirement, first of all. Mayor, City Council, my name is Chris Schalkeford, I'm the C E O of a company named Flex, Your A I. We came last month with my partner Derek O'Neil, who has his own A I company as well. And just a quick recap, our message was, the East Bay is getting left behind in the A I evolution or revolution and we're really looking to try to help that. I'm based down in San Ramon, he's up in Discovery Bay, Antioch's a natural conversation for a coming together point, but also just the excellent work that it seems like is underway here with re-entered citizens in addition to the general population. So we came last month, gave out probably fifteen business cards, didn't hear a word back from anyone. So my ask here is, who can we partner with to help bring Antioch up to speed on artificial intelligence? So I would say, in terms of the A I evolution, I'll go through this quickly, but I think everyone's familiar with Chat G P T. I think that might be where it stops, there's probably six steps and it feels like most of the East Bay is stuck on step number one. So after step number one, there's still the text box, they're still personalizing your custom G P Ts, there is voice bots, there's digital cloning, there's augmented, shoot, it's rags, it's basically populating large language models so that companies and employees can use A I without it feeding back into public models and taking their intellectual property. I feel like that last thirty seconds might feel like I wasn't even speaking English and that's that's part of my point, right, is please help us level up Antioch and just give us someone to connect with, would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Angela, followed by Peyton and Flori.
Hello to y'all. Hi, Mary, how you doing? My name is Angela Jones. I'm here concerning the movie night that we had about two weeks ago, Antioch Movie Theater in Pittsburgh. Antioch Center put it on. When y'all put it on, y'all did not notify Pittsburgh P D. Y'all did not notify the security of that plaza. How I know this, because I was there before the police was there. I dropped my daughter off. I walked my daughter into that movie theater. Your team seen the video. I walked her in, I met some of the people. I said my daughter gonna be okay. Yes, she took a picture for the for the article. I go to Big Five, Five Below, not even in there, twenty minutes. My daughter called me, she said, Mama, where you at, something ain't right. In the midst of me driving to get my baby, my baby got into a fight and if I was not there, she would have been jumped. Literally, if y'all want to do something for the outside community, you got to tighten up the security. You can't put on an event and put out signs to say bring your kids without the proper security. This have affected my daughter. When my daughter went back to school, her face was on every meter you can think, even including me, because I had to jump out the car. I did not touch them kids and I had to control myself. It's not fair. I take care of my mama, my oldest daughter graduated from Dodger Medical High School behind Kaiser. She is supposed to be twenty-two years old, I know what any y'all can do for these kids. I'm not dumb, I'm not here to try to strip your team. But if you want to do something right for the kids in the community and you want to take them out of there and bring them outside and do events, you got to have the right resources. Now the budget, I heard y'all talk about the budget, this is my first time, I don't know too much about that. But I did not hear anything about the money for the security for the outside events. You got to pay for that. If you're going to take kids out of there and put them somewhere, you got to pay for it. No disrespect, my name is Angela Jones, y'all have a blessed one.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gavin Peyton, followed by Flori and Denise.
Good evening, Council. Just another round of applause for the mother that spoke up for her child. I was going to talk about something, but I just wanted to address this real quick. So this is the type of stuff the youth council's been talking about, the lack of response from local law enforcement, local people that are supposed to serve and protect us, also meaning you guys. When is enough, is it going to be enough? Because the youth out here is also really hurting, we're tired of being attacked, we're tired of being called guerrillas, we tired of all of it. So if this isn't a wake-up call, I'm not sure what is. When are we going to get a mental health holistic wellness hub for us? Because we need it, we out here hurting. I don't know if you got children, grandchildren, but that could have easily been your kid at that event and that could have happened to them. Your response would have been totally different. Am I right or am I wrong? So with that said, I also wanted to address that racism is real, it is here, it is continuously happening and across the county it is happening. And just so you guys know, that someone posted that that like misrepresented the N double A C P and it's been going around the county about verbiage, talking about us Negroes apologize to the white folks, the racist white folks. So that's been going around. Also, we're tired of being pushed back and I don't know who decided to make that post around in this county, but I'm going to stand up here and tell you that I do not apologize to no one for who I am. I will not apologize for the color of my skin, to the hair on my head, to the who I love, to anything of my religion. I not only stand on business, I stand on my morals and what I believe is right. And what is right is to hold everyone here accountable because we all need justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Flori, followed by Denise and then Ron.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Flori Panigua and I'm the Director of Team Jesus Outreach Ministries here in Antioch. I just wanted to come here and invite all of you, if you are able to, our event is coming Sunday at eleven Texas Street, I would like to invite you to come and get to know us because we partner with you. Like example, we, when Executive Inn was open, we partner with you from the beginning until it was closes. So come and get to know us, we are here to help you and help one another in our in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Denise, followed by Ron.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Denise Rundle and I'm out here tonight because I want to talk to you about Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. I know it's not till September, but what I'm here for is I would like to see if the city would work with me or whatever to bring awareness to childhood cancer. One of the ways is, and I was just talking to the police officer, would be to do the awareness ribbons, my nonprofit would buy them and they could go on police cars, last year the fire department had them, they could go on city vehicles. The only thing, they can't go through the car wash, you have to remember to take them off. The other thing that could be done is if maybe one day a week you have your employees wear gold or ask them to wear gold or put something on their desk, gold, to represent childhood cancer awareness. Maybe you could put on the marquee that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. But I feel our kids deserve it and I would like to see Antioch do something to help bring awareness to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you.
The last speaker card I have is for Ron.
Greetings to the Mayor and the Council and my Council representative. I'm here because in your discussion of the budget, I would hope that we could prioritize economic development. I moved here with six of my brothers, we all bought homes out here by the grace of God and contrary to what some people say, I think this is a beautiful place, but I find it very difficult to be able to get things done out here. I think through the economic development, it'll be able to address a multitude of things, of course taxes, people would begin to be civically more engaged because they would have an investment into the place where they work, I mean where they live. You want them to work, live, and play at the same place. So as a shareholder in this corporation called Antioch, I would like you to prioritize economic development. And someone who is knowledgeable about the opportunities and maybe even see if you can carve out someone who could seek out private-public partnerships in order to make things go along a little further and easier than they are. Antioch is a great place, based on how you make it. So I mean, we do several things here, we never had an incident, but we want to be involved in the city in which we planted our flag at and that's Antioch. And so I would hope that there would be someone who's knowledgeable, I would hope that we would ask that an economic developer be prioritized in the budget as a department head, someone who would be active. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any more speaker cards.
All right, thank you. We will be moving on to item number one, this is from the last city council meeting being continued, review and approve the conceptual design of the Bicycle Garden Project.
Thanks so much, Mayor and City Council. This item is to provide an update on our progress in the Bicycle Garden Project and for council to provide approval of the final design concept. The Bicycle Garden is a unique park feature consisting of a miniature streetscape designed for children to learn to ride their bikes in a safe environment and for families to enjoy. Our speaker will talk on it, thanks.
That'll be me, thank you. Thank you, City Manager Scott. As you mentioned, SAP began work on the Bicycle Garden concept back in two thousand twenty-one in partnership with the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. An in-depth community stakeholder process was held to spread awareness of the concept and determine the most appropriate location. Pruitt Park was identified as the best location and was approved by city council. In partnership with City of Antioch, C C T A applied for and received a four million dollar federal grant from Safe Streets for All and the city will be contributing a one million dollar match from development impact fees. Following the grant award, we have been working with C C T A on the final concept, which included two additional public workshops and has been approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. Now we are here to present the final concept and we seek council's feedback and approval. And with that, I will turn it over to Andrew Dillard, who is the Senior Engineer with C C T A and he has been our liaison on this project. You want to do it or you want me to? Okay.
Well, good evening, Mayor Bernal and council members, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. As Brad mentioned, my name is Andrew Dillard, I'm a Senior Engineer with the Contra Costa Transportation Authority and I am pleased to provide you with an update on the project and seek your consideration approval of the conceptual design. So the Antioch Bicycle Garden, as you all know, it's a very exciting project, it'll provide both safety and recreational benefits to the community and when completed, it'll be a unique facility where school-aged children as well as adults will be able to learn and practice bicycle safety in a fun and inviting environment. As Brad described and Mayor, City Manager Scott described, the five million dollar project is funded by a four million dollar United States Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant as well as a one dollar match contribution from the city. So it's just a little bit about C C T A, I'm sure you know, and Mayor Bernal sits on our on our board, but we're the Contra Costa's designated congestion management agency. We're responsible for delivering projects and programs throughout the county, including administration of Contra Costa's Measure J Half-Cent Transportation Sales Tax, of which provides funding, as you know, for transportation projects throughout the county, including transit, pedestrian, and bicycle projects, return to source funds for local road maintenance and improvements, and valuable programs such as commute alternatives, safe routes to school, and and seniors and folks with disabilities. So a little bit of background and to set the stage, so back in two thousand twenty-one, this project was developed in conjunction with the city as well as Street Smarts Diablo and the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. From there, it moved on to, the city moved on with selection of, or actually placement of an ad hoc committee comprised of the Parks and Recreation Commission. That ad hoc committee was put to task to decide on a site- That ad hoc committee was put to task to decide on a site, and as you know, it's been decided to be located at Pruitt Park. Beyond that, in 2021, we, in conjunction with the city, Contra Costa Transportation Authority pursued a grant application for the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant. And in 2023, we were awarded that grant. After that, around spring of '24, we began working with the city on agreements and we procured consultants. And then we started with preliminary design activities in summer of 2024. And then in the fall, we started conducting public outreach activities, which I'll speak to a little bit further in the presentation. So as mentioned, the City of Antioch and CCTA collaborated and worked closely with the FHWA or the Federal Highway Administration on the required contractual agreements to carry out this project, including coordination of this countywide grant application. It consisted of five projects across four local agencies in order to better position the projects to compete for the federal funding. And also, it enables the local agencies to leverage CCTA's experience with delivering federally funded projects and reduce administrative burdens. Further, CCTA negotiated with FHWA to focus the entirety of the federal funding award only on the construction phase, which further reduces administrative burdens and will help streamline delivery of this project. Once the grant was secured, CCTA proceeded to award a professional services contract with TYLN Consultants for the engineering and environmental phases for the bike garden. Beginning in June and going forward through delivery and through final design, the project team has been working along with city staff and the consultant team, meeting on a regular basis to put this conceptual design together. So I'll speak a little bit more to the funding source and give you a little more context. So as mentioned, we were awarded the grant in 2023. In total, it's a $29 million grant, of which Antioch is a benefactor of two of those projects, the Bike Garden, as well as the L Street Pathway to Transit Project, which I know you're all familiar with. This was our first joint application where CCTA took the lead in submitting the application. We'll be taking the lead on delivering the project, but it's important to note that the city has all decision-making authority on all of the project elements from design through So a little bit about Safe Streets and Roads for All. This was created as part of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law and Jobs Act. It was a discretionary program appropriating approximately $5 billion in funding over a five-year period. The US DOT adopts a safe system approach with this SS4A program. The guiding paradigm is to address roadway safety with five objectives, as you can see here. Safer people, safer roads, safer vehicles, safer speeds, and post-crash care. So a little bit about, specifically about the Bike Garden. As I mentioned, this was a team effort with the city, Street Smarts Diablo, and of course, CCTA. And back in 2020, when this concept was being developed, this really, really awesome video was developed, which I'm sure most of you have seen to this point. I'm happy to play that. It's a couple minutes long, if you'd all like to see it. It gives a really good conceptual overview of the project and all the various elements that are going to be included.
I'd like to see it, please.
Okay, great. Okay. Okay, so as you watch the video here, first, the project proposes to incorporate trees and park-like amenities into the design and allow park users to play, rest, and picnic throughout the garden, even if not riding bikes. You can see friendly colors in the rainbow crosswalks that could be used to enhance fun and a playful atmosphere. Each traffic element you're seeing, it has an intentional purpose, with specific learning objectives that directly address urban riding situations. One of the examples you can see here is a tight S-turn section with built-in features such as potentially rock dodge or traffic cones. It's fun, but it also encourages riders to practice bike handling and obstacle avoidance. Intersection and crosswalks, it'll teach kids about right-of-way and signaling. As I talk through this, you're going to see various elements, but one of the elements of this proposed is a bus play structure that will provide transit education so kids can learn how to use the bus when riding on streets, mount their bikes on buses, but it could also teach riders in an educational setting about parked vehicle door zones. There will be a variety of signs, roundabout, one-way, two-way traffic patterns, green bike lanes, bike boxes, and merge points, all things that you'd see on your standard roadway, modern roadways. Riders will be exposed to all kinds of these modern-type elements. You can see here that there's a wayfinding sign, educational signage. It's not just traffic signs, but educational signs to teach our young riders how to interact at some of these intersections. There's also elements such as railroad crossing. So one of the things that was discussed at the Parks Commission was, you know, actually embedding real railroad tracks into this to simulate railroad crossing for bike riders. The outdoor education space could be in the picnic area, allow for group instruction, interpretive signs, as I mentioned, in Discovery Station, and provide for independent self-guided learning as our young riders traverse through the park. And then also, other amenities, more utilitarian, such as bike racks are really important, such as at the entry points in various locations throughout the Bike Garden facility. Got a little bit more here to go, but this is an example of the roundabout type feature. And then you can see one thing that's really important to notice, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in the landscaping portion, is the abundance of trees. We know that the site is pretty barren at this point, so abundance of shade was really, really emphasized at our outreach workshops, as well as by the Parks and Recreation Commission. Oh, let me go backwards here. There we go. Okay. So I'd like to give a quick shout-out again to the Street Smarts Diablo team. They played an integral role in leading this concept and particularly of that video. As you know, the Diablo Street Smarts provide safe routes to school, education throughout the county. It's help-funded by Measure J. And they provide all kinds of a range of activities, as you probably well know, bike and pedestrian safety assemblies, bike helmet distribution fittings. They have an excellent reputation throughout the county and we're really indebted to them for helping with this. From the beginning, this project has been guided by four equally important goals: safety, community health, climate change, and equity. Development team worked together to flesh out these concepts. Particularly, the goal of safety, of course, will be fulfilled as the facility will serve as kind of a gold standard for bicycle safety education and working towards a regional Vision Zero goal of eliminating fatal and severe traffic collisions involving cyclists and pedestrians. And of course, as we mentioned, it will provide a hands-on bicycle ped and safety driver safety education, designed for both programmed and independent learning in a comfortable environment. Community health, to increase and support community building, exercise, of course, outdoor recreation, and social, emotional well-being for youth and adults while instilling a culture of bicycling in the City of Antioch and the region. Climate change, improve air quality, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, inspiring the community members to replace vehicle trips to and from schools and other community destinations with biking or walking. And finally, equity, of course, to provide equitable, safe, and no-cost access to the facility for all members of the public, including youth and adults of all ages and abilities. So the Bike Garden has an opportunity to expand beyond the in-class lessons for more impactful safety education. It will help inspire safer, healthier bike trips to schools, as I mentioned, and throughout the community. It's a facility that can host and organize safety classes by either local entities or potentially regional entities such as Bike East Bay. And as well, the community will be able to visit the park on their own and at no cost to practice and learn without staff or having to enroll in a formal program. It's also a place where parents and really all road users can refresh their own knowledge and skills, reminding everyone to safely use and share the road with cyclists and pedestrians. As I mentioned, it'll be a place where kids can just play and have fun, get exercise, be outside, and use their imaginations to navigate streets in a safe environment where they can build their skills, gain confidence in riding their bicycle, and become safe road users. So just a little bit more about regarding the location. There were multiple factors evaluated by the ad hoc committee of the Parks and Recreation Commission. All parks were evaluated throughout the city, but ultimately, as you well know, the recommendation was to move forward with the Pruitt Park location. And there are several factors for that. I don't have to tell the council and the public here, you're all familiar with your community, but because of its central access, it's located, of course, next to the library, the community center, located on Lone Tree Way across from Deer Valley High School, in proximity to Tri Delta Transit stops, including, of course, Deer-MacQualeme Trail. It's about a mile and a half from the Deansay Trail, all those connection points, so it really made it a really optimal spot for the project location. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to the conceptual design. So there's really two elements, as you've seen in your packet. There's the streetscape elements, the safety aspect of it, and then, of course, this is also a park, so there's the landscape element as well. So some of the recommendations for the bicycle and streetscape, a lot of it is what you saw in the video there. We've been flushing those out, the conceptual design, and that will be further refined as we go into the actual design of the project. But some of the kind of high-level takeaways that you see here, we'll have beginner and intermediate bicycle skill, or what's recommended is beginner and intermediate bicycle skill level areas intended for all user groups, but primarily for youth and school-aged children. Both one- and two-way, paved bicycle paths, kind of simulating what you would see on the street with a Class II bike lane or a Class I trail, such as the McQualeme Trail. All the roadway striping that we talked about, the standard roadway striping, you know, high-visibility green pavement markings, crosswalks, roadway directional arrows. Signage, traffic, wayfinding, as we saw in the video there, and educational interpretive signage. This is something that will be flushed out so that when you come up to an intersection that maybe has green markings, there'll be some description of what you're supposed to do and how you're supposed to behave when you enter into that intersection. Street name sign network is something that was talked about. This is a great opportunity where maybe we could get the youth in the community involved with actually naming the streets and installing street names with a street name sign network. So a really great way to get the community involved in the design. Intersection treatments, this is a big piece of the project. Functioning traffic signal. There's a number of ways, we've been talking about how to go about that, but it would be an actual functioning four-way traffic signal, more standard stop-and-yield controls, and then, as you saw a couple times in the video there, a roundabout. We talked a little bit about roadside features. The bus, it could be used as a play structure, and then for educational purposes, it could be used to simulate a door zone. So a door zone is when you're riding down a street and there's a bunch of parked cars, and how do you act when you come into that type of situation and environment to keep your space? So that's a number of uses for one feature. Bicycle slow zones is something we talked about, to designate like a real slow, like, you know, zero to five mile an hour section. So it forces riders to like think about it and slow their bicycles down as they go through that area. And then, of course, we talked about hosting for bicycle safety and education, so having designated areas for that as well. So as I mentioned, the Parks and Recreation, excuse me, Parks and Recreation Commission, they received a presentation, I believe it was January 25th of this year, where they provided some very, very excellent comments and proceeded to recommend forwarding this to you this evening. Some of their comments regarding the streetscape features was to consider a pump track. I know that's something that's been talked about in years past. If it's cost feasible, if it's not cost feasible, that we would designate a space where in the future, it could potentially be added. And then agility areas, they like the idea of having agility areas where you'd have traffic cones in the street or some other type of apparatus, and that that should be maybe located in kind of like the same general area of like the future pump track, so there'd be a designated area for that. Multi-service path areas is one thing we talked about. This is generally, the network here is generally proposed to be asphalt, but we talked about other things such as decomposed granite or DG that could be added maybe in some sections, particularly maybe along the shoulders, so it could also serve as a walking path through this park. Provide opportunities for community partnering. This is something that may not necessarily be part of the actual design or construction, but maybe develop mechanisms such as the street name sign network idea where there could be future opportunity for sponsorship or stewardship of the park elements in the So with all that, this is a layout of the streetscape, and this is a rough layout showing the footprint of Pruitt Park. It's about approximately five-acre site. There's two main entry points to the facility, are proposed to be to the facility. One, of course, is the existing pathway next to the library, which is to the right or to the east. And then kind of to the southwest there, you can see that there's the kind of serpentine connection there to the McQualeme Trail. There was quite a bit of discussion about that, about whether or not we can, we could add another one that would go further out towards Deer Valley. Ultimately, it was decided that this would be the most logical location for that. And it's also important to note that as part of the signage, it's proposed that we'd have wayfinding signage stationed at these entry points, so it'd really attract folks to the Other types of features you can see here, a little more detail, the green bike lane markings, the signalized intersections and the roundabouts. And the slow zone would be proposed to be kind of in the bottom left there, where you can see that really serpentine section there. The upper left-hand corner there, you can see that there's a rectangle track there. That could be the future home of a pump track. And then I'll go in a little bit more detail with the landscape plan, but water fountains, that was very, very much stressed throughout our outreach events and the commission meeting. So make sure that we have ample water fountains all throughout the park. So as we saw in the video, these are some of the intersections, just a little bit closer. I won't spend too much time on this, but again, you have your signalized intersections, yield, stop-controlled, roundabouts, and railroad crossing. The crosswalks, again, to stress that to make it fun and whimsical, you could consider multicolored crosswalks in addition to just your standard crosswalk markings would help give a little more interest to the layout. Streetscape elements, again, this is a closer look at the wayfinding signage. Of course, we all know about our traditional roadway signage. You can see in the bottom left-hand corner, I'd like to talk a little bit about that. I'm not sure if the city has these in any of their surface streets yet, but this is a bike box that is placed at the front of an intersection, and it helps cyclists to get out in front of traffic at stop and signal control, and this would be a great opportunity and way to educate riders on that feature. Bottom right-hand corner, again, that's a little bit closer look at the bus facility and the, or the bus apparatus and the door zone feature. It's off the pathway, so would not interfere with riders as they go through the facility. These are some ideas about the obstacles. It's kind of landed more on the coned elements there that you see in the bottom left corner. The top left corner there, that's an example of a pump track. There's many forms of that. A lot of them are dirt also, but the idea of a pump track is you can go all the way around it without really having to touch your pedals. It carries you through. It carries you through with the peaks and valleys. So moving on with the conceptual design, and actually, I'm, would you prefer to take some questions now or just wait till I'm finished?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and finish?
Okay. Great. So moving on to the conceptual landscape, a lot of discussion here. Of course, again, to, to stress, there is a lot of requests and to make sure we have abundant shade. You can see that the tree alleys along the pathways are kind of strategically placed so that eventually there'll be a canopy over the pathways to provide that abundant shade throughout the park. You can see that on this landscape plan, that the suggested area for a picnic area is, is there in the, the bottom right-hand corner, as well as a, a play area as well. So, you know, not everyone who visits the park may want to ride, you may have other kids of other ages who, who, who are there as well, so there's things to do for, for all, all, all ages. But of course, the main purpose is the bike facility. And then I'd like to point out that there's a, a lot of seating areas that are proposed in the form of benches all throughout the network, water fountains with filling stations, and then at the, the entry there is the proposed restroom. I will say that there was quite a bit of discussion whether or not we could have multiple restrooms. That's certainly an option, but it may be cross prohibitive to do that, so it was decided that the, the one restroom location would be, what would be recommended to the council. There was a few other elements too that were, were discussed and has to do with the entry I'd like to focus on. One is addition of some sort of kiosk so that messages could be posted, information on the park could be posted, so when visitors come and come to the park, they can learn about, read about the park, all the different features, and then it could also post events as well. Water misters was another recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission. Of course, we couldn't do water misters all around the park, but to do one designated area somewhere close to the entry where you'd have a water misting station. As far as the trees go, it is recommended that we go with California native tree species. It was discussed whether or not larger mature trees could be brought in or smaller. It was, it's a recommendation of our landscape architect, who couldn't be here this evening, but maybe to focus more on, on fifteen and twenty-four inch box, fifteen gallon and twenty-four inch box sized trees, to get a good root structure, they're a little bit less expensive to install, and they'll be able to have a, a better success rate to take in the park. So this is more of a list of some of the things I was talking about. In addition to the trees, of course, the focus would be on native and low-maintenance plants, more naturalistic planting areas, drought tolerant landscaping and drip irrigation. We talked about the water fountains, pedestrian scale lighting throughout the park, mostly for safety purposes. Shade structures, shade structures particularly located near the picnic area. We discussed a little bit about the access connections to the McQualeme Trail and the Antioch Community Center, and of course, bicycle parking and bicycle air and repair stations. There's a little bit of discussion about that. Both the commission as well as what we heard at the outreach events was that it might be more conducive to have a bicycle air station versus a repair station as folks, folks would tend to need that a little bit more. These are some of the high-level Parks and Rec Commission comments and recommendations. I mentioned the kiosk informational station, some of the tree species to get in a little bit in the details with California natives. We talked about coast live oaks and valley and blue oaks, ironwoods and cottonwoods potentially, of course, a mix of the small and medium-sized trees that I just spoke to. And then also, it's very important that as we move forward with the design to be cognizant of, you know, seeking to speak with the maintenance department here as well, to get their input, to see what maybe some of their concerns are too as far as maintenance goes, because obviously they're going to have to maintain this going forward. So it'd be recommended to get their input as we move into the actual design of the project. This is a, this is a, a, a large palette of, of a lot of different amenities. You can see the, the different types of benches that are being considered, the educational wayfinding signs on the left, on the right are the tree species that I spoke to, again, sticking with California natives for the most part. Little bit further detail, canopy areas, we talked about different types of structure, something that's sustainable is really important, making sure that it's, it's both maintenance and cost effective. Few more of the amenities, these are some snapshots of, of some other actual bike garden or bike parks that are in existence, but when you think about bike racks, maybe something a little bit more interesting or artistic or whimsical versus more utilitarian is, is something to, to consider. This is a little bit more of the tree species, I won't get too much into that, but as I mentioned, California natives is, is what's, is what's recommended, and, and the establishment period is, the idea is that, you know, you'd only need to water use for a couple years, they'd be established on your zone, so you could start cutting back on water use, and same goes for the naturalistic planting areas throughout the park. I'm going to speak a little bit about the community engagement. So we had two community workshops in the fall, one in October at the Antioch Community Center right next to the facility, and then we had one here in the downtown area at the senior center where they received updates on the project. We had, the, the city did a really good job of, of outreach and promoting it. You can see one of the notices that went out. Unfortunately, we didn't have great attendance, but the comments that we did receive, everybody was engaged, and received some really good feedback. And what we heard at some of those, we, we heard about support for all the elements that we've already discussed. There was some talk about consideration of educational components specific to e-bikes, and then it was important to some of the attendees that we provide various elements of the park for various skill sets, not just young riders, but young, young to junior high school age as well, that would challenge different ages of riders. Some of the landscape and park elements we heard, there was, of course, strong support for the restroom, lots of benches, the picnic area having multiple areas to just enjoy the park and not just ride around the facility, but to truly enjoy it as a park setting. Again, reiteration for strit, for shade structures and canopies, and the bike parking or bike racks was, was something that was supported. Access and connectivity, we had a pretty robust discussion about this at one of our outreach events, particularly with how it integrated into the existing parking lot, the community center. There was a lot of talk of, is there some way that we could integrate it even more, not just the one pathway? So that could certainly be considered as a future project, but considering the, the cost or, or the, the, the funding and scope of this, that, that's something that we didn't take too much further, other than the connection points that you see on the plan. So as far as schedule goes, moving on, so as I mentioned, we had the two community workshops in the fall, we had the Parks and Recreation Commission presentation in January, and of course, this evening, it's in front of you for your consideration of the approval of the conceptual design of this project. Moving more into the details of the design and construction, as I mentioned, we kicked off environmental and preliminary in May of last year, and then we plan to complete the design pending the outcome this evening, later in summer, and then go to construction later in fall and winter, and then complete the construction of the project in late 2026. And I will mention that there is a clock on the SS4A funds, we have a five-year window, that clock started April of twenty-four, 2024, so we have until April of 2029 to officially complete every SS4A project, which of course, with the schedule, we're, we're well ahead of, so. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, and I appreciate you sitting through that lengthy presentation.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have one speaker card from Andrew Becker.
You know, when I first heard about the city applying for these grant dollars, I was excited. And seeing how these dollars are utilized, you know, it, it does frustrate me because you look at this project and seventy-five percent of the design within that bicycle garden are tools or signage that we don't even have here in our city. You know, I'm sure as the community looks through this proposal, they say, where are those green traffic lanes for bicycles? Because I see bicycles darting up and down Lone Tree Way in between the cars. Where are these Class II bike lanes being maintained, and where is the separation from active traffic? If you look at the grant application to the federal government, that includes all of the projects, not just here in the city of Antioch, this project site had the highest fatality rate. People that died on those streets in that direct vicinity, and we're putting in a garden. We talk about loading bicyclists onto the bus, but there's no curb cuts from Lone Tree Way at that bus off, offloading point. We talk about pedestrians sharing, bicyclists sharing the pedestrian crossings. We don't even have updated pedestrian crossing signage for the push buttons that show bicyclists are to use that too. We talk about improvements to Macalumee Trail, where's East Bay Mud in that conversation and improving that frontage right of way? So that it's not just a dirt lot that invites people in. Brentwood can do it. All Along Grant. There was a bicyclist that died half a block away from this project site. Her mother came here to counsel, and city staff told me, well bicyclists are supposed to use Macalumee Trail. Where's the signage that says that? Anywhere? Because it conflicts with the charros that even our public engagement showed our community didn't like to see in your staff packet? That's exactly what's in front of this project site. These dollars could have gone to actual improvements on Lone Tree Way. I'm sad for this bicycle garden, not happy.
We don't have any more public comment on this item.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Yes, Councilmember first.
Mr. Gill, I do have a question. I was a Contra Cross Water District Director for sixteen years. I'm quite shocked to see an entrance into this bicycle park crossing over East Bay Mud transmission lines. They have had a policy of strict adherence that nothing crosses over. So is there already been approval from them?
There's been discussions with, with them on this project, they're aware of it, so we're working through that as part of the design process.
And if they are consistent and never allow anything to cross, do we have a backup plan?
Well, the backup plan could be that as far as a secondary connection, there's obviously east or west of the site, which would traverse quite a distance all the way to Deer Valley, that'd be a very, very long connection, or a secondary connection to the parking lot as, as a backup. We hadn't talked about backup because we were pretty confident that we would be able to, to do the pathway as shown at that location.
I hope you are, but, you know, they, they have, the, the only thing they ever allowed was at the hospital here, Sutter, Sutter Delta, on their parking lot with that, had the asphalt, not concrete, only asphalt. So I, I was shocked to see this when I was reviewing it. The other, when you say water fountains, you're talking about just pressing the water, you're not talking about decorative water fountains?
Yeah, it's just, just drinking fountains, correct, yeah.
And you, you talked about e-bikes. I'm just curious, is that a happy marriage between a ten-year-old kid on a bicycle and, and e-bikes?
So e-bike education is something that we'll talk about more in the design as far as how to incorporate that, but one of the thoughts of that is not necessarily the mode of the bicycle, but the, the, the slow zones, building those into the park so that there's designated areas for traditional cyclists to use. Now, there also could be, and I, I don't want to speak for city staff, but there could be policy related to use of the e-bikes in the, the garden as well, and that could be a future decision point. As we know, along the Iron Horse Trail, they've been allowed, and also S of Bay Trail and sections, but that can certainly be a policy, policy decision as this project moves forward into design, whether they'd be allowed or not.
And the other really for me was, you know, how, how are we going to manage this? I mean, I mean, you could have a lot of people on here, they're going to be just like, like they do on Lone Tree, race each other and things of that sort, and could be a bit dangerous? Is there supervision out here? I mean, what, how, how do you control the, the usage of this? Are we inviting schools to bring kids in to do specific training programs? I mean, what, what's the program, or is it basically a passive thing?
I'm going to let the director talk.
Sure.
Yes, as you say, it is designed to be a, a passive park, so like many of our, most of our other parks, it'll be open so that members of the public can come in and, and enjoy the feature. As far as, you know, policy recommendations, we certainly can bring that back to council, and we can also, you know, explore what the possibilities, what the pros and cons are. I think that'll, that'll happen in conjunction with the, with the overall development of the project, so it's, it's something that we'll, we will work on. We do plan on inviting schools, we would like schools to be able to participate as part of the education program, so there's a lot of potential for, for programming here. The, the facility is somewhat revolutionary, so we are in, you know, uncharted territory in terms of developing it and, and trying something new. So we'll, we'll work on that and we'll, we'll bring it back, and I think that'll, that'll be a healthy discussion to have here.
Okay, thank you. I was here when we opened the skate park, and that became unfortunately a very major police problem for us because of some of the older people taking over, and became an issue with younger children and things of that sort. So as much as I like this concept, I think there are some real considerations, particularly, you know, safety. I know it is designed for, for safety, but just in usage.
No, I appreciate the conversation and talking to the Assistant City Attorney. When we have an actual design and a plan, they would manage it for risk mitigation, so he can speak to that.
Yes, there would be an assessment done to see at least what the legal risk that would be involved, and part of that discussion could include possible policy discussions, things of that nature, but there would need to be more information, we'd have to be further along in the process before we can really engage in that.
Okay. Fine. Yes, Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, a couple of questions. In the video, I see it in the video, but I don't see it in the map. You, in the video, you see solar panels over picnic area, I didn't see that illustrated in the map. Was, was that just for the show of the video? Is it, are we going to have that?
Yeah, that was, that was discussed early on, and that was just part of the video, so it was decided not to pursue solar panels. was decided not to pursue solar panels. The needs for the park as far as electricity go, probably couldn't be fulfilled with those. Well, it depend on the design of it, but because of the expense of it as well, and somewhat limited budget, you think a $5 million project, it's about three and a half million plus in construction, so there's some concern about cost with the solar structure and the ability to maintain that as well.
And then my, which leads me to my next question. So there was, I saw functioning street lights, traffic lights in there. How would those be powered?
Yeah, those would be standard electrical, so AC powered.
Okay, and then my next questions are more for staff, either Mr. Helfenberger or even Mr. Bunting can answer these. So I'm looking at the very last page where it says, "Thank you." And I'm looking at this horrible fence. Are we, if we're gonna build this garden, are we going to take care of the fence? If, you know, if we have this bicycle garden that looks great and then we have this, you know, horrible-looking fence, have we considered that?
Yeah, my understanding is that the easement fencing is a project that is in the CIP, and correct me wrong, Mr. Bunting, I believe it is funded.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, doesn't disc golf go back, did we take that into consideration that this is, is this gonna move the disc golf course?
We did, and we've actually had a separate conversation with the disc golf group that originally put that feature in, and we have some preliminary plans to move it to Country Manor Park. We've actually done some surveying in that neighborhood, and the residents in that neighborhood have reacted very positively, and we've taken that to Parks and Recreation Commission, and they're also supportive of that move.
And that, the disc golf group there on?
Yes.
Because I hate for us to do that, and then the next thing you know, they're here at a meeting, talking about we never had a conversation with them.
Right, we've had them along for the ride, and they've been part of the conversation as we've gone on. They also attended that Parks and Recreation Commission meeting in which that was discussed.
Okay. I mean, I like, I like the park. I do have some concerns about the risk, and I'm hoping that we do have opportunities for educational moments out there for our young, for our older people, for everybody to be able to use this park. So I'm looking forward to next steps and hearing more about it, so thank you both. Oh, and I want to give, while I'm at, I want to give, although she doesn't live here in the city anymore, but Marie RC worked really, she was on the commission at the time, and she worked really hard on this.
She did. She was really instrumental in the early part of this process when we were doing education to the community, as well as the first public process that we had where we selected the location.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I've been waiting to see what this was gonna look like, although I protested the location, which I'mma always do because we have a lot of open space in District One that's underutilized. I have a question, I do have questions around access, though. Would it, like, will there be future conversations on how five and six-year-olds from this side of town is gonna make it to that side of town with bikes to be able to enjoy this bike garden?
We can certainly have discussions around that, yes.
I think, like, it was beautiful. I'm thinking about all the people who won't have access to it due to transportation challenges. The other question I have, since we brought up like maintenance, policy and safety, you're saying this is a passive park style, so does that mean it will not be gated or fenced off to the public?
That's correct. It'll be accessible from the parking lot.
So it'll just be open and accessible from the parking lot to anyone, any day, at any time? Or is this another one of those situations where a public space is gonna be so highly regulated that then nobody will be able to access it?
It would follow the same park regulations that are in place for our other parks. Our parks have hours, they're open during daylight hours, so our parks are closed from dusk to dawn.
Yeah, because we set policies to regulate public spaces. I do, I do want to thank Andrew for pointing out, I think, like, going after the funding was for this actual bike garden concept. I wish that if there were opportunities to submit multiple applications to address pedestrian safety across the city would make a lot of sense. I was driving here tonight, and it was a whole group of like 10 young people riding up Wilbur on what I'm guessing is a bike lane, or maybe we're just using it as a bike lane? Because I don't think it's a designated bike lane, but they're using it, right? So I think, I would say that if there are future opportunities to seek transportation funding, to actually not just teach people how to ride their bike safe, and then they actually go out onto the street and they ran over by a car, and it don't matter how much safety training they've had, if we don't actually set up real infrastructure around pedestrian safety in the city, whether it's biking, walking, wheelchair, strollers, et cetera.
Thank you, Councilmember Torres Walker. I'd like to address your question, it's a very good question. So one of the roles of the Transportation Authority is to go after funding and to help cities obtain that funding, identify the funding, apply for it. So that's part of our role as well. So we're always happy to work with your staff and through multiple different forums, whether it be our Technical Coordinating Committee or just a phone call, to work with the city on available funding. I will say that I believe there's one more round of SS4As coming up pretty soon, and the next couple of months is a deadline, I believe, so of course, that's one source of federal funding. There's lots of funds out there, but that is one maybe to keep on staff radar that there is another round coming up.
And in addition to the federal funding, we also have Towns and Public Affairs, and we gave them a list of everywhere where we had funding for them to supplement and find additional funding for ongoing funding, which is, this was on the list.
I just have a quick question. Could you please put the landscape plan back up again real quick?
Sure.
So one of the terms we've used sometimes is bulletproof, you know, to make sure that things are not easily broken, so is, does the design of this park have elements that are sturdy, I guess would be a word for it? Make sure that, you know, whether it's the play structure or whatever's out there, that it's not easily vandalized, I guess.
Can you take that?
I'll go first. So in terms of the hardscape, if you will, yeah, the idea is sustainable materials that are, you know, not necessarily made out of wood, but something that's gonna be low maintenance and that are a little more rugged and vandal-proof, if you will. Certainly that is gonna be an emphasis for the ultimate recommendation of choice of materials. As far as the landscaping goes, as I mentioned a few times, that of course, low maintenance, drought-tolerant landscaping is very, we've heard is very important, so there's the least amount of maintenance, least amount of water needed, still looks beautiful, but is rugged, it could survive, you know, drought conditions and so forth. So those two together, to answer your question, yeah, that's high up on the, we've heard that loud and clear.
Okay. And then is the pavement in the video you showed, it was kind of a tan-colored, is it gonna be a colored pavement or is it gonna be just normal asphalt gray?
It's proposed to be a standard asphalt, but yeah, what you saw in the video there had that tan color to it. That's certainly something we can look into. I don't want to step too far out of my bounds, but you know, I know that there are treatments out there, but they're more like thermoplastic-type treatments that go over standard asphalt. Those could be maintenance-intensive, but that's something that we'll continue to discuss as we go into design, but to answer your question, for now, yeah, it was proposed just as asphalt.
Okay, and then in the upper right-hand corner of that plan right there, your conceptual plan showed a shaded area with benches and bike parking, and so the landscape plan looks like it's just landscaped, so I didn't know if that was, that's gonna have a shaded area with benches and bike parking? Or if you go back a couple of slides, Brad, you can see the other one that shows on the conceptual street skate plan.
Is that more at the entry?
Yeah, up in the, in that upper right-hand corner, it says shaded area, benches, bike parking?
Correct, yeah, that's intended to be, to have more benches and so forth. They're not called out on that plan, but to have more seating area, so as you enter the park, it's a place where you can immediately sit down and congregate.
And then are there pedestrian paths? It was hard for me to tell, but are there pedestrian paths kind of throughout the length of this so people can walk to the end of it if they need to, off of the street?
Yeah, so I think it's more in the landscape plan, but one of the ideas is to construct shoulders next to the paved areas, and that could be in the form of decomposed granite, so you'd have a walking path immediately adjacent to the paved bike network. And also goes without saying too, obviously this is a bike park, but it also functions as what we call a Class 1 facility, like the McQuillumee Trail, where, you know, walking is not gonna be prohibited. Walking in any type of rolling, non-motorized, is not gonna be, you know, prohibited. Everyone can do that, but to your point, you know, you want to have that separation, so that's one of the ideas, is to have a little bit wider shoulder.
Couple more comments. One is, you know, I know there's a lot of trees and shade's important, but that's 15 years away, so in the meantime, are there gonna be shade structures out there, or it's gonna be, it's gonna be toasty the first few years?
Yeah, until the trees fully mature and get the canopy, yeah, it's not gonna be as well-shaded as it eventually will. I think as we get further into the design with cost, of course, we know shade structures, constructed shade structures could be expensive, so we'll weigh that, but we'll try to incorporate that as much as possible, but at the outset of the conceptual design, certainly in the shaded picnic area, in the playground, and potentially at the entry area are areas that have been identified for a shade structure.
Okay. And then are we gonna be using our city, our new city wayfinding signage for this facility? You know, our nice, nice new park signs that were designed?
The wayfinding program was completed before this concept ultimately came to fruition, but we absolutely should incorporate that into the wayfinding program.
Okay, I think that'd look good. And then the last thing is just maintenance. Is there any idea of what this is gonna cost to maintain on an annual basis yet, or does that need to be looked into?
We have a preliminary estimate of $120,000 a year for maintenance.
Okay, so since it'll be done in, it looks like 26, or, you know, we'll probably have to put that in the budget for that here.
We can look into that.
All right. Thank you, that's all questions I have. All right, so does council want to make a motion to? Does council want to make a motion to approve the conceptual design of the Bicycle Garden project? All right, we have a motion in a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Andrew. All right, our next item, item number two is also continued from the last city council meeting, so we'll go ahead and do this as well. This is amendment to the fiscal year 2025 capital improvement and operating budgets in the amount of $225,000 for the Amtrak station upgrades.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. You actually just said everything I was gonna say. This is taking $225,000 from the gas tax funds to increase the overall budget to $375,000 for improvements to the Antioch, Pittsburgh, San Joaquin Passenger Stop, commonly noticed the Amtrak station, and Director Bunting will discuss this more.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As the city manager stated, the Antioch-Pittsburgh-San Joaquin Passenger Stop, or our Amtrak station as it's commonly known, has provided service to the city of Antioch since October 28 of 1994. On March 24, 2023, the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority Board voted to decommission the Amtrak station. The board's decision did not have a comprehensive community engagement process, and it did not contain an analysis concerning the impacts of their decision. The decommissioning of the Amtrak station will have an immediate negative impact on local disadvantaged communities and small businesses that rely on the station. On July 23 of 2024, the council adopted a resolution opposing the closure of the Amtrak station. On October 22 of '24, the council provided direction to city staff to improve the area surrounding the Amtrak station. Staff has developed improvement and upgrades, has developed improvement plans and upgrades for the Amtrak station. Staff is recommending, amending the capital improvement operating budget by $225,000 for a total of $375,000 to improve and upgrade this Amtrak station. I have a couple of slides showing the, there we go, concept plan. Here we go, is, this is our Amtrak station. This is First and I. If you're, so the right-hand side is the corner, First and I, formerly where there was an Amtrak kiosk. That will continue to remain the entrance, so to speak, for the Amtrak station. Beautification that happens in there will be pathway, there'll be low-lying vegetation, nothing, no vegetation that's relatively high, nothing above, like a couple feet, but there is some new trees planted in the area to provide some shade, beautify the area. There is a fence line that is proposed along the northern edge of the walkway. Some additional lighting is also proposed in the area. The concept here is to provide a fair-only zone. This is an area for the Amtrak station, people that are using the Amtrak station to be, not to be for any other, any other place or any other usage other than for passengers that are using the Amtrak station in this location. But among other things, it's a beautification on First Street, as you can tell, a lot of landscaping, a lot of pathway, put in some benches, as well as some additional lighting. And there you go with a bunch of new trees that we'll also put in there, try to get some stuff with color in the area again. Try to utilize large plants as well as we can to try to speed up the development of the canopy. It will depend on some costs. We do have a cost estimate for doing the work that we're projecting to do, although, however, this is still a conceptual plan, so any advice on landscaping or just in the general design that we have would be greatly appreciated. It is something that we'd like to move forward with relatively quickly. It is something that we think would be a betterment to the area and provide us with a better chance of keeping the Amtrak station in the future. If you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Like I say, we're looking at a conceptual plan, so any advice or concerns you guys have, I would love to hear.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker card from Andrew Becker.
Once again confused because I attended the San Joaquin Rail Authority meetings, and I was under the direct impression that Antioch was not going to be keeping its Amtrak station open in its current model, and that if the city wanted to keep its Amtrak station open, it needed to meet the requirements that they had already set forth. And my understanding was that there either needed to be a secondary sidetrack for the main line, or that it needed to move further down the line, and that the only way that it could stay was when Amtrak started using future generation models that allowed them to speed up and slow down quicker. That was everything that was discussed in open sessions, so if there were any other conversations with, between the Rail Authority, Amtrak and the city, as a community member, I would be curious to know what those updates are? Because if there are other updates, or if there are no other updates, why are we spending significant dollars and time on improving a station that we don't have any authority of keeping? It's not our decision. We can go to another meeting and we can beg and we compete as much as we want, and the past mayor did, but it's not our decision unless other conversations were had, so I hope that we can go away from this meeting, getting a full understanding from the city on if there were other conversations had and what they are. Because if we do in fact need to move the station to be able to keep an Antioch-Pittsburgh station open, why are we not exploring other opportunities? That's a large capital undertaking, which affordable housing, sustainable communities would pay for. The city of Pittsburgh would be open to a partnership in the station, so a station could be moved downline, and an affordable housing project could be brought forth on city-owned property that the city owns along Second Street there next to Prospect High School. owns along Second Street there next to Prospect High School and falls within a mile of that area. And you could get up to $15 million for a capital improvement like a train station or secondary trackage. Citing. If that's not the case, are we seriously considering putting in new pathways and new plants in a deficit in the hopes that we'll be able to take that to somebody else and say, we put up a gate and we put in plants and sidewalks and benches and now we're hoping you'll keep it? So I'll reiterate, that was not my understanding from all those public meetings which I did attend. And if there were any other conversations, this would definitely be the time to know because these conversations should be brought forward in a community setting for the community to hear. It is public business. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dean.
My first time. Thank you. Yeah, I'm passionate about the city and what we can do. And I definitely don't think that we need to worry about a train station when we got broken glass all up and down the Second Street. And that, you know, spending any kind of money, revenue to add bushes to, you know, this area would not, it's not really what we need to do. We need to vitalize the downtown area and make it a, a vital place for a train to stop instead of, you know, somebody got off the train there, it'd be like, well, I just landed in the bad part of town and I need to get back on the train right away. You know, and I don't know that this, you know, this conversation has probably gone on for a long time because I haven't been to a lot of city council meetings, but you know, you get off on the train and you see a tent on the, on the pier right now, right at this very moment, you know, and, and we got, we got issues that are, that are more pressing. And, you know, I've been on the walking, the little walking bridge that's there and the lighting has been, you know, the wire's been pulled out of the lighting and, you know, there's all kinds of stuff going on down there, you know, that, that needs to be addressed, that should take priority over, you know, beautifying a train station that's not really, not really there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any more speaker cards for this item.
All right. Thank you. Does council have any questions of staff?
Is there an update?
I mean, I think it's a legitimate question. Is there an update?
He keeps looking at me. I'm telling you. Yeah. So we have an Amtrak Station Working Group that just started to meet. And one of the things that they let us know is that they could stop the, that stop now or in three years when the other station breaks ground. Because we have to maintain it on city property, we have to be ADA compliant. So we needed to make these upgrades. And also like the gentleman was saying, there are things happening there that diminishes our downtown businesses on the waterfront that we needed to address as well. So it isn't just because the stop has been decommissioned. It's because we want to keep it open for the next three years and go back to the Joint Powers Association in a couple of months to see if it will permanently be kept open. And so we're just making the upgrades that we needed anyway for the area as it's city-owned property.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about this item? Yes, Councilmember Wilson.
For Mr. Bunting, and you talked about the plants. You didn't say if they were drought tolerant, are native? Just curious.
Yes, ma'am. They, they will be drought tolerant. They'll be, they'll be native to California. We'll do our best to put in the most native drought tolerant, hardy plants that we can.
Thank you.
So you asked us for some input. A lot of color in that area would be great, too. Instead of just having green leaves, having real color, you know, as many seasons as we can have. So it brightens up that whole area would be one of the, one of the things I would suggest. Since is this pathways, how does this work with the Canary Lady statue? Is that a part of the pathway?
So the Canary Lady statue is currently along the pathway. That pathway would be adjacent to the road. That statue and that pathway are, are not part of this fair only zone. That would be to the south. So it, there would be really no effect other than some additional beautification in the area near where the Canary Lady is.
So if you started it, is that First and I Street, you could walk all the way down to L Street? Is that theoretically possible?
I believe that, that no. I think that you, that the pathway, I'd have to take a look at the pathway to how we get to the bridge from the Amtrak Station.
Well, I'm just asking, my, my point is, if there's a pathway, it should be a flowing pathway. That one should not stop and the other begin somewhere else. That's all I'm concerned about.
That would be the intent. The existing pathway that continues along there, I believe that it would continue across the bridge and over to L Street. There would be a separate little area where this fair only zone would be, which would be to the north of that pathway.
Thank you for saying I need more color. I'm happy to provide that up here on the council. And I hope we can do that, you know, over here as well. So.
Don't say a word.
So we can have the Elm Track shut down now, or we can do these improvements and have access to it for the next three years and potentially go back to the table? That was, that?
Yeah, that's right. We're going back to the table in a few months. So it's an iterative process.
But if we don't do any of this?
Yeah, we had some safety concerns, some ADA compliance issues and findings, as well as just, you know, issues around there. So we needed to do it. Yeah.
So I would, I would just say that I would like to do anything we can to improve that area and make sure that it's viable and attractive for people that are coming in and out of Antioch and with the hopes ultimately of keeping that station open. So I think we should do everything we can to keep that station open and operable. And I think this is a step in that, in that direction.
I would just like to add, actually, Ms. Torres Walker, you asked a question that I was going to, that clarification about how long are we anticipating use of this track before the Oakley Station potentially could get built? And if there is dialogue to potentially, because I know that, I'm not sure about the rest of you, but I've received a number of communications from a number of our community members, some who are in the audience, about are we doing enough to advocate? Are we doing enough to take steps forward to beautify that area, to make it accessible? And so I think this is a step in that direction. There's no guarantee. I know that. I realize that. But I think it's the best we can do. And I think we are charged to advocate for keeping that Amtrak Station open to the best of our ability. And I think it's worth the effort.
Thanks so much, council. And I just want to point out that out of the almost 20 stations, Antioch is right in the middle in terms of ridership. Our average is actually 100 a day. It's larger than people realize. So it is incumbent upon us to keep it open.
Just one last comment. So as you're designing this, will you make sure that Amtrak is happy with the design? That, that we don't do something that they would, yeah. All right. Thank you. All right. Do I have a, a motion to approve this design and the budget amendment?
I'll move to approve.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. I, I have had a request to amend the rules and, and have the youth and government, our experience and takeaways presentation move forward, or suspend the rules, I'm sorry. Oh. Okay. Do you want to take the proclamation ahead of the, ahead of the youth? Okay. So we have a motion to move the proclamations, which are actually the next item. So we'll just go to the next item.
Yeah.
Do the proclamations. All right. And then we will discuss moving the, the youth up, up so that they can get home and get to bed. That's what they want to do. So the
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was getting ready to do that. Can I make a motion that we approve the two proclamations?
Yes, please. Yes. A motion, a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Do we have any public comment on the proclamations?
We do not have any public comment on the proclamations.
All right. So the first proclamation is Fair Housing Month, April 2025, whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted in April, on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. Whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. Whereas the city of Antioch is committed to the mission of, and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination within the rental sale and purchase of housing persists and many communities remain segregated. Whereas place matters and acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity is repugnant to common sense of decency and fairness. And whereas the city of Antioch is committed to affirmatively furthering fair housing and promoting equal access and choice in housing throughout the community. Now therefore, I, Ron Brunel, Mayor of the city of Antioch, hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Antioch, and to establish the city of Antioch as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and equal opportunity to promote appropriate activities by private and public entities, and to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of the city of Antioch. Is Victoria Snyder here, Director of Contra Costa Senior Legal Services, to receive this proclamation? No. Okay. All right. Well, then we will move on to our next proclamation, which is honoring National Autism Awareness Month, April 2025. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a complex developmental condition that affects individuals in different ways, influencing social interaction, communication, and behavior. Whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, autism affects an estimated 1 in 36 children in the United States, making it a prevalent developmental disability. Whereas individuals with autism contribute greatly to our community, demonstrating unique strengths, talents, and perspectives that enrich our schools, workplaces, and society as a whole. Whereas increasing awareness and understanding of autism is essential to fostering acceptance, inclusion, and support for individuals with autism and their families. Whereas organizations, educators, advocates, and families in Antioch work tirelessly to provide vital resources, programs, and services that empower individuals with autism to achieve their fullest potential. Whereas Autism Awareness Month provides an opportunity to promote advocacy, education, and the celebration of neurodiversity while reinforcing our commitment to creating a community that values and supports all individuals. Whereas the city of Antioch remains committed to ensuring that individuals with autism have access to inclusive recreational programs, educational opportunities, and community resources that support their development and well-being. And whereas the city of Antioch's Public Safety and Community Resources Department will host its second autism awareness event on April 9th, 2025. Now therefore, I, Ron Brunel, Mayor of the city of Antioch, hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 and each following April to be Autism Awareness Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Antioch. Is Elizabeth Lavoss here to receive the proclamation? She is the CEO of We Get It Foundation.
Good evening, city of Antioch, city council, and fellow friends. My name is Elizabeth Lavoss. I am the CEO and President of We Get It Foundation. We are a neurodiverse, progressive organization. I am honored to represent We Get It Foundation today at this council meeting. Today, as we officially mark April as Autism Awareness Month, we are filled with emotion and gratitude. This proclamation is not just a symbol of support for our autistic community and friends. It serves as a beacon of hope for our families, for individuals who are touched by neurodiversity in so many different ways. By bringing awareness to autism, we are fostering understanding, acceptance, and inclusion within our beautiful city of Antioch and its school district, in which the Special Education Department headed by Kelly Quinn continues to work tirelessly for our youth. We are incredibly thankful for the city of Antioch and its leadership for championing this meaningful initiative. Your commitment to raising awareness sends a powerful message that we are all in this together. It reminds the community that every individual deserves to be seen, heard, and valued. It takes a village and we are that village. Together we can make a difference and create a more inclusive world. On behalf of our entire organization, I want to express our deepest gratitude to the city of Antioch and for this incredible recognition towards autism as a whole. I am now, I am now turning this over to our junior board members, elected co-presidents together, Leonardo Miller and Charlotte Luther. They are founders of our ambassadors program.
My name is Leo Miller. I am co-president of the junior board of We Get It Foundation. My co-president is also here. I was, I was proud to serve on the Antioch Council of Teens for three years. I am an alumni of Deer Valley High, and I am proud to be a resident of this community. On behalf of the ambassadors at We Get It Foundation, we thank you for acknowledging autism and neurodiversity. We are grateful and proud.
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Luther. I am the co-president of the junior board of We Get It Foundation. I am also Contra Costa County Fair's Miss Congeniality and the first autistic or neurodivergent pageant award winner of the Contra Costa County Fair. I am also an alumni of Deer Valley High School, and my father is an educator in Antioch Unified School District. I am grateful for this recognition that has been given to autism by the city of Antioch. Thank you. We are grateful. Me, my co-president, and our ambassadors.
Thank you very much. If you guys will just stay down there, we're going to come down and take a picture with you and present the proclamation.
Thank you.
All right. Are we ready? Okay. One, two, three. And we're good.
All right. And I, I believe we had one. All right, and I believe we had one public comment on that item. Madam Clerk.
Velma Wilson.
Good evening, Council, to the community and those that are watching this meeting live. I just want to say thank you. I stand here as the President of the CAC, which stands for the Community Advisory Committee for SELPA. SELPA is, we represent special education throughout Contra Costa County. And we are advocates to make sure that the needs of our students and families are met day in and day out. I'm just so honored, you know, being a mom of a child raised with autism, being diagnosed at three. During the month of April, I take Jesse, every April, he has to get an annual MRI done on his brain because he has a cyst on his brain. And I'm very public about this because so many look at Jesse and they say, "I would never know he had autism." You don't know the day in and day out what it takes for me to get Jesse to thrive. His former principal, Louis Rocha, who sits there proud, can attest that he had several adults attack him thinking that he would never make it, told him he was not going to amount to nothing. And it was principals like Louis Rocha who believed in him and a mom like Velma Wilson who was going to advocate for his rights. So I want to thank the City of Antioch for stepping up and taking a stance, a bold stance. And thank you for wearing blue because we light it up blue in the month of April for autism awareness and acceptance. Tomorrow, I was supposed to co-host Autism Awareness and Special Needs Basketball Game with the Golden State Warriors, but schedules had to get changed because I'll be sworn in as the first vice for NAACP. And so I just want to say shout out to the Golden State Warriors as they host Autism Awareness and Special Needs Night for all of our neurodivergent families and friends. I also want to just say to the community, when you see a student or a child or even adult like my son Jesse, don't judge him. They may seem a little different. They may seem introverted. They may not seem to be totally connected. Help them out. My son went to Kaiser for the first time and went to all of his doctor's appointments. He wanted to do that to show his mom he could do it by himself. And I'm proud that he did it. He walked in there proudly. As a 22-year-old young man getting ready to graduate from the Academy of Art University, yes, he is a product of this community. He is a product of Antioch Unified Schools. And don't tell me when you are advocate and when you do and you point to the lives of our young people what they can do. He will be the first in a long time to see an African-American male with a degree in Bachelor's of Fine Arts, 2D Animation Film and Design.
Thank you.
We do not have any more public comment for proclamations.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules. And I believe the last motion was to bring up the Youth in Government presentation to now. I would also like to bring up the presentation for the African-American Wellness to write after the Youth in Government presentation.
All right, thank you. And I would like to move the agenda item number 10, Support for the African-American Holistic Wellness and Resource Hub to write after the presentation.
So we had, we had one motion. Are you making, is that, is that a friendly amendment?
I'm sorry, I'd like to amend the motion to move up the Youth in Government Partner for Wellness and add, and also for item number 10, to move it after the presentation.
You're making, is that, is that motion friendly?
I accept that amendment.
Okay, all right. So the motion on the floor would be to bring up item 6.2, followed by item 10. And we already have a motion that has been approved to move up the Youth in Government, which is 6.1, as our next item. So that's the motion on the floor.
All right, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. So presentations, Youth in Government, Our Experience, and Takeaways presented by Scarlett McKenzie, Siran Kapanda, Cindy Alvaranga, and Shor Odusunya. I'm sure I butchered that whole thing up, I'm sorry. But welcome.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm sure we're all tired and we have school tomorrow, so I'll try to make it quick. I'm Scarlett McKenzie, and I'm here with Siran Kapanda, Cindy, and Shore, we're not able to make it. But Siran and I will be presenting on the program, Youth in Government and Our Experiences This Past Year. So you can go to the next one. All right. Youth in Government was started by the YMCA in 1948. The program is a reconstruction of California government that allows high schoolers to act as government officials. Participants are, participants are part of their local group or delegation and also has roles within the entire program. Delegations meet weekly, and the participants or delegates meet together on two multi-day program-wide trips. One of them is to Camp Roberts in the fall and again in the winter at the State Capitol. Siran and I had the opportunity to attend the later trip to the Capitol last February. The program consists of three essential parts, starting with Camp Roberts, where we're giving government positions in places like the First Appellate Court District or the Board of Education. This is also where we establish those who are running for office like youth governor or secretary of state. Then we continue to meet in our delegation meetings back home and create a bill that will be debated on and voted on at Sacramento. Once we create our bill, we head to the Capitol to work on our government positions, elect people, and debate our bills. Overall, Youth in Government is a program that gives kids a clear view of government by letting them be a part of it. Going to Sacramento was the best experience of my life, and I'm glad I have the opportunity to go. Many of us who participated in the program were selected based on our interest and intention to give youth in Antioch a voice in the next generation of leadership. When at the conference, we stayed at the Grand Sheraton Hotel and got to visit various places in Sacramento, such as the State Capitol, Court of Appeals, and the SAFE Convention Center. We spent most of our time participating in workshops and debates and had the opportunity to work and meet with youth from all across California. As delegates, we were able to take on roles such as court appellateists and senators, gaining a deeper understanding of government, policymaking, and leadership. I know I speak for both of us when I say that it was an amazing and impactful experience that helped us gain a deeper understanding of government and leadership roles. We would definitely recommend it to youth interested in being part of the next generation of leaders. Youth in Government empowers youth to engage with their surrounding community, encourage participants to develop and implement projects that address local issues, promoting civic responsibility. A good example of our delegation is we would meet with experts on our bill topic every week and interview them on their expertise to get their point of view in our bill. Youth in Government offers a series of opportunities and positions within the program that promote leadership opportunities, such as running for government positions, using outside sources like the interviews that we conducted, the ability to create bills with your delegation, and training in public speaking and real-world simulation of government processes. During this conference, various awards were given out to exemplary delegates in different areas of the program. Scarlett was one of only two to receive an award as Outstanding Speaker of Debate. And out of 100 delegates, I received the Arnold Glassman Fill-the-Room Award along with a scholarship. These awards help honor and encourage youth involvement in further similar programs. Similarly, Antioch can help improve and foster economic development for youth by expanding the Antioch Youth Services Job Fair, encouraging businesses to hire youth apprentices, and supporting trade school development and internships. Thank you, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. That was excellent. Do we have any public, before you guys, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on item six.
All right, yes.
I just want to ask you, what high schools you go to? What grade? And like, how did you get selected to be a part of the?
I can go first. So I actually go to a virtual school, a university prep school, Visions in Education. I'm a freshman this year. And we found out about the opportunity for scholarships through the Antioch Council of Teens, which is also a great resource for us. I go to Freedom High School, and I'm a sophomore, but I live in Antioch, and I'm also part of the Antioch Council of Teens. So they brought us the opportunity and they let us know that the Sacramento Conference would be coming up and if we wanted to get more involved in like government and learn about the roles that we could join.
I just want to say, I want to commend you for being a freshman and a sophomore and for presenting yourself the way that you do today and being honored and recognized at the state government program. So again, kudos to you. You did a great job tonight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both very much. Now get home and get to bed before this. All right, our next presentation is Partnering for Wellness, Antioch's Role in a County-Wide Healing Network, African-American Holistic Wellness and Resource Hub, presented by Dr. Kirby Lynch, Lead Project Manager, Series Public Policy. Welcome, Dr. Lynch.
Hello, good evening. Will you be doing the presentation? Do you have a presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, I also will be timely because we have a packed agenda. I'll be timing myself. So again, my name's Dr. Kirby Lynch. I'm representing Series Policy Research. And I currently am an independent contractor with Contra Costa County Government, supporting them with their African-American Holistic Wellness and Resource Hub Initiative. Really, the purpose of this presentation is just to inform you about the process. This initiative has been around since formally December 2023. It was a response to a community demand for transparency and accountability, which was really started by a lot of the community here in East County, particularly Antioch, as a response to a lot of the breakdowns that were happening in the community as a response to the racist text message scandal. All right, so I take this work very seriously. Our organization, we are, for the past 25 years, been doing large system transformation, reform. Our work is really in criminal justice reform. We have a project called Whole Youth Project, where we've supported over 25 probation departments across this nation revising their practices as it relates to LGBT incarceration. You may also know me being the Lead Project Manager for the Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice. This was an initiative that the county went through starting in 2021 to go through a community-driven process to establish a government office really dedicated to creating service, really service innovations to make sure our hard-to-reach populations, those who are showing the most disparities in quality of life outcomes, are really having some strategic interventions and investments. And so really, there's a lot of great alignment in the county right now for this type of partnership and this project. And I'm really here to just inform you, all right, where we are in the process. So for the past six months, Series Policy Research has been working with a 13-member steering committee that represents 13 residents from all across the county. And we've been in a process for the past six months figuring out how do we do this African-American Holistic Wellness and Resource Hub. And again, very expedited process, but I'm so proud of the work that we have done as a community to come together. In six months, we've been able to collect over 4,000 community surveys. We've done over 20 listening sessions, did key stakeholder interviews with service providers to really help the county come up with a plan for how to do this initiative, the African-American holistic wellness and resource hub. And so again, why this hub is needed is that our wellness is worrying and immediate action is required. Particularly, Antioch has 18% of our county's black population. And like I said, because the root of how this initiative got started is also deeply impacted by community trauma. So at the core of this initiative, it is, again, county-initiated, right? This is kind of like the implementing agency, right? Because they're dedicating $7.5 million from Measure X funds towards the startup and establishment of this hub. And so really, my team was contracted to do a feasibility study, come up with the service model, come up with the organizational model, and really come up with the deployment strategy for the services. All right, so on the screen, you're going to see insight into our community survey process. Again, we got 4,000 responses across the county. And we were able to see, again, what are the needs for the African-American community countywide? And across the spectrum, our community needs this initiative. We need something of quality, of scale, to really address what we know to be true. I mean, I'm pretty sure on this dies, you've heard so much community response and even just in this meeting tonight about the urgency and the need for services in our community. So at a high level, community violence is something that all members in our community go through. But just looking at the survey, again, over 4,000 responses countywide, 70% of African-Americans in this county have experienced some form of police or community violence. And particularly in District 3, y'all were the highest, where 73% of y'all self-reported having experiences with violence. In order to heal from that violence, the community gave a lot of great feedback. Countywide, the top demand for the type of supports needed for healing is restorative justice, right? Second, we see legal advocacy support, trauma-informed counseling. We also were able to survey people's barriers to wellness services, their challenges, right? So at the top of that was time constraints and also high cost of services. So again, all of this community-based data really helped us come up with the model for the African-American Holistic Wellness and Resource Hub. And so really, next Tuesday, April 15th, the Board of Supervisors will be receiving a report, where we'll be breaking down, again, the community engagement, the services, the potential locations. But we're really on a world tour and really excited to partner with Antioch potentially because, again, a space with the highest need and one of the highest concentrations of the black community. And so overall, we hope that you see yourself in this mission and vision. Ultimately, we see this hub being a holistic, community-led, culturally-competent hub, addressing systemic disparities. And so what does that really mean on paper? That doesn't mean we're kind of creating something new here. It's about coordinating and expanding existing efforts across all levels of partners, whether it's a grassroots organization who's already doing a great service, county-level, state program, or even federal program. How do we actually start to increase service utilization of our black community and increase the satisfaction levels when they experience these services and really coordinate that across the county? In terms of key service areas, this hub will be providing, health and wellness is the primary one, which means preventative and primary healthcare. Because of the severity of black maternal health in this county, that will be a huge priority, where we'll be trying to provide doulas, prenatal care, and postnatal support for families. And also, most importantly, culturally-competent mental health services. Again, this is about increasing service utilization of this community so we can get the care that's needed. Another area is around housing and economic stability. So that looks like providing housing navigation services, eviction, prevention. We also believe that this hub should be a source for workforce development, black entrepreneurship, incubator. And third category is around community healing and cultural healing more broadly. So it looks like intergenerational mentorship programs, arts and culture programming, legal advocacy, and reentry support for justice-impacted individuals. So this is a very large vision, and we imagine this really taking multiple phases to really bring to life. And so on the chart, again, this is all a proposal. On April 15th, there will be discussion. But again, we've been on a six-month research process with the community, working with the county, working with officials like yourself to really figure out what are the kinks in this process, right? And so this was our best thinking, our best practices. Our research team is full of economists, sociologists, statisticians. One of our team members is currently the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of San Francisco. So we've learned a lot, particularly from being a part of black-led initiatives, particularly in the city and county of San Francisco, what to do well to implement an initiative of this scale and to really have multiple iterations of it to really account for, we're figuring out the kinks, we're trying to get these partnerships in place, but also at the same time urgently deploy services to these communities' needs. So with that being said, the first phase of this hub that we're proposing is that it be a mobile services fleet with a central kind of headquarters space for a street team to kind of operate out of. And this is where, again, we're going to be at the core, working with county-based services, primarily from the Health Department and Employment and Human Services, to really see what services they already offer in these key service areas and how they can reallocate that, you know, those numbers that they have to achieve within this initiative. In the second phase, right, because... In the second phase, right, because again, our Phase 1 in all of our community engagement session, again, our biggest barriers to people accessing health was transportation and time constraints. So the mobility aspect in this first phase is just to get to the people where they're at and to provide basically referrals and resource navigation for them. But then we're moving into a Phase 2 where we're trying to get a little bit more permanency because that is a huge demand of the community. They want to be in a location that they know they can go to with secure operating hours and receive those services. So we want to pilot dispersed satellite locations across the county, not just in East County, but West County, South Central County, of places where families can go while still coordinating a mobile van system. So this is Phase 2. And as you can see, our scope of work was to figure out a plan for the $7.5 million spend-down. So here you see in each phase, we're thinking really strategic and really mindful about how those resources are being spent. And then Phase 3, a centralized hub. And we were given a list of county assets to really assess if, you know, they could be used for this initiative. And so we did identify an initial property, potentially, hopefully, in the city of Antioch. There is an existing county-owned facility on Cavallo Road, 1650 Cavallo Road, which is currently being used by Employment and Human Services by the county, where they use it as a call center. But they are being relocated to Brentwood. Some, not all of the staff, so we're figuring out the feasibility of moving those staff out of that building. But that is the ideal location for the centralized community hub. One, because we know that the black population in Antioch is increasing every single day. And there's so many folks, you know, we even did listening sessions in Richmond saying people coming from Richmond to Antioch. So we do believe that Antioch is the best place, but also Cavallo Street, Cavallo Road is the best location because of its scale. It's over 24,000 square feet. And a huge part of our funding model is that we want this to be a self-sustaining enterprise with a mix of private businesses and nonprofits who use this space to provide services in it. So then what does it really look like in terms of the service flow chart? Again, there were target populations that was identified by our steering committee members. They voted on this. They went through thought processes around this. So families with young children are our priorities, youth and adolescents, elders, justice-impacted individuals. And so they'll go through a process, particularly with the mobile. And this is where the coordination between county and potentially city services, you know, kind of that cross-referral. But also with community-based organizations come into place where families in need will go through an intake and assessment process. And then again, the hub staff, right, we have a proposal for a core hub staff. They'll work. They'll do case management, kind of navigation for them. This is very similar to our Measure X navigators that EHSD has in the county. Well, they'll do some needs identification and then ultimately make referrals to those people, to the appropriate kind of area. Is it a health concern? Is it an economic concern? Is it a housing service navigation concern? And then we'll refer those people, kind of manage them, track them, and hopefully their needs are assessed. But if their needs aren't assessed, then we want to propose the ability to work with them, case-manage them, until their needs are actually met. So again, this is all exploratory. And on April 15th, you'll see the results of the full discussion. But I just wanted to come here, again, as an independent contractor, someone who's been a part of really supporting the county on their racial equity efforts for the last four years, is that, again, your partnership would be critical for this initiative to get off the ground successfully and to reach the people most in need. And so again, your role in all of this is it's going to potentially be in your area, okay? So this is something that, again, the Board of Supervisors and the county is still thinking about. Or it could be somewhere else, but you know, just think about the possibility of what would it mean for something of this scale and of this size to be in that area? When we did our community engagement sessions, people really identified this place of needing revitalization, needing presence, really needing some safety resources. And so again, what would it look like to support the hub being here? Again, District 1, in our community engagement sessions, people had mixed thoughts about Cavallo. People thought it was kind of unsafe. They felt like, I don't know if it should be there. And I just wanted to be transparent about that. But also, people felt it was the perfect location because that's where the most needs are, right? That zip code, that district. So those are things that the county is really going to be thinking about because at the core, they want to invest in the most high-need areas. And whether that central location or those mobile services, we have actually helped the county come up with a place-based strategy, right? So there's a very sophisticated GIS tool that we developed that you'll see on April 15th, where again, we can get down to the census level track of the prioritization zones of who needs to be served with this initiative. So again, data-driven, but the data shows that Antioch has the most need. And finally, we're exploring different forms and organizational structures for the hub. If you come to prior meetings, we've talked about a joint powers authority potentially. One, because the county is already kind of going through other ethnic minority services or other holistic healing services that maybe it's time to consolidate all those efforts in a JPA-like structure. But ultimately, we're not there yet, you know? It's still up for discussion, but in my mind, as a researcher, the type of in-kind support that the city of Antioch could provide to this is mostly, again, through space sharing, right? If we do the mobile services, right, we're going to need maybe a place to be so we can get to the people most close. We also love the Angelo Quito Crisis Response Team. We think that's a great immediate partner to increase the need for mobile crisis services in this area, right? I don't know where you all are at, what you're staffing for the Quito Mobile Crisis or the Crisis Response Team. However, we see this being a nice match because we do have a staffing model for staff to not work regular hours. We're thinking about it 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. or extended hours. So again, these are the ways we see programs that you are operating and programs that this hub is proposing to operate as being all aligned. So again, on the 15th, if you join in and if you support just initially what we're talking about, again, this has been an initiative of the county since 2023. We're just at the feasibility study phase of things. But again, it is coming online and we would just love your leadership and support just moving forward. So yeah, that's the bulk of my presentation, but happy to begin to discussion answering any additional questions.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lynch. Do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not have public comment on the presentation item. Oh, Andrew. Andrew Becker. Sorry.
I think they put it on number 10.
This is the presentation item. We have not gotten to item 10 yet. Or... Or do you want to?
No, this is a presentation. Item 10 is going to follow this.
Thank you. And if there's ever any confusion with the numbers too, feel free to just raise your hand when they call for public comments. So just wanted to, you know, add a couple of thoughts. You know, as the county explores these opportunities and invests in communities, you know, I wonder, how do we get to a point where they proposed this beautiful new building in Brentwood and this beautiful new youth center in Brentwood, ground-up construction, buy land that they didn't even own? And then when we get to an incredible need like this, well, how can we use an older building that we have here and maybe share some space? Like if we're going to invest in our community, then it does mean bringing all the stakeholders to the table. You know, we have the E-BART system that came to Antioch that provides that regional transportation mode to Antioch, to that core that we were supposed to build out but never did. Create a hub in the central location. It's not in North or South Antioch. It's centrally located. BART through AB 2923 has to allow housing development on their property. State density bonus law says if you build affordable housing, you can now include mixed-use development, include commercial. And then directly across the freeway, we have a serious developer like Cypress Equity Investment that to date has done 119 projects, 13,100 multifamily units. And they're putting 160 units across the street from the BART station. This would be the opportunity to capitalize on all of those state funding sources, to share spaces, to bring BART into the conversation, saying, we as a city are going to support. You as a JPA are going to bring us the property that opens up this access to the rest of the county. We'll reach out to this affordable developer that has done this 119 times already and see if we can bring in extra dollars for these improvements. We'll reach out to the developer across the railroad tracks that owns all of that property, that built our 160 interchange, and see if they're invested to actually bring serious resources to our community. Not structures, but structure. This is an incredible opportunity, not just for Antioch, not just for East County, but for the state, for the country, to understand how you truly address a community's needs. The county should give that property on Cavallo to the city, not for this, it should be by BART, but for the community's needs on Cavallo. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Do not have any more public comment for the presentation item.
All right. Does council have any questions for Dr. Lynch or anybody? No? Okay. Then we will continue on to item number 10.
Yeah, she's not off the hook yet, though. Yeah, come on. So Dr. Kirby, she gave my staff report, so thank you very much, and I'm not going to pay you, so. I just want to make sure that, you know, you answer the questions that I posed. I sent her a list of questions and she said she doesn't work for us yet. And some of the questions were who will receive the services, who are left out of the services, what does a human-centered, culturally-responsive design look like, and what is your framework? I think the council would benefit from knowing. And, you know, I know you met with Councilmember Torres Walker. And each one of the councilmembers has asked separately about this information. Councilmember Freitas, you asked for the feasibility study. Did I send it to you? Oh, I did. Oh, see, I do have some memory. Yes, it was a lot. And so if you could give us the CNN version of the feasibility study as well as what we're on the hook for, so that the council can decide if they want to adopt a resolution supporting this effort. I will tell you, operationally, we would need to figure out where it sits. The place where it would be under Public Safety Community Resources are in the city manager's office, as well as, I think, all the operational scaling that needs to happen would be at the executive level.
Yes. So do you want me to kind of go through your questions? I'll time myself. So yes, just to give context, I'm just a consultant for the feasibility study, all right? So a lot of the high-level coordination after the Board of Supervisors decide what they want to do is going to be most likely coordinated between the Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice and other department agencies at first to figure out where they want to collaborate and create some potentially inter-agency MOUs around maybe how Health Department and Employment and Human Services collaborate to do the mobile deployment. Because all this is about urgent services to the community, right? Really, where Antioch became a source of inquiry was at our March 17th Equity Committee, which is a Board of Supervisors committee, which is about kind of discussing these equity concerns. There was a request from the Board of Supervisors to really explore the governance structure for the hub. And our biggest recommendation was a JPA because of the scale. You know, we know that Antioch, Richmond, Pittsburgh, Brentwood, Oakley, San Pablo, El Cerrito, there's so many different jurisdictions, Pinot, Hercules, have all been a part of this process and they all are working on various health equity efforts, whether it's a mobile crisis unit, whether it's thinking about HIV prevention. So, you know, a lot of folks are interested in this. So I've been having multiple conversations with multiple cities and jurisdictions about their role. But again, really appreciate the leadership of the city of Antioch for inviting me in for this presentation to just start the conversation. But really, that's going to be the appropriate entity to do it with. But from my perspective, with a joint powers authority, that's really service-forward, which is very kind of different for Contra Costa County. You know, y'all are part of the East County Transportation Plan, you know? It's a lot of like pooling resources, maybe buying into assurances policies together. However, when we look at other models like reducing health disparities, which is a statewide JPA, they coordinate health services across multiple ethnic groups and work with multiple agencies to deploy health services to our top counties that have the worst health disparities in the state, right? So that's a state-level JPA. But also looking at inspiration from Solano County. They have the CAP-Solano JPA, which is a homeless service kind of facing organization where, again, all of the cities in the county of Solano come together and they basically share resources for homeless services. And this JPA was created at a time when there really wasn't a homeless CBO infrastructure. And again, all of these cities got together in 1997, 1998 in Solano County. And they said, first, us as cities, we're going to come together and support the CBO infrastructure development. And then over time, it became like a 50/50 power-share relationship between these cities, the county, and then new CBOs that had been created. So now, if you look at the CAP-JPA Solano, it's really a joint, really 50/50 equal community-based organizations in the county, working together to deploy services. And they've also implemented like a lived experience aspect to it. So now, folks with lived experiences and homelessness are actually directing and advising how the services are being deployed. So in this similar case, when we're thinking about how do the black community, particularly in Contra Costa, collaborate and coordinate with each other, that's why, again, this became a potential idea as a way to coordinate these services. Down the road, this may be three to five years. I just want to be transparent about that. But from our feasibility study, what you can really start to understand is the overall service plan, right? And the menu of services that need to be provided based on our community engagement sessions, right? So over 4,000 people did a survey. We did over 20 listening sessions. So when you read our feasibility report, and the updated one's going to come out on Thursday with the packet, so you'll see 228 pages, so it's even gotten longer. But you'll see it all, you know? It's going to be foolproof, you know? You could really take or leave whatever you want from that report. But again, at the highest level, who will receive the services? So again, the steering committee came up with target populations of who needs to be the priority to receive services. So that's unhoused, justice-impacted elders, right? And so for us, we want to stay aligned with that. So that's families with young children, right? Family planning services was a huge need, youth and adolescent services, adults, elders, justice-involved individuals, unhoused residents, and also our LGBT disabled and immigrant black residents. We had a significant portion of African immigrants, particularly in East County, who filled out our survey. 6% of our survey alone was Nigerian immigrants who took our survey. So we want to be very conscious that black folks are not a monolith and there's intersections at the intersection. So, you know, it's designed with black folks in mind. But as you know, right, so who will be left out of services? Not anyone particularly, right? Because we know here in the state of California, because of Proposition 209, we cannot deny services or preferences to people based on race. So again, we did a nice focus group with the Black Student Union at Antioch High School, which is a really great mix of black and brown students. And our brown students were like, well, can I come to the hub? And I can't say no, you know what I'm saying? Like, they want to come too. They're a part of the Black Student Union. They're in Antioch. They're in part of this shared struggle. So again, that's not a part of the intention of the hub is to exclude anyone. It's, again, all-inclusive. But it's really important to note that the interventions and the programs and how they're designed are to be culturally competent, trauma-informed, healing-centered, right? Coming from Afrocentric, right, kind of like a non-standard approach to delivering services. And me and my team, we have a lot of experience doing that. We supported, again, city and county of San Francisco in innovating some of their services for Medi-Cal and getting reimbursements. We did Afrocentric health programming, city and county of San Francisco that was Medi-Cal funded. So, you know, we're working with the systems and trying to innovate what type of new services can be created for this community particularly. So it's not that anyone's being left out of services, but if it looks different than a typical county program that you're used to participating in, it's because it's intentionally designed from a program level, logic model, theory of change with that black community in mind. Again, how would a hub complement Antioch's current services? Again, I see it all about just scaling access, really inspired by the Department of Public Safety and community resources or services. Right? Love it. Love it all. Love the leadership. But it's also, again, just expanding the numbers, right? There's so many programs across this county that are serving 24 people, 48 people. We need to annually be serving at least 500 families, really, across the county with a lot of these programs. So it's really just scaling up access and really thinking about the economics around the cost per person. thinking about the economics around the cost per person. In our feasibility study, you will see kind of some of those numbers. We're thinking that a lot of our interventions can be around $357 per person because of the innovations that we're proposing. We don't want to compete with y'all. It's not about duplication. We really do want to come up with county-city referral pathways because we're serving the same people. So EHSD is a really great partner in that. They have a very sophisticated IT department, HMIS, so they're all about figuring out how their data systems can work with cities to coordinate the same amount of people with, you know, unique identifiers. So we are proposing like its own standalone enterprise software to track people who are coming through the hub and making sure there's just expansion of who's being served and where they are and hopefully case management. And in terms of human-centered culturally responsive framework, again, this is community-driven. All of our planning comes from these community processes and also literature review and best practices. So again, we did look at other African-American similar initiatives that were government-funded across the nation, and they're all different. There's a gamut of them. And again, at the core of each of them is that human-centered design, because you're designing with and not for residents. That's really a huge part of this process. I know some folks in the audience have participated in some of our listening sessions, but it really is a for-us-by-us model, and that's how we get that insight on, hmm, maybe Cavallo, mm, mm, you know? That all, all that feedback helps us really make sure our work is with integrity. We do believe in Black-led governance structures, right? What does it mean to have Black-led organizations or providers really giving their wisdom from the field? Because our research, we talked to frontline workers about really what the past five years have been serving these communities and the capacity issues they have. And so in our report, you will get some recommendations from frontline workers on how to make just these services a little bit more trauma-informed and really rooted in transparency, accountability, and even a call for abolition, abolition. You know, people want to feel freedom, they want to feel liberated from just years and legacies of oppression. That's what's really important about this hub, is that we're trying to be really overt about the reason for the season and how we got here, which is because all of the community demand for addressing the trauma. Just another thing is like, what do we need from the city of Antioch? Again, that's a preliminary conversation. I hope that you all can participate April 15 and learn more and just be in contact with the Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice. But I think, again, in the short term, as we're starting this up, it's that in-kind contribution, right? Is it possible to use an existing city building for initial operations? Can we maybe have our street team have maybe a few hours out of facility? Because that's going to be a huge one. We're going to have these potentially vans, and, you know, there's a parking lot for county vehicles in Concord, but that would be awkward if we're trying to get to Antioch. So, you know, just trying to think logistically about spacing, staffing time, you know? Been working with your staff, Ms. Tasha, she's not here, but she's amazing people, you know, potentially thinking about what staff can be dedicated to this initiative is going to be important. And then just overall alignment with work that you all have going on. Like I said, the Quito Crisis Response Team is, again, things this effort wants to contribute to, not duplicate or take away from you. It's just increase your resources to serve more people. In the long term, if the county feels that a JPA is the suitable structure, then again, we wouldn't want you to be the sole city to be a part of it. You know, there are conversations with other jurisdictions, but what would it look like to have multiple cities with the county really serve on this JPA and provide resources? And really, again, doing more county-wide initiatives for the Black community, because that's one, the most financially sustainable thing to do. And then, yeah, I mean, we could talk more and more about that if you have more questions. Let's see. Let's see, what else? Anything else you want me to cover? Okay. Well, we can go, but that's it for now. And then you can share that document I created. Okay. No, that's how I beat it. I'd just be, you know, yes.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lynch. All right. Do we have public comment on this item?
I do. I have eight speaker cards. The first speaker will be Gavin Payton, followed by Dr. Lee Kimberly Payton, and then Claire Abenzin.
Hello. I'm completely for this, and I'm gonna say why. So, the reason why I'm for this is because this has been a long time coming, and I feel like after everything that has happened due to racism-wise, this is certainly a step in the right direction, and it's a step in the forward direction. And we need to move forward, not only as the city, but we need to move forward as a county, as a country. And if we can set a precedent that this is happening, we can probably say hey to the other cities that, you know, look, look at what we're doing. Why aren't they doing it? Let's make them other cities look bad. Come on. Let's make us a people and a unity and not divided. Let's come together so we can all heal. Let's come to the table and be together as the people, not as an individual why we shouldn't, why we can't, why it's not okay, because they've used all the excuses out of the book. Y'all are just using the same textbook, just in a different way. Okay, we're tired hearing that. Let's move forward. Now, let's, we're tired about the ifs and what-ifs and stuff like that. Let's make an action, and let's take it now, because what are you going to do 50 years from now? Look how it's going to benefit us. Look how it's going to benefit the youth. You just had youth come here multiple nights in a row to advocate for themselves. Now it is the time for you guys to do something to help us. You ask us what we want, this is what we want. You ask us what we need, this is exactly what we need as the people, especially the youth that are, ones that are being attacked out here constantly on a day-to-day basis. You may not feel it, but we do. We feel it. In the heart of Angela Quintos, Lamar Baldwin, this is the exact step in the right direction, because enough is enough, and we are tired. We are exhausted. We sometimes just need help. So, are you ready to help the youth or not? That will be your vote. Thank you.
Dr. Kimberly Payton, followed by Clara Abenzin and Cornelius Johnson.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Dr. Kimberly Payton, the president-elect for the East County NAACP. And I just wanted to say today, or to ask you, to be in support of the African-American Wellness Hub. The African-American Wellness Hub is the best attempt for the city of Antioch to support all the harm that's happened, be it in one section of Antioch, all across Antioch. Many Black and Brown people have been harmed repeatedly, and this is at least a step in the right direction to reach all those different pockets of resources, not just mental health, not just spiritual help, but help across the board that's needed. Ignoring it and pretending like it didn't happen is not going to help it go away. Finding resources for our community, building our community back up, taking it a part of the city's initiatives, like some of you mentioned, when you took office the first night, that would really help gain the city's residents, of Black and Brown residents', confidence that you care, that they're a part of this process, that they're a part of this community. So I'm asking you to please take a look and support it. Help with resources, provide space, and anything else that you can do to solve this problem so that we can all start to move on, as this process may take a long time, but at least if we start it today, then the healing can start today, and we can all move on today. Thank you.
Next speaker is Claire, followed by Cornelius Johnson and Clyde Lewis.
Hi, everybody. I think I know pretty much everybody here, and thanks, Dr. Lynch, for having me speak. I'm mainly speaking on, from an architectural perspective. I think this is a great thing for Antioch. I think there's a great need here, and I think that building, if it's revitalized, it's going to revitalize that area. Dr. Lynch had called it sort of a Walmart for Black liberation, and I see it that, I see it similar to that. Sorry, I'm very, very nervous. I've never done this before. And so, I actually see it as a high-tech Walmart, as something with, that uses AI and all that stuff. I mean, there's so much opportunity, there's so much stuff going on in Antioch right now. The downtown area is just exploding, and Antioch could really benefit from something like this. So, yeah, and I think it's going to bring Antioch into the 22nd century, so I completely support this idea. Thank you.
Next speaker is Khan Johnson, followed by Clyde Lewis and Debra.
It's past my bedtime. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Cornelius Johnson. I'm the former city manager of this fine city, Antioch. And back in 2003, the city conducted an assessment, needs assessment for its homeless population for the In Home Care Project. We determined, and we discovered that Antioch is East County in the highest need, but yet we received the least amount of resources from the county in funding. That, can you guys hear me? That also has been illustrated in a most recent report by the Health, Housing, and Homeless Division in its 2024 Homeless Point in Time Count Survey. That survey revealed that over every nightly, there's over 2,843 homeless people scattered throughout county. 39% of that population is in East County, and East County, and break it down, out of the 646, 413 of those individuals were here in Antioch where there's a need. It further also indicates that in the age group, between 56% of the individuals are in the ages of 25 to 54. The gender is 61% male. Most of them are veterans who are homeless and unhoused on our streets in Antioch. And then the race breakdown is 39% white, 33% African-American, and 15% Latino. I say all that because this population here requires some resources that has been neglected and other served for all these years. Now is the time to provide that. They need resources like case management, would help them with their mental health problems, with their drug addiction, and other issues that comes along with the individual need of an unhoused person. They also need help for housing. That's why it's important for a housing navigation system or a program that this hub can provide for that population. They also need to have life skills, simple skills of learning how to budget, a household budget for housing and food, because we believe that if you teach a homeless person, if you give them food, they eat for a day. If you give them the skills to eat for a lifetime, to get food for a lifetime, they live for a lifetime. We also understand that there is also a need to have these services when it comes down to, you know, your regular rent assessment, or rent assessment, or rent support form, I'm sorry, programs and that capacity. So all these things can be delivered in this African-American holistic wellness program or initiative. I also want to acknowledge that this started back in 2003 with the leadership of Ms. Councilmember Wilson and also Tamisha Councilmember Walker, when they created the Angelo Quito Crisis Response Team, as well as the new development of the community. So we ask you for support. Thank you.
Next speaker is Clyde Lewis, followed by Debra and Velma Wilson.
Greetings, Mayor Bernal, council members, and the public. So I want to speak in support of the African-American Wellness Hub for a lot of reasons. You know, I won't duplicate what folks have said prior, but what I will say is, I think as a city, we need an opportunity to come together and have conversations where we can actually constructively resolve some of the longstanding issues that have been present. I think this hub provides a space for us to do that. In addition to all of the navigation spaces for mental health and all those other services that have been mentioned, I think this is also an opportunity for us to create a space where people can actually have constructive conversations to work toward resolution. I think all of us want a healthy city, and part of health is mental health, physical health, emotional health, and well-being. So if we have a space where we can actually have those conversations in a way that will address the specific needs of a specific population, I think it'll be a benefit to everyone. And so with that, that's my time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Debra, followed by Velma Wilson and Ron.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Bernal and Mayor Pro Tem. So, I stand in support of this center, and I stand in support of the resolution. So, one of the things we're dealing with is pre-COVID and post-COVID, people trying to survive in our communities. We have, there's something called ACES, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and now we're dealing with adverse community experiences. And so all of these situations have converged. The other thing I want to say is that sometimes when people go to jail, they're released back into the community where they lived, and so we're also dealing with that. But I wanted to read this brief, how am I doing? Wanted to read this, this brief synopsis of how being anti-racist can really, really impact a society positively, and I think it would be beneficial for Antioch because of our police situation. So the National Trauma Center, you've heard Dr. Kirby talk about research, but there's research everywhere on how we're being impacted by different systems that impact our community, and mainly Black families, Black children, just people of African descent. So the research has been done, the stats are there. And I identify as biracial, Black and Choctaw, but you don't get much research on how natives are doing in any of these situations, especially the adverse community environment. So, this article says, "Our nation is at a critical precipice for reimagining how to improve access to and quality of the services for children, families, and communities throughout the United States who have been traumatized by the current and historical impacts of anti-Black racism." It says, "as well as systems that work to dismantle and actually focus on the white supremacy culture that continues to uphold racism. The goal of our resources belies many systems. Their leaders and their agents to adopt conscious transformational impacts of systems, not performative, but systems that actually will get in there and help people restore their spiritual lives so they can become productive citizens." Now, I'm a little biased. I will say that if you don't have mental health, you don't have anything in terms of living your life. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Velma, followed by Ron.
Good evening, counsel, again. I stand here as an injured worker. I think about pacemakers, blood transfusions, conjoined twins, open-heart surgery, diabetes, things that often plague the Black community in major and vast roles. things that often plague the Black community in major and vast roles. I think about organ and tissue donation. I'm a recipient of tissue donation. Because when I injured, got injured at work, I landed, burst the bursus in my hip, tore all the tendons. They had to reconstruct my left leg to put it back together. By all imagination, I shouldn't be walking. But God in His faithfulness, I'm walking. Could you imagine a wellness holistic hub that houses Black medical professionals that support the body makeup, the body design, the health disparities that African-Americans face day in and day out? It's not a myth, it's fact. We, it's far too long, have suffered. We should not be dying in the mass numbers. Organ donation and tissue donation is real. But our people are dying because African-Americans are afraid to step up, to join the registry. I stand here proud as an ambassador for Donor Network West, trying to get the message out. This hub could be that conduit. Thank you to Dr. Kirby Lynch for all of your work, even when you fought against those that didn't want to see this happen, didn't want to understand the research, but thank you. I need everyone to contact your county supervisor, making sure that they step up and they don't push this off any longer and make the vote. Because that money is there. We passed that measure, you voted, this is taxpayer money. Let's stand up for the right to use our money for making sure that it's us, for us, by us.
The last speaker card I have is for Ron.
Greetings. I am in support, young lady, you did an excellent job. You know what you're talking about. But I'm in support of this item and hopefully our representatives, our representatives, our representatives who represent us would hear the call that's coming from the community. But I have a little twist on it. I mean, for some of the reasons that you mentioned, the cultural competency part. I think that the integrated potential of integrating services between county and the joint powers is huge. And I think that surpasses any ethnicity or anything like that. Because when you speak about Black folk in a cultural competency way, I don't know if you've looked at it, it's really talking about everybody. Because we always service everybody. So don't let the term mess you up. Whenever something is good for Black folk, it's good for everybody. Everybody wins. I think that it would offset a lot of issues we have in the budget. Because you'll be able to co-mingle services and we can leverage things off of it. I mean, the young lady, Rika, she does a beautiful job with her showers and things of that nature. She needs to be brought into the fold along with the BAC and all the rest of the things of public safety. But I am a homeowner. And so I do want the cultural competency of the homelessness to be addressed in a way to where it doesn't infringe on me as a homeowner. And I wouldn't dare choose an ethnicity over common sense. So that's why it's imperative that we're at the table to be able to talk about it from the city and the county. And I do think Velma is absolutely correct. Do not look at the county as if they're doing you a favor. That, those are our dollars. And so we need to be at the table, meaning our representatives, to be able to make sure that it is done in a real rational way. Thank you, and I hope you will support it. And I hope that you would be there to be able to monitor it and make sure that it makes sense in a real way and on a cultural competency, not just those cultural. Antioch has its own culture. So you need to bring in Antioch services that could be leveraged to be able to make this thing make sense to us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Pastor Ed Harris, followed by Yvette Williams.
Good evening to the mayor and the council and to the committee. I sat there and I was listening. And as I was listening, I heard a cry of the people. As a pastor and from the faith-based community, I remember a passage in the Bible that says, "When you did it to the least of these, you've done it unto me." That means nobody gets left out. Nobody gets left behind. And if there is a need, then the needs need to be met. It's not about simply finances. It's not about simply the haves and the have-nots. It's simply about doing the right thing. And the right thing in this moment is not personality, it's not people. It's purpose, it's principle, and it's practice. And if we are only as strong as our weakest link, then we can ill afford to have anybody not treated properly. And so I appeal to all of us to stand together in unity. We get more done together than we can get done separated. And if it were any one of our family members that we were talking about, I think all of us would have a different stake in the game. We are all family. We are all part of the creation that was created by our Creator. It don't matter what you call the Creator, we didn't do it ourselves. And since we didn't, we're called to take care one of another. So we cannot afford to leave anybody behind. So I stand in agreement with us doing all that we can do to make it assured that all are cared for. I work in the school district and I watch these young children, especially African-American males, who don't have people in their households, don't have positive role models. If they were to come into African-American holistic hub and see people like them doing positive things, having an opportunity to have hope, because without hope, the people perish. Let's give people hope. Let's work together. Let's stand in solidarity and let's take care of our business. God bless you.
Yvette Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Real change is seen through the eyes and spoken from the voices of persons whom were harmed. The number of surveys collected spoke loudly. All I heard was, "We want change." I can't think of a better way to heal the open wounds of community members by having access to this hub. Every time I've worked or visited District One, the residents appreciated being seen and heard. I also wish to acknowledge the Forty Voices Campaign for starting the conversation. Thank you.
I do not have any more speaker cards for this item.
All right, thank you. Before we go to council comments, can we have a motion to extend the time of this meeting, please, since we're a little bit past 10 o'clock?
So do we be, you asked him to extend beyond 11?
No, extend to whatever time council would like to see. I know we are, so we should extend till 11.
We don't need to do this yet. It's premature. It's 11 o'clock.
Okay, got it, all right.
The mayor didn't realize daylight savings time. Yeah, I keep forgetting to cut my mic on, but I'm like, wow, it's 11, we out at 11. But we, you know, we could extend past 11.
All right, yeah, need something. All right, can we get any comments from the council on this? Or questions for Dr. Lynch?
I just was really, I just want to say, I was really impressed with your presentation and the comments that were made following your presentation. I think about the community, there's been a lot of conversation about how can we come together as a community to work together, to move forward. And I think that a lot of what you shared tonight and the research that you've done to bring it to this place where we're at tonight, I think is to be commended. So thank you for what you've done to bring us to this point. And again, I think it'll benefit all of you. So I think the words that were just shared a few minutes ago about not leaving anybody behind, I think is really important that we take care of everybody in our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Lynch, for the presentation. I've seen a couple iterations of this presentation in the community at the Board of Supervisors and other spaces. So thank you for being able to bring it here to Antioch. I think some of the things I want to point out is the reason why I continue to ask for a resolution to support this effort early on as a city is because we have one resident that came, well, not just one. We have many residents who come here all the time and say, "We're property owners, we're taxpayers. Like, these are our tax dollars." And people said that tonight as well. It's like, no, yeah, we have a right to this. This is our tax dollars. Well, Measure X funds is absolutely our tax dollars. However, with 90% of each individual homeowner's tax dollars going to the county level and only 10% being retained here in the city, we were still passed up for that youth center that residents also advocated for to be built here in the city of Antioch very loudly, very visibly. And it still ended up one in Brentwood and one in Baypoint. So when we have conversations around what's the county's responsibility to the city of Antioch, it's like, we should also be going to the Board of Supervisors meeting. Like, we advocate for our 10% here in Antioch at the city council meeting, but we have 90% sitting at the county that continues to somehow escape our community every time there's a potential resource. Like, our young people in our most vulnerable neighborhoods having to travel miles just to access youth centers that we know should have been built here in Antioch. I also seen that this population is going to be served as like, we mentioned youth, we mentioned seniors, we mentioned a lot of vulnerable populations. And I also seen that we mentioned the reentry population, which over almost 13 years ago, the recidivism rate in Contra Costa County for people facing incarceration was 75%. That mean you had a 75% chance of returning back to jail at any point, no matter where you released to in this county, because there were no resources. But for the last 13 years, there has been resources. And one community member mentioned, "These people are gonna get released. And when they get released, they're gonna come home." Well, guess what? They've been coming home since the institutions of prisons was created. People were coming home, whether you liked it or not. So there needed to be resources, right? I think the biggest disadvantage is around economic development and finding those opportunities for reenfranchisement. Because when people can't access resources, how do we, how can they become productive members of society? So just thinking about like intentionally, how is the hub gonna fill in the gaps for individuals in East County or West County, whether Black ground or indifferent, around economic stability and growth? Because that isn't even the current intention of our reentry service system in this county. And I think we have one reentry service provider in the city, which is Rubicon, which I call the Walmart of reentry services, right? I also want to appreciate, I also too want to appreciate the Forty Voices Campaign and various individual Antioch residents, ACE, Reimagine Antioch, Rising Huntos, everybody who came together to really drive home this conversation around African-American wellness in the county, but making sure that we are prioritizing residents and the voices of people impacted by racism, white supremacy, and state sanctioned violence. Because that is by which the context, the advocacy started, just behind the Wellness Hub. But when the conversation started around ORESJ, the Officer Racial Equity and Social Justice at the county level, far before 2021, but when that office became available, it was because a report was released that said there was great racial disparity in this county. And previous to that report, the county of Contra Costa declared racism a public health issue in our county. If you don't believe me, look it up. And so you can't declare something a public health issue, but then not provide the dollars behind it to address the public health issue that you just declared. And we have a significant opportunity here, because it's not just coming to us and saying, "How do we use our already strapped resources and the dollars as a city to make this happen?" But how do we hold the county accountable to our 90%? I also want to thank everybody who has been involved from Measure X from day one. This has been a six-year process. I was there from the ballot measure, which is a concept. I was there knocking on doors for people to vote for Measure X funding. I was there for the formation of the Measure X Committee. I was there to advocate for the very youth center to come to Antioch that did not make it to Antioch. And now we get to be here again on the ground as Antioch and say, "We will not be looked over again for not one more red cent that we deserve to serve every resident." And I want to, again, thank you for your presentation, Dr. Kirby. And I also understand that when we talking about, when you have conversations in the context of Black folks and you say like, "We want to serve Black people, African-American people, whatever you identify as, biracial, whatever." The question is always, it should be very clear that like, when you serve your most vulnerable folks, you serve everybody, but particularly when you serve Black people, you serve everybody. And I think the apprehension behind saying that we just want to serve Black people is always wrapped in a context of it makes people feel uncomfortable when you say that you only want to serve Black people. So you gotta say it's gonna serve everybody. And I think that's always been the intent of Black people is that if we can get served, then everybody can get served. But what has historically happened, even on the heels of fights for social justice and civil rights across this country, everything Black people have fought for to access, we have yet to access it. And that includes the American dream. So thank you for your work and I hope we can support, at the least with a resolution right now to show the county that you know we support it. But as far as like resources, accesses and space and things like that, I think that's a further down the road conversation. If this council continues to visit the budget and see where we might have to make cuts to balance the budget, hopefully from the top and not the bottom.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm gonna keep, yeah, I'm gonna keep it short, because pretty much Councilmember Torres Walker was saying everything that I was thinking. I definitely support this. Although I wasn't involved in the group, I heard about this Wellness Center probably sometime last year and thought it was an excellent idea. You know, because I too believe if you help your most vulnerable, then your whole community is strong. One, and I support this, one area I definitely hope that you guys will address the amount of human trafficking that goes on throughout Contra Costa County and especially in East Contra Costa County. We have cases in Brentwood, Antioch, Pittsburgh, Oakley, it's happening throughout the county. And hopefully that can also be addressed because, you know, I work with survivors in my day, with my day job. And nine times out of 10, there's no, when we identify somebody on the street, we can't immediately get them someplace, because there's no place for them to go in the county, because we have no housing for survivors of human trafficking. We have no housing for our unhoused. We have no housing for our own house. We have no housing for somebody that's going through a crisis. We don't have housing or a shelter for them to go to. So if we can also address that issue as well, I think it'd be very important. But I definitely wholeheartedly support this, and I would like, you know, I wish this had more teeth, and we can do more here. So I'm looking forward to supporting this and seeing what comes in the future. And thank you, thank you for coming.
Dr. Kirby, I think you did an outstanding job. And for, for somebody who did read the whole twenty, one hundred and twenty-six pages, and God forbid, it's gonna be double that, but, um, i- it's clear, it's been needed. Eastern Contra Costa County has been the, the stepchild of Contra Costa County government. And I speak as an employee who worked for Contra Costa County for thirty-three years. And let me just say, historically, the, the county advocates JPAs and cities resist. And the marriage between the two are very, very difficult to overcome. And in your presentation, I absolutely agreed with you. It cannot be a JPA with just the county in Antioch. Otherwise, it's not going to be particularly effective. The, but that being said, I created the Contra Costa Clean Water Program, which was all nineteen cities, the county, the County Flood Control District, nineteen public entities. Very difficult. Started off with JPA, and because of the hatred and the relationships back in the nineties, early two thousands, it just did not fly. But that was not an excuse to stop. You know, we did create a memorandum of understanding. We did engage all the parties, and I created it twenty-six years ago, and now they're finally talking about creating a JPA. You know, because there are advantages in that. But my, my advice is, you know, share, fight for the JPA, but don't let it deter you, because it is just in Contra Costa County, has not been a legal mechanism embraced between the county and the cities. And it's unfortunate, but it's a reality that we have. Doesn't mean you don't start off asking for it, fighting for it, and demanding it, but have Plan B in the back pocket. So good luck, you know, and we all, you know, await, because of the dynamics of the, the politics, and it's, it's unfortunate that they're there, but they are there. Hopefully, our two county supervisors who represent our community will focus not only on this, but other issues, bringing east, bringing county services to us locally. It is long, long overdue.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Dr. Kirby, thank you for, um, your time tonight. Uh, I know you're really busy, and it's close to the fifteenth, so coming into our council meeting is important to us. I really appreciate your, um, your grasp and understanding and ability to communicate, um, the need here to us as a city council and as a community. I thank the community for coming out tonight and, and staying up late to provide your, um, your thoughts on this, because they were all valuable and all important, and I, almost every person here I know and, and value their input, so that's, that's important and means a lot. Uh, I just, um, want to make sure that we're continuing our relationship with the county. You know, it's, it's struggled in the past, and we're building upon it right now through homelessness in different areas. And I see this as being another, another place that we can work with the county, hopefully. As, um, Councilmember Freitas said, that a JPA could involve as mu, as many other agencies as possible, so it's as collaborative as possible. And I guess the thing I'm most, most, um, hopeful of is that this is a unique model. Uh, I think Antioch's a unique community, and that taking in everything that other places across the country and, and other organizations have tried before, and in taking it and building a model, um, that is, uh, that is something that's special and, and unique and can be a model for other places. So I just want to thank you for your, your presentation tonight. I want to thank the city manager also for helping us and helping me frame some questions about, um, how to understand this, this issue much better. And so I'm supportive of, of the resolution that we're, we're considering tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, please, do I have a motion?
Yes. And thank, thank you, thank you again for identifying, cover all. People said, like, "Oh, you know, it's dangerous in the community," but I think that if we keep, if we keep saying a community isn't safe, but we do nothing to make it safe, uh, we're spinning our wheels. So I would like to make a motion that the city, um, council adopt a resolution in support of, of the African-American Holistic Wellness and Resource Hub Initiative, recognizing Contra Costa County's leadership, affirming Antioch's willingness to explore opportunities for collaboration, and reinforcing the city's commitment to racial wellness and equity. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please catch your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. So we are, uh, back to item number four, uh, announcements of civic and community events.
All right, how do you follow that? Uh, you follow it with a extravaganza. Right at the water park this Saturday, April twelfth, from eleven AM to three PM. It's gonna be a, a great event. We have pre-sale tickets. The address is forty-seven oh one, Lone Tree Way. It's gonna be a great opportunity for families to come together. We're gonna have multiple egg drops. We're gonna have face painting. We're gonna have eggs in the water, on the land. Uh, we're gonna have picture opportunities with the bunny and eggs and all the good stuff. So, uh, it's also gonna be an opportunity to see some of the things that we've done in the off-season, some of the repairs and all that good stuff. So if you can make it again, April twelfth, eleven AM to three PM, uh, pre-sale tickets are available. It's eight dollars pre-sale, twelve dollars at the door. Good night.
All right, thank you. All right. Um, now, item number, I'm sorry, is there any public comment on this?
No, event. Just, just a reminder that tomorrow is the District Four Community Meeting at the International Barber Shop on the corner of Lone Tree and Golf Course. We're gonna have two guest speakers, our city manager, Ms. Bessie Scott, and our chief of police, uh, Joe Bee Hill, will be our speaker. I'm sorry, it's late, I think, for a second. Will be our two guest, uh, speakers. So it's gonna be from six-thirty to eight PM tomorrow night.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments?
I have two speaker cards. Um, one is for Joshua Price. I do not think he is here anymore. And the, uh, second one is for Velma Wilson.
It seem like I've been up here a lot. All right, April twenty-sixth, support the Antioch River Town Jamboree, one of the oldest nonprofits here in the city of Antioch for their annual craft feed and tri-tip dinner. It will feature live entertainment from the Project Four Band. Tickets are sixty dollars. I ask that we support Betty Smith and all of the work that she has been doing with the Antioch River Town Jamboree. You know, I think about her, when they were all displaced, all of the nonprofits were displaced and put at the Nick Rodriguez Center, and, you know, I went, I often go into, into the Nick Rodriguez Center and see her little box of an office that she's still trying to stay encouraged with hope and still trying to do the work for the River Town Jamboree. So let's come out, show her some love and support. It's on April twenty-sixth. You can see me for tickets or contact Betty and let her know that I said at live at city council meeting, to support the Antioch River Town Jamboree. We have several youth. Starbucks will be setting up a whole little barista stand in, in the event. It'll be a lot of fun, but a lot of community coming out to support her efforts. Also, May first, join the entire board of the Antioch Schools Education Foundation for their annual Teacher of the Year Celebration. It will be at the historic, Antioch Historic Society on May first, five PM. Let's celebrate our two educators that will be going forward. Get your tickets now. Lastly, Juneteenth, East Contra Costa County, Juneteenth Celebration, hosted by the Forever Me Foundation, yes, that's my daughter, but hosted by the Forever Me Foundation, will be live again at Paradise Gate, a family fun event, starting from twelve PM to five PM at Paradise Roller Rink. Please come out, and let's support our young people doing some positive things, serving the community, coming back into the community, and still serving proudly. Let's support and come out there, bring your, bring your skates, be ready to do some skate tricks and all, but let's go out and get there at Paradise Gate Roller Rink. If you're looking to support her, you can reach out to the Forever Me Foundation at gbell.com, and I know she would love to hear the community coming out and being a support to those efforts. Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
I received one additional speaker card from Gavin Payton.
Hi, I'm gonna be quick. So the East County NAACP Youth Council would also like to invite you to our swearing-in this April twenty-sixth at Tru Light Missionary Baptist Church from two thirty, from two thirty PM to three thirty PM. As you may know, the East County NAACP Youth Council has an election every year, and we have some new electeds. And also, we will be also having some com, also conversations and also including the community in conversations about what we want to see change in our community. So, um, we would like to invite you to come see us get sworn in, and as the new officers emerge, and these new youth that are actively from, not only from East Contra Costa County, but some of these youth are from Antioch, so we would love to see your faces there. Eventbrite has a RSVP link where you can RSVP. Um, second, um, the East County NAACP Youth Council would like for you all to come and support us as we raise funds to go to our National State Conference this year. Um, it is in Charlotte, where we're actively trained to advocate, agitate, and educate. Um, we are hosting a Juneteenth, um, choir and praise dance competition. And we're inviting our community to come and support, and we're inviting our, all of our African-American churches and any church that wants to participate, because we want to see you guys, see our youth compete. We want to see our youth doing something. We want to see our families together. So come out and get your tickets. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item number five, announcements of board and commission openings.
Okay, we have Board of Administrative Appeals. We have two partial term vacancies expiring March twenty twenty-eight, and one alternate two-year term vacancy. We have Parks and Recreation Commission, one partial term vacancy expiring April twenty twenty-six. We also have Planning Commission, one partial term vacancy expiring October twenty twenty-five. The deadline to apply for all of these is Friday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, at five o'clock PM. Um, please fill out an application available on the city's website. Printed applications are also available at Antioch City Hall. Please return the completed application by the deadline by email to cityclerk@antiochca.gov. You can also drop off the application in the water billing drop-off box outside Antioch City Hall.
Thank you. Any public comment on that?
No public comment.
All right. Um, city council committee report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think you're gonna need a motion.
I do need a motion.
To extend the council meeting, uh, to eleven fifteen.
Do I have a motion to extend to eleven fifteen?
Move to approve.
Oh, second. Pass your votes.
Yeah. And, and I know, I'm sorry.
Motion carries five zero to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen PM.
And Mr. Mayor, I know there's one person who's been sitting here the whole time. Could we, can we just move forward the consent calendar? If there's, are there any speakers? I'm ready to.
We have a speaker for item H.
Item H?
Are there any items that you want to be polled from the, from the calendar? No, no items to be polled?
Well, you polled H, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so with that, I'd move approval, the consent calendar excluding item H.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, please catch your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, um, item H, uh, Third Amendment to the Design Consultant Service Agreement with BKF Engineers for the L Street Improvements Project.
This, I, is there still a speaker?
Okay.
Okay. So, no, um, yeah, do we, do we have a motion to approve, uh, consent calendar, item number H?
Oh, we have, we, you have minutes.
I'll, I'll be quick. Yeah, it's kind of a repetitive statement. It's the approving, uh, an extension of a contract, and then when you look in the resolution, it says, "Contract needs to be extended because of unforeseen circumstances around the deliverables." It's a bit vague, was just hoping that in the staff presentation, at least if you're not gonna have the contract, which once again, I think should be there, showing what those deliverables are supposed to be, then there should be a better staff description saying what unforeseen circumstances, because a project that was originally put out for contract that was supposed to close in twenty twenty-two is now getting extended out to twenty twenty-seven, would like to know why and what's holding up the project, because it's tied to some of that public funding that was mentioned earlier in the meeting, so, thank you. Please put the contracts in the staff reports, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, any, any comments from council? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second for item H, catch your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, do we, um, do we want to suspend the rules and move to the purchase, uh, item number nine? Okay, doing it, we, we, we're still out of order. Suspend. All right, as long as everyone promises to keep their comments short. All right, so we have, uh, city council committee reports and communications.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a quick one. Uh, Stan Davis, who many of you who have worked in the city for a long period of time, knows, he was our city engineer for decades and helped train some of the, the people who are now in position. He also has devoted much of his time to the Antioch Historical Society Call. They have a project, it's called the, um, First Congregational Church Bell Project Twenty Twenty-Five. Very quickly, it's a one-ton church bell that was cast in bronze, there's a whole history, and it is believed that it was the first church bill, uh, church bell that actually rang in the city of Antioch. And so they are having a, a whole fundraising to, uh, for this, but specifically, they've asked if the city could waive the building permit, and I know there may be some questions about that, it's approximately two thousand, two hundred and some odd dollars. But I would respectfully ask that we place this on the agenda for, um, April twenty-second, right? April twenty-second, so they can at least make a presentation to us for consideration.
Okay, is everyone good with that? Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, any other, any other council reports?
I was gonna let, um, Councilmember Freitas and Mayor Proton Louis wrote a report out on our commission, committee, since I don't, you know, I'm sharing the space. Uh, so I guess we'll report out at the next one, because we do have some good stuff. But what I, I wanted to do really quick was just congratulate the East County NAACP for having a fair and equitable election. And I also want to congratulate all those who were elected, President-elect Dr. Kimberly Payton, Vice President-elect Velma Wilson, and Second Vice President-elect Alicia Oha. Want to congratulate you all. Also, congratulations to the new secretary. Congratulations to the executive committee, especially to Executive Committee Member Frances Green, who, you know, gives you those revolutionary grandmama vibes. I'm happy that she's staying involved in the NAACP. I'm happy that she's staying involved in the NAACP. And last but not least, today would have been the 38th birthday of my brother Mark. He was taken by gun violence, shot 43 times when he was 18 coming home from work. And today, he would have been 38 years old. So, continue to fight to reduce violence and particularly gun violence in your community because it takes, it takes lives and it takes young lives. Thank you.
All right, uh, anybody else? So, real quickly, at the mayor's conference last week, there was a presentation by the East Bay Regional Park District. I spoke with Commissioner Coffey afterwards, who told me that they're working on a plan for the swimming pool at Contra Loma Park. And so, that's something that, that has been out of commission for a couple of years now, and it looks like it's gonna be another three or four more years. But I asked him to please expedite that, that project. So, they have to redesign that, that whole, that whole structure there. Yeah, so everything else doesn't need to be said. Mayor's conference, our mayor's comments, we will pass on. So, we will move ahead to item number eight. Sales Tax Oversight Committee Appointment for the Partial Term Vacancy Expiring March 2028. And I am recommending appointment of, sorry.
Tam Lee.
Yeah, sorry. Ms. Tam Lee for, for this position, for this vacant position.
Second.
You have a mo-
I'm sorry.
Second.
A motion?
I'm sorry.
You have a motion, we have a second? A second? Cast your votes. All right.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In the future, could applicants be attached though? The whole city council knows who applied.
That was it.
That was it?
That was the only applicant. Yeah, we are, we are doing that.
Never mind.
That was the only applicant.
Thank you for attaching.
Yeah, so we attached it. Yeah, there wasn't a, there wasn't overwhelming response to our request for people, so. All right, item number nine, purchase of two armored rescue police vehicles from the Armored Group in the amount of $531,800.
Thanks so much, Mayor and City Council. The Police Department has had one or more armored vehicles in its fleet for the past 25 years. The armored vehicles are used for high-risk operations, involve armed and dangerous subjects within, wearing special tactics or rescue operations are necessary for public safety. The Police Department's current armored vehicle is at the end of its service life and is no longer a dependable or feasible option. The Police Department is seeking approval to purchase two new armored vehicles to replace its existing vehicle. Asset forfeiture funds will be used to cover the entire procurement. And Captain Bitner is here to talk to us about it.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the time tonight. So, the Police Department is here tonight to ask council to adopt the resolution approving the purchase of two armored vehicles and amending the fiscal year 2425 PD budget, allocating approximately $531,000 from the Police Department's asset forfeiture accounts to cover the full amount of the purchase. It's important to note that no money from the city's general funds will be used to cover the purchase of these, these two vehicles. One of the Police Department's main priorities is to provide the highest level of safety possible to the residents of Antioch. Having the correct equipment and resources to safely resolve any unexpected situation that comes our way is one way we accomplish providing the highest level of public safety to citizens of this city. Unfortunately, at times, violent crime is committed in the city of Antioch, just like it is in many other cities in the state and the nation. When crimes occur involving firearms, it's the Police Department's duty to investigate them to the fullest in an effort to eliminate gun violence, ensure justice, and improve the overall safety of the community. If you weren't aware, just in this past year, we've had hundreds of crimes involving firearms, hundreds of shootings involving firearms. Of those hundreds shootings, about 36 of the shootings involved assault rifles. We've, our officers and detectives have seized over 100 illegal firearms. And of those 100 illegal firearms, about 20 of them have been assault rifles. So, armored vehicles in the city of Antioch and the Police Department, it's nothing new. We've had them for the past 25 years. Over those past 25 years, we've owned and operated three separate armored vehicles, which have all aided our officers and detectives in solving violent crimes and other serious crimes involving firearms. The first armored vehicle was modified, was a modified armored cash transport vehicle that was donated to us by a cash transit company. That was in Police Department operation from 99 to 2010. The next two armored vehicles were both acquired through the United States Military DRMO Program. That's like a military surplus program. We had an armored Humvee that was acquired in 2009 and was used in the Police Department until about 2015. And the other was a 2007 armored MRAP. That stands for Mine Resistant Ambush Protected Vehicle. And that was acquired in 2013, and that's still in Police Department operation today. So, the acquired armored vehicles were utilized on a regular basis by the Police Department's SWAT team for many high-risk operations as well as training exercises. These operations include the service of search and arrest warrants involving individuals armed with dangerous weapons, typically firearms, for hostage situations, armed and dangerous barricaded subjects, pre-planned mutual aid, and other situations where in special tactics or rescue operations were necessary for public safety. At no point, and I repeat, at no point, has any of our armored vehicles been used for crowd control, low-level crimes, or any other enforcement action less than a felony crime involving a firearm. And while I'm with this department, I'll make sure that our armored vehicles are not used for anything other than violent crimes involving firearms. Our current 2007 military surplus MRAP is currently at the end of its service life, as mentioned by City Manager Scott, and it's no longer a dependable or feasible option. That vehicle was designed specifically for the military, while the parts on the vehicle are no longer available. In addition to that, it's been out of service for extended periods of time, being repaired. Our Public Works Department does a great job trying to keep it up and running, but unfortunately, it's at the end of its service life. And just on our last three high-risk search warrants that we, our SWAT team had served, the vehicle had broke down on two of the three occasions. It's very embarrassing when an armored vehicle breaks down in the middle of the street during a, a high-risk search warrant. So, it is at the, the end of its service life. And the Police Department is in need of two armored rescue, armored rescue vehicles to replace this, this single MRAP vehicle. And the reason for the two, I'll explain further, but we have a 16-member SWAT team. We need all the members of our SWAT team to have adequate protection, and two vehicles is necessary. In addition to that, we also have a large number of equipment that our, our officers are required to have with them to de-escalate situations and to hopefully resolve situations peacefully. And two vehicles are required. And each vehicle we're requesting, it is unique. They have differences and different capabilities, which I'll touch on in a bit. So, as of right now, there are two reputable armored vehicle manufacturers in the United States who provide the majority of rescue vehicles to Police Departments throughout the nation. The Armored Group is the only group that is capable of managing two unique vehicles to our needs. One is a specific vehicle that can carry 10 to 12 officers. The other one can carry four to five and has a discreet appearance. Additionally, the Armored Group is the only manufacturer of the two capable of manufacturing and delivering both armored vehicles within 10 months or less. There's, there's high demand for these vehicles. A lot of Police Departments and cities are buying these. And typically, it takes anywhere from a year to 18 months to, to get a vehicle. But this, this manufacturer, particular armored group, is guaranteeing we can get one within eight to, eight to 10 months. And the service life of these two armored vehicles is estimated to be about 12 to 15 years depending on overall use. And both these vehicles will be included in our vehicle replacement funds. So, 15 years from now, there should be funds to replace it if, if needed. In addition to some sole source exemptions due to specific manufacturing capabilities of these vehicles, there's, the Armored Group also holds a GSA Cooperative Purchasing Contract, which per our municipal code allows us to bypass any type of bidding procedure due to the, due to the cooperative purchasing agreement and also the sole source exemption. So, as mentioned, federal asset forfeiture funds will be used to cover the entire purchase of these, these two vehicles. The funds are allocated in the Police Department's current 2024, 2025 revised budget. And these funds can only be used for limited law enforcement procurements and expenses as outlined in the U.S. Department of Justice Equitable Sharing Guidelines. So, these asset forfeiture funds, they've came from investigations, typically large-scale narcotics investigations over the past five to 10 years where our investigators have partnered with either the FBI, ATF, DEA, to investigate these large-scale operations. So, when the court, the case is adjudicated and assets are seized, each involved agency gets a portion of the proceeds. They're put into a USDAOJ account. And then, when the time arises where there's a need for the, for the funds, a city requests the funds, and there's, there's limited procurements that, that can take place with the funds. And I believe it's important to mention that the city having one or more armored vehicles in the fleet, you know, it helps stop violent crime and improve public safety. And it's become kind of an industry, industry standard with other cities and other departments and expected by, by most communities. It is also common to have two armored vehicles in a fleet because many of the armored vehicles have different functions and capabilities, and there's always a need to have full armored capabilities for an entire SWAT team or department. In our case, one of the requested vehicles has not only, not only the ability to transport 10 to 12 civilians and/or officers, it also has unique features, allows it to go in any type of terrain within the city if needed. And the second armored vehicle can only transport, as I mentioned, four to five officers, but it has more, a higher capacity to carry all the necessary equipment. And it also has a discreet appearance that looks similar to a civilian pickup truck. So, I'll just wrap it up and conclude by saying, having two fully armored rescue police vehicles in the Police Department's fleet will further enhance the overall capabilities of the Police Department during high-risk operations and will significantly enhance officer and public safety. In my staff report, I did include images of both vehicles for you to, to view. If you notice, one is a larger vehicle. It's probably about, I'd say, a little over half the size of our current vehicle, and it has the capability to carry 10 to 12 SWAT officers and/or civilians. It is an all-train vehicle. It has a lot of capabilities and can take us to just about anywhere we need to go in the event that, that situation arises. And the second vehicle is a armored pickup truck that resembles any, you know, Ford F-250 or F-350 vehicle you'd see, you'd see on the city street. It's, it protects our officers against assault rifle rounds and, and if that unfortunate event occurs. So, I'm open to answering any questions you may have in regards to this purchase. And all the specs on both vehicles, as I mentioned, are included in the, in the staff report.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30.
I have a motion to extend, I have a second? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments?
I currently have two speaker cards for this item. The first speaker is Mary Lutz, followed by Tiki Flo.
I'm Mary Lutz. Tonight, I'm gonna be speaking on Together We Stand, on behalf of Together We Stand, breaking down walls and building communities. Antioch City Council members, I'm writing on behalf of our nonprofit organization, Together We Stand, in which has done a great deal of work related to the issues regarding the Antioch Police Department since 2019. As you know, the department has garnered national attention due to the racist and brutal, brutal practices, particularly towards people of color in the community. We are deeply disturbed to hear that the city is considering spending over $500,000 to purchase two armored vehicles for police protection, when it is very clear that the money could be spent both on training officers to address their implicit and explicit biases and have life and death consequences, as well as utilizing funds to foster our community engagement and building trust when there, when it has been so blatantly broken. To add insult to injury, the vote is happening concurrently with the vote adopted by the resolution in the support of the county's African-American holistic wellness and resource hub. If the city is truly invested in healing and showing the residents that they are willing to learn, this is not the process we need. Attached is a copy of the resolution passed by the City Council and the, and future purchases of this nature. We must, we must not go backward. So, this is dated March 23rd, 20, or I'm sorry, March 23rd, 2021. Whereas the City of Antioch Council is undertaking police reform initiative, and whereas the City, the City Council values community safety and seeks and promotes supports of work of public safety, employees in a manner that builds community and trust, whereas the governing body is responsible for periodically examining a lining of organizations' mission and policies to evaluate the effectiveness of the agency overall service and the public. And whereas the City Council committed to determining when certain city procurement policies require reconsideration and discontinuance, whereas the city, whereas the Antioch Police Department is an arm of the local government whose primary purpose is to protect and serve Antioch and residents and visitors, whereas the City Council is committed to serving the whole community and diverse residents, strengthening community ties and developing policy, policy approaching and forge stronger community and partnership, whereas the full acceptance of acquisition of surplus military equipment from the federal government, state government, and private entities is not supported by the City Council. And therefore, the Antioch Police Department will discontinue further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tiki Flo.
Hi, I believe she was trying to say, I think we voted against this already. These, these armored vehicles, we've been here, we've done that. I hate to, you know, to break down anywhere in an armed vehicle or, you know, hoop-deed. It's embarrassing, so that sucks for you guys. So, I'm not gonna come up here and act like I'm for it, but I'm not. How about maybe one? And then I was thinking about the upkeep of the vehicles. I remember in one of our meetings, it was like thousands of dollars just to keep a vehicle clean that you guys didn't use. So, in my head, it just sounds like y'all want new toys. I'm just saying, that's just what it sounds like, that you want a new toy. So, we've already voted against this. I don't, I'm not, and then I can't stand here and act like I know what keeps you guys safe because I don't. I just know the perception that it gives, and it doesn't make us feel safe. So, I don't know how to tell you how to do your job. Hopefully, you know, if you do vote, vote for one and not two. And then also make sure that you guys, let them know how much the upkeep of that vehicle is gonna cost as well. Thank you.
All right.
Andrew Becker.
Thank you. You know, we know that gun violence and violence as a whole exists in our community. We see it on our streets, we see it on our TVs, our 10-year-olds see it on their cellphones. It's everywhere. You know, I think one of the most saddening things I heard tonight was that Police Departments across the nation have trouble getting their hands on these vehicles. I think that speaks to the level of crime in our nation. And I think that that needs to be addressed holistically. But I do understand that there are safety elements within our city that are needed and that there is a duty within our law enforcement agency to be able to respond to these crimes at different levels. My condolences to Councilmember Torres Walker and her family. And I believe after we're gone, we live on through others' memories, and that truly speaks to who individuals are and what they meant to us. Gun violence is real in our community. I'm sure APD already knows, and some of you may already know. Earlier tonight, a three-year-old got their hand on a weapon and took their own life. And tonight is not for judgment for that family or that situation, nor is it our, our right to give that judgment. There's a process for that, but what we can give as a community is empathy. And from that empathy drives an emphatic response. So, at the same time, we acknowledge, and this is my opinion, that these vehicles are needed to be able to respond to these crimes at different levels in our community. We also understand that the most important thing that any community can do is to educate itself and to be able to provide resources proactively. And from what I've learned from this department and the shift that I've seen over these past few years. few years, is that while they struggle to react to crimes in our community, they're working diligently to be proactive in finding solutions. And if we take the resources away from the individuals that we've put into these positions, we are the ones that are closing their hands into fists and then tying them behind their backs. So we need to be able to trust our agencies and our government. We need to be able to upkeep these vehicles. I appreciate the staff report. I think the department worked very hard on it. And I appreciate keeping those costs out of the general fund, so I do support this. Thank you.
No more public comment.
All right. Any questions or comments from from council? Is Councilmember Torres Walker?
Yeah, I do have some questions. Thank you for your comments, Andrew. I don't think we act, we're at the level of trust yet, but we definitely working to get there, you know what I mean? So I did have questions around the, thank you, Mary, for reading the resolution, because I did have questions around, would you consider these vehicles to be militarized vehicles, military use vehicles, or any vehicle that will fall under the resolution banning the purchase or any acquisition of military surplus weaponry or vehicles?
Yeah, I'm not exactly familiar with the with the resolution you mentioned, but what I can tell you is they're they're civilian vehicles. They're not made exclusively for the military. They're made by a company where any any civilian could could purchase these vehicles. They're built on civilian vehicle platforms. One is built on a Ford F-3 or F-350 platform, the other a Ford F-550 platform. They can be, they don't require any type of special licensing to to drive them. So no, I wouldn't consider them military equipment. I'd consider them public safety equipment. All of our officers carry or wear ballistic armor. Some of them have, you know, ballistic shields in their in their cars. Our patrol cars have a certain level of ballistic capabilities and ballistics are used by the military as well, so I wouldn't consider it to be a military item just because it it offers ballistic capabilities against assault rifles. And as I mentioned, we do have, since I've been with the city of Antioch, which has been 25 years as an officer, there are more guns on the street than ever before, specifically assault rifles. Years ago, to get a to have a shooting involving AK-47 or AR-15, what was pretty rare. Now, as I mentioned, we had 36 this in the past year.
Yeah, because we can't get common sense gun gun reform at a national level, so it impacts us here too, even though we have some of the strongest gun laws in the country in California.
And what those vehicles do, man, this protects our officers, not just our officers, but our civilians from assault rifle gunfire. So the vest I'm wearing today, the protections of some of our shields, assault rifle bullet will go right through those like a knife through a hot, through a butter. So those vehicles, if we have a situation, which we hope we never do, but we've had them in the cities in the past where we had individuals walking down the street, shooting assault rifles into homes. We had people in homes shooting assault rifles at their neighbors. It allows our officers to go on scene and be protected to hopefully peacefully resolve the situation.
So saying all that to say these are not considered to be military issue vehicles at all, they're civilian vehicles that are retrofitted to withstand fire?
That's my opinion.
Encounters with firearms. Because you stated in the presentation that these vehicles wouldn't be used in any other instance but instances involving firearms.
Absolutely. And I can tell you, when we do use armored vehicles and when we've used them recently, they're typically for one of two situations, a homicide suspect who killed somebody with a firearm and we did all we possibly can to apprehend him outside his home, but it got to a point where we have to go to his house to apprehend him and that's what it's used for. Or individuals that are manufacturing assault weapons and selling them out of their garage or out of their home and we have to go there to apprehend them. That's what they're typically used for.
So Claire, like these vehicles will not be used for any other operations other than involved with firearms, because I did hear concerns from the public around these vehicles potentially being used on people if they peacefully protest and gather in situations like that. But you already mentioned that that would not occur.
Yeah, that is correct. And the ultimate decision on the use of these vehicles is going to come from the captains and the chief of police, absent some type, and if it's pre-planned. If it's some type of emergency situation, active shooter, the watch commander, who's a lieutenant, could have the, you know, the ability to make that decision, but ultimately it'll all go to the chief of police.
I just want to keep clarifying for the public that there be no other use for these vehicles, only in an instance when a firearm is is present and it could put the public and officers in danger.
Correct.
So what else can these asset forfeiture funds be used for? Because the community is curious. I know that in the past, the police department has said that the communications systems need to be updated. Can these asset forfeiture funds be used to update the comm, the communications center rather than requesting more of those funds from the general fund when we know we already gave ARPA dollars? Because some of these asset forfeiture dollars offset the gap in resources to update the comm center. I know that the department has often come to this council to request general fund and other dollars to update tasers. Could asset forfeiture funds be used to do that rather than come from a general fund? I've heard training that these asset forfeiture dollars could be used for training and I did download, thank you, Chief V. Hill and others, because I did download the DOJ's guidelines on, you know, district guidelines on what these funds could be used for. So my, so essentially the question is, what else could these funds be used for? And what is, what will be the remaining balance if, well, I don't want to say if this purchase is moving forward, because I'm assuming it will, what will be the remaining balance in our asset forfeiture fund available to the city of Antioch after this purchase?
Yeah, to answer your question specific to, can they use, can be used for a dispatch center? Absolutely, according to the guidelines. Can they be used for training? Absolutely. I'm just going off the same guide that you probably downloaded. It's online, it's the USD OJ Guide to Equitable Sharing. Yeah, so they can be used for training education. It has to be law enforcement specific. It can be used to expand our current police facilities. Can you be used for, you know, travel per diem, a number of things. What I can tell you-
Meaning it could be used for, say, like, equipment in a substation?
Tasers, yes. Yep, you're absolutely correct. What I can tell you about the dispatch center, the comm center, we do, we're trying to plan to expand that, but that's, that's years out. We're just trying to look ahead to the future and as the city grows, as the department grows, we do need to expand that. But I would say that's probably three to five years down the road before that's actually actually needed. And to answer your last question regarding how much money would be left remaining and that meant that we made this purchase, it'd be just around $100,000.
So it will be $100,000 remaining after this purchase?
Roughly. I think there's just right around $700,000 in the account. So if you take 530 for this purchase, yeah, I think it's right around $100,000 or so. We're just under seven.
And you saying that the, you, the funds come in, they sit there, you request the funds, it seems like y'all requesting a bulk of the funds now, there'll be probably about $100,000 remaining. How often do these, how often does the balance fluctuate? Meaning up or down?
Well, I know we haven't-
Like spend it down to empty and then you wait?
Well, I know we haven't, we haven't spent any funds in the past since, I was able to go back to 2022, so nothing in 2022, nothing in 2023, nothing in 2024. So we typically don't spend these funds. And these funds, accumulation of these funds has been over some time. I know Ms. Merchant can probably give a better explanation. She has more knowledge on this, but as I mentioned, these typically come from large-scale investigations that our Investigations Division used to partner with federal agencies during these investigations. We don't have the staffing right now to participate in these. We're hoping to in the next probably, you know, year or so. So we don't have any any funds coming in anytime soon. If we do, they're they're very minimal.
But but there will be $100,000 roughly remaining after this purchase that's available for, say, equipment for a substation?
To my knowledge, yes.
Or tasers or training or whatever. Okay?
Yes.
I think that, and the MRAP, so that is going away, correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
So these vehicles, which are non-military, they're civilian vehicles, is retrofitted to withstand ballistics in a situation where gunfire is around, but the MRAP will go away?
Yes.
Do you have a timeline for that?
As soon as possible. But we'd obviously want to hopefully take possession of these two vehicles first, which could be eight to 10 months. I know Acting Chief V. Hill has a better understanding of that military surplus program and what's required to get that back.
Good evening. I am familiar with the Defense Revitalization and Marketing Office program because I have been a part of it for the last several years. Every piece of equipment we get from them is cataloged. We basically check it out like a library book and we utilize it till we're ready to be done with it. When we're done with it, we check it back into them. So when we receive a new vehicle, armored vehicle, rescue vehicle, we will give the MRAP back to DRMO. We will not sell it. We will not auction it. We will not give it to anyone else. We will give it back to DRMO.
We, and you said that we have already began returning military grade or anything we gotten that fall under the resolution has already been returned?
Correct, even before that.
Even before that.
We have had basically a storage unit behind the police department that's housed DRMO equipment, which does not fit the category of the resolution. It's outdated. I don't even know why we've held on to it as long as we have, but we finished giving pretty much everything back except the MRAP and a few optics that our SWAT team uses on their their rifles. Everything else has been given back. It has been logged. It has been signed off on by DRMO.
So it could be potentially, you said, eight, 10 to 10 months before we we all invited, invited to the send-off of the MRAP and say, sayonara?
Yeah, eight to 10 months is the estimated timeframe that the manufacturer is going to, if this purchase goes forth, we should get the two vehicles within eight to 10 months. So we'll have to make the decision if we hold on to the MRAP for the next eight to 10 months or we get rid of it and we we utilize armor from an allied agency. The city of Pittsburgh has lent us their armored vehicle, the number K agent, same as the city of Brooklyn.
I think as long as it's retired at some point, because I know this is going to go forward tonight, I feel it, that that it does go away and like we all invited to the send-off, because I know people have been asking to get rid of that vehicle. In addition to, it takes a lot to keep it up and to repair it when you do have encounters, so that's also a waste of city resources. What I would ask for is a presentation in the future to come to this council related to asset forfeiture, the funds, the program, what, you know, just just because I think when we see, as a public, when we see money being spent and we see this, that that we're talking about cutting critical resources to the community and then we're going to spend almost over a half a million dollars on two armed vehicles, people are like, well, what the heck? We getting rid of homeless services? We getting rid of youth services? We getting rid of, people are thinking about what's being taken from them, but then we going to spend over a half a million dollars on these vehicles. But also do not understand that these asset forfeiture dollars couldn't be used to fund any of that anyway and that it's not coming out of the general fund.
Yes, and just to clarify, the money that's in the asset forfeiture account cannot be used to supply anything else.
Right, yeah.
We have a training budget. We have an equipment budget, so we can't arbitrarily, hey, we're going to use 100 grand for training out of, it doesn't work like that. The same thing with equipment. So if there's already line item budgets or money budgeted for purchases for equipment and training, this money cannot be used for that.
So I think just a presentation on asset forfeiture and what that mean. Again, I'm brushing up myself, but I think it helped for the public to know and understand what that actually means in the bigger scheme of things, to a presentation to come back. And thank you for talking about the remaining balance and also a little bit more explaining what these funds could be used for and what they restricted from being used for. And I think, yeah, this is, we need a motion to extend the meeting.
Because I lost hope. I move that we finish the council meeting at 12:00 midnight.
All right. Do I have a second? You have a second?
Well, we started at 4:00.
Yeah, second.
I have a motion and a second to extend the meeting until midnight. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On this issue. For me, this is a personal issue. I'm the son of a police officer, contracross County Deputy Sheriff. And, you know, from a child or perspective, when your father or mother walk out the door and you never know if that person's coming back. And, you know, it's, it's, it's something you never forget. And we ask our police officers, the men and women, to put themselves on the line every minute. And it affects family. One time, my oldest brother was at Hazel's, which way back when was a place that everybody went to after drinking. And unfortunately, my father was on the shift and a report came in that a person was shooting a gun at a particular vehicle and gave the driver's license, I mean, the license plate. It was my, my, my parents' car. It was my brother in the car with a friend. And my father had arrested this individual a week before he got out of jail and he came to do violence. And something that you just never forget. And so for me, if we ask the men and women to put themselves on the line each and every day, both on their job as well as off their job, as well as their families, I think it behooves us as the city council to protect them as best we can. And so I understand about the military vehicle. We'll be very happy to get rid of that. But I'd be proud to make a motion for approval. It's not money that's coming out of the general fund. It is restricted dollars. It is needed and I think it is appropriate for us as the city council, on behalf of our entire community, but particularly the men and women of the Antioch Police Department, to protect them. So I move approval.
We have a motion. Do you have a second? Any other, any further discussion? All right, please cast your votes.
Motion carries four one with Councilmember Torres Walker abstaining.
All right, thank you. Moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
I do not have any public comment. Okay, Andrew Becker.
Thank you. I know I haven't been here as long as some of you have. I apologize. But, you know, I just wanted to say that after the last city council meeting where we had this development proposal and hearing council members talk about the economic state of our city, you know, I decided to do some research and look into what kind of developments are coming into our neighboring cities. And it's concerning because the development rate, the growth rate in our city is far behind that of our neighbors. And the way that our neighboring cities are building out is taking that growth away from our city, that that sales tax revenue. I'm genuinely concerned. We have a Starbucks over off of Slatton Ranch, Target there, right off the freeway, great location, one of the busiest Starbucks in the area. The city of Brentwood just took in an application to build a Starbucks right down the road across the street next to that new 24-hour fitness.
across the street, next to that new 24-Hour Fitness. We lose revenue at Slatten Ranch to the new development going in at Sand Creek. Cino Homes has submitted for residential and mixed-use development on the corner of Sand Creek and Highway 4, building out from that, from that Costco, an additional like 200,000 square feet in commercial space with an anchor retail. And at the same time that all these other cities are growing commercially, we have a CIH overlay that allows for a builder to come in and tear out all of the Sommersville Town Center. That mall is going away, except for the 24-hour and the Smart'n'Final, for 702 apartments. Where are those residents going to go to school? How are those surrounding arterial streets going to support that kind of traffic flow? And where are those residents going to go shop in Pittsburgh? Because we're taking away our commercial core. And what frustrates me most is that in 2014, when that developer purchased that mall, they submitted plans showing this grand vision to rebuild that retail space into what it could be. And then they sat on it until we, as a city, gave them the right to not even put that project before you as a council for approval. Simply staff. And so, they're two-ish months into that project, they have 180 days for a streamlined ministerial approval process. It's frustrating, the economic state in our city. We need to reevaluate that CIH overlay, please. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment?
I don't have any other public comment.
Staff communications? No, staff communications, council communications and future agenda items.
I think we do need to revisit the CIH overlay, simply because, you know, when that was marketed to the council, it sounded like it was going to be able to spark more mixed-use development, meaning housing and retail. And hearing from Andrew is very concerning to know that the way that it was presented isn't what's actually being done. Like, the intent was never to eliminate commercial altogether in the city. It was to allow for mixed use, so I think we should bring that back.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I concur, and, you know, when we had the Lone Tree, you know, I did ask, and I know our focus is on the budget, and I get that, but we really, truly, as a council, need to understand, I mean, things are being approved ministerial, and if you remember, I said, what does that mean? How can it happen without it coming to city council? Because there are a lot of policy questions that are involved there. So, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Torres Walker. It's critical, and I hope we, after we do the budget, we can focus on it. The Planning Commission. It's a Planning Commission in, just basically approvals of our housing, our overlay, and economic development.
All right. Councilmember Wilson?
I'll make this really quick. If we can have a discussion item, in particularly about the traffic flow, Hydern, Pruitt, Costco, Sand Creek area, and Lone Tree.
On that too, I would love to understand, I mean, there had to be an EIR. I would love to know what Antioch's response was with regards to the traffic. Or if we, yeah, exactly.
All right. Thank, we got a second left turnpocket out of it, so. I'm just kidding, I'm sorry. I was trying to be funny at midnight, so it wasn't very funny. Anybody else? No, okay. Seeing no one else, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Please cast your votes.
Motion to adjourn at 11:50 PM carries 5-0.
Meeting adjourned.